If I can please have Police Chaplain Dave Mitchell come up to the front and lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. Shall we raise and pray together? Thank you.
Father God, thank you for the privilege to be able to gather together as citizens of the city of Santa Ana. Father, to be able to discuss, to communicate, to decide on those matters that are important to us. Father, thank you for these that we honor tonight. We're grateful for so many good folks who are part of our community. Pray, God, that you continue to bless in each of their lives for the citizens that are here and the things that are on their hearts. We pray for guidance and wisdom for those matters. For council members, Lord, thank you for their dedication, their willingness to serve, to provide the kind of leadership that our community requires. God, I pray that you would give to them that special measure of wisdom and discernment for the decisions, the plans, the considerations that are before them. Father, we pray for safety and peace amongst our safety personnel. Thank you for our law enforcement, for our fire personnel, for all who are there to support and give them a hand. God, we pray for protection, and ultimately, we pray for blessing for our community as we seek from you, Lord, the guidance and the provision that we need. Father, we pray these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
And now if Wendy Rios can please step to the front and lead us in the Pledge Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, do we have anything to report from closed session? Okay, we're going to move forward with presentations. So first one, a special presentation presented to Neil Kelly for the Orange County Register of Voters, Santa Ana Elections and Registrations.
Neil Kelly, Register of Voters for Orange County. Thank you for the invitation this evening to talk to you about voter registration and elections here in your fine city of San Ana. Just real quick, I thought I would start with a slide that gives an overview of what the Register of Voters does. I know all of you are very familiar with what we do, but for the members of the public, we have three primary responsibilities that I'm responsible for, and that is to run elections throughout the county. We run elections for all 34 cities in Orange County, as well as the special districts, school districts, et cetera. We register and maintain the voter registration database. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a second. And then we verify and certify petitions that are circulated in the cities and in the county here. Three things that are critical in the operation, and if you just experienced that in this last election, security, protecting the ballots and the votes for voters, transparency in the process, and then running an efficient operation. Budgets are very tight, obviously, in the county, and so we're always finding ways to reduce our costs and to reduce the cost for the city as well. Just a couple of quick notes on that. We do run your election, and the cost for conducting the election here in the city of San Ana has almost been cut in half over the last 10 years. So we want to continue to drive those costs down to save taxpayer dollars. The operation itself, we use 220 employees to count the ballots and produce the ballots here in the county, and 6,000 volunteers. And one quick note on volunteers, this truly is the only community event that a local government agency does, relies on, almost 90 percent for volunteers for the entire operation. And we've been voting the same way in this country since the early 1800s, and we count on citizens here in the county to volunteer and work the election. So we thank them for that service. We have more registered voters here in Orange County than 21 states in the country. So we're, in terms of registered voters, we have a huge database, 1.6 million active records, or records in general. We do about 250,000 transactions per year, and that includes new registrations, changes in registrations. We've had over 300,000 online applications since, online regist-- excuse me, that should be 30,000 online applications since registration started online. And then we do validation with DMV and real-time processing on that registration. I'm going to get specific to San Ana here in just a few seconds, but just another quick note on registration. We're 1.4 million active records here in the county. You can see the breakdown on party registration. That's, the Republican and Democrat registration has been hovering around those same numbers for several years now. The growing number is that no-party preference number. That is the one that has been growing almost in double digits over the last seven to eight years. So that's a huge growth factor in registration right now.
Can you say fifth-largest county statewide, nationwide?
So next to Los Angeles County, we're the next-largest county in the state, and then nationwide, we're the fifth-largest. Harris County in Texas, our neighbor in Phoenix, those are a little bit larger than us, but we're very large. Yep. Now, breakdown for the city of Santa Ana, your registration, and this is as of tonight, 90,000, a little over 90,000 on registered voters, 53 percent on Democrat registration, 21 percent on Republican, and then you see that no-party preference registration is at 21 percent also. Again, that's jumped up over the last few years in a couple of percentage points, just in the last couple of years.
Additional question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you might be touching on this next, but I believe last election we were looking at about 110,000 registered voters. There was some cleanup. Can you speak to that? What the Register of Voters Office steps that they took or you took in order to be able to bring us to this number that we have?
Yes, council member, yeah. I'm going to touch on that right now, in fact, and thank you for the question. Prior to that registration cleanup, and I want to explain that cleanup, it's not a purge process. It's a, it's a moving voters from active to inactive, and I'll explain that in a second. But in 2012, your registration was 114,000. That was as of the close of registration before the June primary in 2012. So in that spring of 2012, we did a very large cleanup effort, and that had not been done for over a decade here in the county. So it was well overdue. What we had to do was to identify voters who had not voted in at least four years, no election, whether it's a special city, countywide. And once we did that, then we had to mail out postcards to all of those voters at those addresses. We had to then wait for either non-response or a confirmation that they moved out of the county to cancel them. And if we got a non-response, then we had to send a follow-up postcard, then we could place them on the inactive file, and that's what we did. And in that case, you can see in 2013, right after that, an ARC stands for Address Residency Correction. When we mailed those postcards, it went down to 87,000 here in the city. It's gone up to about 90,000, like I was saying. So there are some registration drives that continue to push that up. We just had the primary election a few weeks ago, as you know, and we only had 82 voters countywide that went into a polling place and reactivated their registration. So we know, based on that data, that those numbers are working pretty well. The people that really were not voting or had moved out of county were the ones that were affected in that group. And I'll drill down a little bit further into that registration number as well. A couple of changes for the primary election, we did have the top-two primary. I think that was the biggest effect on voters, and that essentially means that you have in the legislative races, the top-two vote-getters move on to a runoff in the general election. That was the biggest change, I think, for this primary. Historic trends in vote-by-mail voting, 75 percent plus turned out a vote-by-mail ballot for the primary election. That was the largest number in a primary in the history of Orange County. Lower turnout than our surrounding counties, but this was a lower turnout election than in past primaries. You can see the numbers up there, 350, almost 350,000 total ballots cast throughout the county. 24 percent turnout is where we're at as of this evening. There's a San Ana breakdown for you. I thought it might be helpful to show you the last couple of primaries, from '10 to '12 to '14. Your total ballots cast are across the top, and your turnout is on the bottom. So you were at 19-plus percent in 2010 and '12, and then dropped to 17 percent for 2014. Now, I should point out that that is almost identical to many of the other cities here in Orange County. That same drop of about two percentage points is very similar. It's also reflective across the state on our turnout, it was lower in any primary in the last couple of years. So I think, you know, some of the anecdotal stories that are out there is that the top-two primary may have had an effect on turnout a little bit, and now state propositions are no longer on the June primary ballot, they're on the November ballot. So you don't have as many issues on the ballot that may affect turnout, but again, that's speculation.
Neil, what's your, what's your projection for November for the midterm? Do you see it going back up? Are we going to make up those two percentage points? Do you see us going beyond that? But what's your, what's your thought right now?
Yes, sir. And I think significantly more so than the two percentage points because now that top-two primaries pushed those candidates into that runoff. So you had those, the primary that pushed the two, top-two candidates, we're going to have some pretty close contests, I think, in driving people to the polls. The other thing is, is we've had a 65 to 67 percent turnout historically in general midterms, so it's going to be much higher than the primary itself. But I think the turnout at the local level will be larger than a couple of percentage points.
Got it. But it'll, but in your estimation, probably less than a general election like a '12?
That's correct. It will be less than a presidential election. Yes, sir. This may not be the fairest comparison because Anaheim has almost doubled the registration of Santa Ana, but the demographic on voters is pretty similar, and I put Anaheim's numbers in red, just as a comparison for you. So you can see Anaheim's turnout was 20 percent in this election. May not be, again, a fair comparison because Anaheim had some city charter measures that were on the ballot, may have driven more people to the polls. But again, those numbers are pretty similar in other cities. Thought I'd give you a map just to show you. This is in 2012. We'll put the 2014 numbers up here in the next couple of days. But this is a breakdown of Republican ballots that are cast, those are in red, and then Democrat ballots that are cast in blue. We're seeing a little bit of an expanse on the Democrat ballots cast in this election. So those numbers will change a little bit for the primary. And from vote-by-mail, here in your city, you had 12,000 ballots essentially returned for this election, a pretty strong vote-by-mail turnout when you look at the actual number compared to the registered voters that requested vote-by-mail ballots. So it was, it was a good turnout, I think, from that standpoint. Thank you for pointing that out. That should be Republican on the third line and Democrats the first line.
What about the third and the fourth? I'm kidding.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This shows you a map on vote-by-mail right now, and this is an interesting map because all that purple there are vote-by-mail ballots that were cast, and that was in 2012. Now, if you just went back four years from that, you'd have much more yellow than you would purple. Vote-by-mail is the fastest-growing form of voting here in Orange County. I think in the next primary election, we could be topping 80 percent on total vote-by-mail ballots that are cast. Just as a summary on vote-by-mail for you, again, the fastest-growing type of voting here in Orange County. Vote-by-mail, we are in a position right now in the county to handle increased capacity. So if we did go all vote-by-mail at some point in the state, we would be able to handle that right now in the county. So that's, that's a positive thing. I think the electorate is moving towards voting all by mail, even though the legislature's not. And then just finally, one quick note before I open to questions. I will go back to the office tonight and work on finalizing certification. I will sign those documents tonight. So the primary election will be certified tonight, and we're the first large county to do so here in the state. And again, that, we'll be moving into the general election in the fall, and we have a couple of small special elections as well in between. So again, thank you for the invitation. I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Do council members have any questions? Thank you for coming down, and thank you for the job you do. You have a big job. You do it for the whole county, and you do it very well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Frank Tellerico, are you here? Standing to my right is Frank Tellerico, and I want to recognize him today as the mayor's exemplary citizen for the community here in San Ana. And what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to be giving him a proclamation. But let me just tell you about Frank, and really, it's you, but it's also the organization that you represent, you know, Goodwill of Orange County. Frank has been president since 2012, but he's been with the organization longer than that, and the organization has been active for 90 years here in the, in the county of Orange, and it's been in San Ana since 1924. They actually had a storefront over on Fourth Street. But in those years, they've just grown to tremendous numbers. I think they have something like, is it 23 or more stores now? 24 stores now throughout Orange County. I'm talking Goodwill stores. They employ about 15,000 people, and these are people that would not otherwise have a job. You know, sometimes they're impaired in terms of hearing, or they might be blind, or they might have some other, you know, physical impairment, and Goodwill trains them, gives them jobs, helps house many of them, makes sure they have access to medical care and nourishment, and basically makes their lives as productive as possible. And here in San Ana, they even have developed a center where they do physical rehabilitation. And they've developed techniques for those, for example, that are autistic, that can't communicate in certain cases through some of the software that Goodwill has developed. They're able to use computers and screens and begin to communicate with the outside world. And so the good work of Goodwill is just off the charts. And the operation, and I don't know if you've seen the operation that they have over on Fairview, right around Fifth Street here in San Ana, but it's a monster. It's big. Not only a big store, but, you know, the big reclamation center, and then they have all the facilities there, the offices and other activities. It's just beautiful what they do. Frank, by the way, has also been vice president of the, and CEO for Servite High School, and he also served as CEO for Jay Sarah High School. So, you know, good Catholic high schools, and now he's here with Goodwill. He's also developed entrepreneurial programs and recently established a Goodwill Startup Program to help market young veterans to Orange County businesses. So he's taking veterans and trying to figure out how to prepare them and how to get them into the, into the market here in Orange County businesses. Frank, there's many more things I could say that are great about Goodwill, but why don't you say a few words, and I'll present you with a proclamation.
Well, first of all, I'm very humbled by this honor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I absolutely share this with the 1,200-plus members of my team. As the mayor said, we started 90 years ago in a small storefront here in San Ana. That year, we served four people. This year, we'll serve more than 16,000 people. So we're very, very proud of the progress we've made, not only in San Ana, but for the entire county of Orange, and thank you.
I just asked him, what's his budget? Because when they started with one storefront here in San Ana in 1924, I bet you it was not what it is today. Today, it's $100 million a year budget. It's amazing the work that they're doing, the number of lives that they touch, and the difference that they make here in our community. So for your efforts, I want to recognize you as the exceptional citizen, and please keep up the good work, Frank. You're doing wonderful work, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. And Danny, do you want to bring other members that came with you, please? Step forward and join Danny. Let me say a few things about Danny Watkins and others that are with him, and that is that today what I want to do is declare San Ana a Purple Heart City. And let me tell you a little bit about what that means, and then I want to turn over to them to say a few words. Veterans put their lives in danger and suffer injuries in order to secure the freedom of our nation. They've sacrificed their jobs, educational opportunities, families, and, you know, many unfortunately have paid the ultimate price, which is your life, on behalf of this country and what it stands for. In 1782, the Purple Heart was established by George Washington as the badge of military merit to be awarded to any soldier that displayed admirable action. In 1932, the Purple Heart was received as a medal recognizing American soldiers who were wounded or killed in battle. In 2012, California became the first state to designate itself as a Purple Heart State. And in 2013, the county of Orange became a Purple Heart County. And I hope that states and counties and cities across America declare themselves Purple Heart cities and states and counties, because I think it's just another way of saying thank you. And, you know, there's so many things that we have to continually work on and try to fix and try to do better. I mean, we've all heard about some of the problems with the VA hospitals and veterans. Unfortunately, we have, you know, a lot of homeless here in the city. Some of those are veterans, and there's never enough that I think we can do for veterans. And, you know, saying thank you is something that you can't do enough of, and today by this, it's our way of saying thank you. And before I present you with a proclamation, would you like to say a few words, Danny?
Yes. My name is Danny Watkins, commander of Chapter 752, the only military order, a Purple Heart chapter in Orange County. Orange County has 120,000 living veterans, with over 400 of those having a Purple Heart. We have 123 in our chapter, and those 123 have over 250 Purple Hearts. I've got two of my members here. Lupi Sands lives here in Santa Ana, and he was in the Army in Vietnam. And Don Pagler has a Purple Heart, and he was on the USS Liberty, which was attacked by Israel, and he has a whole story about that. So that was a pretty heavy thing that went on then, where over 70 percent of that crew killed or wounded. So we and the Purple Heart have a saying that some gave all, all gave some.
This is a proclamation recognizing Purple Heart City here in San Ana, and I present it to you on behalf of the City Council and strongly urge all residents to recognize the sacrifices of veterans that have experienced in order to protect our country. Thank you very much for your service, and this is just a small token of gratitude for what you've done. Thank you very much.
This proclamation will be, this will be taken up to Sacramento, go into State Veterans Museum, which sometime in August or September is going to be moved back down to Los Alamos. And the state, Southern State Veterans Museum will be combined with the 46 Infantry Museum on Los Alamos. All of the county cities so far, which are number 19, are up there now in the State Veterans Museum, where this one will go.
Now, I would like to call on Councilmember David Benavides. He has a certificate, I believe, to the Civic Center in recognition of its recent grand opening and success of a new restaurant. So I'll turn things over to Councilmember Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually a civic restaurant. If we have, do we have the gentlemen who are here, John, or the owners, John, Christian, Ralph? Oh, there we go. You guys are wearing the shirts, so I should have been able to identify you. Why don't you go ahead and come on, come on forward here. So if you have not yet visited Civic Restaurant, definitely want to encourage you to do so. And one of the things that I'm thrilled about here over the last few years, serving on the council, having the opportunity to meet and support a number of different businesses, there's a lot of exciting things going on in the city of Santa Ana, a lot of great things going on within our downtown. But even outside of the downtown, there are a lot of investment, a lot of new things for us to partake and businesses to support, as well as efforts that are taking place that are not necessarily exclusively business. But here today, we have Civic Restaurant. These three gentlemen, John Melendez, Christian Lemus, and Ralph Milan are raised here in the city of Santa Ana, and I've got a story of three young men who've done well in opening up Civic Restaurant, again, in the downtown, a lot of exciting things taking place. But there were some intentional efforts that they made to open up a restaurant just outside of the downtown, over by Civic Center and Bristol Street. And it opened up here in February of, February of 2014, this, just this year, and they've been experiencing quite a bit of success, are looking at expanding in a space right in their current location. I understand that even looking at other parts of the city. So I want to ask one of you to go ahead and share a little bit, just kind of the vision, what brought you to take the step, tell us a little bit more about the cuisine, what you guys are doing there, and then I'll go ahead and present you a recognition here. So who's the spokesman here? Is it John?
We'd like to thank the city and the council members for this recognition. We're glad to be here tonight. And so we all grew up in San Ana, and when we decided to open up the business, we wanted to open up a business in our city, support the city. A lot of what we want to do with our business is be able to give back to the community that gave us so much growing up and allowed us to be able to open up our business within the city. So we opened up in February. We have a very diverse menu. We have a, we pretty much do it all, it's something for everybody. It's a new concept for people out there, so go ahead and try us out and... Oh, so we all, we go on to school in Santa Ana, elementary school, junior high school, high school, Santa Ana College. Yeah, so we opened up outside of the downtown area, so there's Civic Center, Bristol. We didn't know, like, how it would go at first. It's kind of a different area for that type of concept, but it's, the community's been very supportive of us, and we're really excited just to be there and have all the support of the committee. And with that support, you know, I think that'll allow other businesses to open up around the city like us, and not only in the downtown area, but allow San Ana to grow in different areas.
Well, thank you again just for basically taking a step, believing in the city, believing in your city, taking that risk, investing. I know at least a couple of you guys have different jobs in addition to, and you're pouring all your blood, sweat, and tears, and you're doing a fabulous job. It's always exciting for us, again, as council, to be able to recognize and thank those who are taking that step of investing, again, in the city, creating jobs. But then they also have a really cool, great menu. What was it? Jalapeño cucumber lemonade, I think, I had, which was kind of an odd type of thing, but I had it, and it was awesome. It was great. You support the Santa Ana Farmer's Market, which is a great thing. For those of you who have not had an opportunity to visit the Farmer's Market here in the downtown at Third, between Third and Fourth on Spurgeon. It's every Thursday afternoon, 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. So Civic is one of those restaurants that's there. Their green chorizo burritos, breakfast burrito, do you guys do it all day? Yeah, okay. It's fabulous. Another great thing that I strongly suggest. So what's that? So, what's that? So, and you support another local business, so that's one of the other things that's valued, that you support and purchase your products from other businesses in the city. So again, just supporting local business here in Santa Ana, creating jobs, investing back in our city. Eat good food, your motto, and you're doing a great job with that. So here on behalf of the Mayor City Council, want to present you this certificate of recognition awarded to Civic Restaurant in recognition of your grand opening and success as a new restaurant, and thank you for your service and commitment to the city of Santa Ana. Congratulations, gentlemen.
And I want to call on Councilmember Roman Reyna, and he's going to call upon the parent of the year awardees from the Santa Unified School District. So if you're here, please come on forward, turn things over, and I believe Councilmember Mesk was joining as well. So you have the floor.
Todos los padres que están aquí por nosotros, por favor, pasenle. All the parents that are here for the recognition, please come forward. No te sustes, pasasle, pasenle. You know, as they're, as they're walking up, one of the things that definitely hits me right away is a lot of moms. We got to get the dads involved. Whereas they're coming up and getting ready, as I mentioned before, I truly believe it takes a community to raise a child. And this is a great example of local heroes that are not only investing in their own children, but are investing in the community's children, as they've been recognized and honored through the school district for Parents of the Year at their, at their school, whether it be elementary, junior high, or high school. This is what really makes the community strong, is when community members roll up their sleeves and get to work. And these individuals have done so for the past year and have been recognized and able to do so. So before we go a little further on, I do want to give them a round of applause. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. It is a big group, I want to say it is 56 strong, so it's definitely a big group. We are on the back burner here, we're putting everybody's names, so that everybody gets an opportunity to be recognized for the work that they're doing. I asked my colleague to join us, she's a teacher here locally, she sees what these parents do day in and day out, and I'd like her to share some words as well.
Yo voy a hablar en español, porque muchos de ellos hablan español. Queremos darles las gracias a los padres voluntarios de las 56 escuelas que escogieron a un padre del año. Estamos muy agradecidos por su educación y muy orgullosos de ellos. El éxito de nuestros estudiantes depende mucho de la participación de los padres, y hoy estamos celebrando a nuestros padres. Así es que una gran aplauso para ellos.
So let's really hear from the individuals that are doing the work. We're going to have one of our parents come in. Por favor, dicen su nombre y cuál escuela está.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liliana López, y yo vengo representando la Escuela Lobol. Para mí es un gran honor estar aquí. Quiero que sepan que todos los padres que estamos presentes hacemos un gran trabajo. Nos esforzamos mucho por la educación de nuestros hijos. Tratamos de obtener las mejores cosas que este país nos puede brindar a nosotros como personas, como padres, como seres humanos. Muchas gracias, gracias a los profesores, porque por ellos estamos hoy aquí, a los hijos, a los alumnos, a los maestros, a la comunidad. Muchas gracias, muchas gracias en nombre de mis compañeros, gracias.
We'll hear from one more parent.
Buenas tardes a todos, gracias por estar aquí, y quiero agradecer. Estoy representando la High School, Centuri High School. Mi nombre es Adriana Villegas, y agradezco, estoy muy contenta con Centuri por el apoyo que nos brinda el distrito para empezar, el reconocimiento que nos dan, el esfuerzo que hacemos es para el éxito de nuestros hijos, porque somos un equipo. Definitivamente la escuela, los padres, la familia, somos un equipo para el éxito de nuestros estudiantes, y yo recibí un apoyo muy grande en Centuri, y hago mi mejor esfuerzo para poder hacerlo mejor para atrás, para, para nuestros hijos. Eso es todo. Gracias.
Anything else you want to say? You know, to me, there's no greater impact in somebody's life than another caring human being. And as I mentioned before, this is exactly what these ladies and fathers, wherever their fathers are at, are doing on a daily basis. They're not paid to do so, they are volunteering their time to have an impact in another child's life and their educational process and the fabric of our community. To me, these are local heroes. These are exactly the type of residents that we look for, for assistance and help. Nobody, nadie puede ser solo. No me importa quién es, nadie puede ser solo. Necesitamos el apoyo de toda la comunidad. Nosotros viven aquí nosotros, necesitamos trabajar juntos, y quiero dar las gracias a todas las familias que están aquí. Muchísimas gracias otra vez.
Es muy importante tener el apoyo de los padres, de la comunidad, y de los maestros y la administración para el éxito de nuestros estudiantes, así es que muchas gracias de nuevo a nuestros padres.
So the recognition states, the city of Santa Ana recognizes in Santa Ana School District Parents for the Annual Parent of the Year Award Celebration. Each and every one of you will receive this. We're going to ask you guys to step out in the foyer, and staff will give one to every individual. Again, thank you so very much for coming on here, appreciate all the work you're doing. Muchísimas gracias.
Just tell him, I'll bring him on right now. I'll bring him on. So is he on the line already? Maria, when he wants to speak, how does he speak? Does he pat? Does he make a noise? But he's just going to burst in, or because he can't? All right, we're now ready to continue with our council meeting, and I'm going to do something a little bit out of order here. We're going to take item 55D, which is a discussion of a submission to the voters on the November 4th municipal election of a Santa Ana Medical Marijuana Regulation and Limitation Initiative, item 55D. But before going into that, I want to talk to a moment to Mayor Protem Salteina Hedo, who I believe is on the phone. Sal, are you there? And if so, just say yes, and then I'm going to read something for the record. Sal, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you, Sal. And look, let me read this on the record, and then as we go into the discussion, whenever you want to speak, just indicate you want to speak, and then I will recognize you as soon as your turn comes up. But just say, you know, because we can't see you, so, you know, please just audibly indicate it. So let me read this on the record, please. I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this city council meeting is conducted pursuant to the California Code Section 54953, that in one member of our city council, and that member is councilmember Mayor Protem Salteina Hedo, will be participating in the city council meeting by speakerphone. In other words, he's at a remote site, but he's called in, and we've made arrangements in according to the Brown Act to allow this to occur. Please bear with me while I briefly go through some of the special procedures required by the Brown Act, and I would now like to have a councilmember, Tina Hedo, please, Mayor Protem Tina Hedo, please respond to the following questions. Mayor Protem Tina Hedo, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up to this point until now?
Yes.
Are you a happy person? I made that up, Sal. I made that, and I know you are. Just joking with you. Number three, do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Is the agenda posted at the location of where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public, such that any member of the public could participate if they chose to do so in this teleconference from the location where you are?
Yes, I have a full house in front of me.
Pardon?
I have a full house in front of me.
You're doing well, Sal. See, I knew you were. Are you having a party?
No, I was joking.
I know you were. Number six, is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, or otherwise address any agenda item pursuant to this meeting?
No.
Okay.
The answer's no.
I would now like to ask that any member of the city council speak up at this time if such councilmember has not been able to hear clearly Mayor Protem Tina Hedo. Has anybody not been able to hear? Can you, Sal, we're going to raise the volume. Hold on a moment. While we're raising the volume, let me say that hearing no other comment other than raising the volume, the record should reflect that all city councilmembers present have indicated that they were able to hear Mayor Protem Tina Hedo clearly, but is the volume now raised? Sal, can you speak to us again? Just say anything loud?
Yes, I was wondering if you could hear me now.
That was a little bit better, but not great. Councilmember Sarmiento said good enough, with a smile, Sal. If you would next like to request that any councilmember, including Mayor Protem Tina Hedo, speak up at this time, if such councilmember has reasonably, based on the voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself as Mayor Protem Tina Hedo is not truly so. Sal, tell us something that only you would know.
You know, I...
Tell us you're good-looking.
I'm a good-looking man, let me tell you. I'm confident, I'm good-looking, and charismatic too, it's difficult to be...
All right, we think that's you, Sal. Two out of three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Two out of three. Mayor Protem Tina Hedo has already participated in this conference call, and we all acknowledge that. I would not like to advise all of us that the clerk of the council will take votes through a roll call, whenever we take a vote, in order to make sure that we hear how Councilmember Tina Hedo is voting. So with that, just speak up, Sal, whenever you're going to say something, because it's not as good as it is here, but we can definitely hear you, and we know it's you. So with that, let me bring on item 55D. I earlier described what it was, and I believe we have no presentation for building and planning, because we did it last time, so let me just bring it to councilmembers for thoughts and discussions. And why don't I start over on the right? Do I have any? So all these speakers need to address the council. Sal, I hope you're sitting down. John Grace, followed by Steve McGuigan, followed by Debbie Tharp, T-H-A-R-P. So if Steve, you could come down, and Debbie, come down, be close to the mic. After that, it's going to be Candace Hawes, H-A-W-E-S. Please go ahead, let's take our first speaker, John Grace, are you here? Please go ahead and speak into the microphone, sir. And then Steve McGuigan, Debbie Tharp, and Candace Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers...
Speak right into the mic, just pull it up a bit, make sure, yeah.
Second?
That's much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm John Grace, I'm registered voter in the city of Huntington Beach. I'm here tonight to speak on your, on the proposed dispensary ordinance in regards to the, one of the limitations that you have on it. The city's proposing 12 dispensaries in two zones. The 12 dispensaries is, of course, something that in the initiative that we put on the ballot is a larger, we have a larger number in there. But the troubling part is the two zones. Trying to put the 12 dispensaries in two zones in the city with the limitations that they have from each other, we think is going to be extremely problematic and will result in much less than the 12 dispensaries. We think that's a disservice to the, to the people that will be trying to access those, and like the Tax Stamp Act of the 30s, trying to overly restrict the access is not going to, is not going to make it very easy or solve the problems, which is what we're trying to do. The city of Laguna Woods has had a medical marijuana ordinance that also restricts into two zones, and so far, they have not been able to put a dispensary in either of those zones because of the limited access. So we would, we would suggest, or we would like, that the two zones be reconsidered, that you look at other areas of the city, perhaps if not the entire city for us to move into. You still have your restriction on the number of dispensaries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve McGuigan, followed by Debbie, followed by Candace, followed by Sean Donahue.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I was at the previous presentation, and I need to thank you guys and staff for doing such an excellent job of going through some of the options and some of the comments that were made afterwards by the city council members. I think that a lot of thought has gone into this process, and that there needs to be some regulation. Right now, it's kind of the Wild West out there. Santa Ana has typically been a dumping ground for a lot of negative activities that you can't get away with in other cities, and we certainly don't want Santa Ana to continue or to even have that reputation. Regulation is absolutely necessary, not just for the residents of Santa Ana, but to control the businesses and to make sure that they are in compliance. Right now, I know that a lot of the businesses out there are not in compliance with California state law. There is a concern out there that the original reason that the Santa Ana Council did this, and David Benavides spoke to this issue before, was that this is a health and safety issue. Smoking, no matter what you're smoking, is bad for you. The California Medical Association acknowledges that imbibing of marijuana, actually smoking and ingesting it, does cause secondary health issues. It also causes secondary smoke issues and the same kind of issues that you have with cigarettes and other smokables, as it were. So I think that that's something that you need to consider as you do these things to make sure that you're regulating the actual ingestion of the marijuana. I know that in multi-unit housing right now, there is a concern with cigarette smoke and how that's going to be regulated. And this, I realize it's a medication considered by some, but does anybody know how many doctors in California actually prescribe marijuana? The correct answer is zero, zero. No doctor can prescribe marijuana. They can recommend it, but I am a stage four cancer patient, my doctors do not prescribe marijuana for me, plain and simple. When I need medications, I can go and I can get a proper prescription for various different things, and I can go and do that. There are 12 different items that California doctors might recommend marijuana for, and there are other remedies available to most patients, and California is very good about that. Thank you for your consideration of this issue. I urge you to work with the residents and listen strongly to the residents as you craft this. Make public sessions available to some of the nonprofits and some of the residents that are dealing with these issues, and make sure that all of the concerns are taken into consideration as you craft the balancing ordinance that will go on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, followed by Candace, followed by Sean Donahue, followed by Douglas Lanfier. So Debbie, are you here? Please go ahead, and then Candace, if you could step forward, sit towards the front, you'll be right after Debbie. Please go ahead.
Hi, actually, I was trying to save my time to Sean, who came down, all the way down here to talk to us today, just a couple more minutes is all he needed. Would that be okay?
Look, typically, we don't do that, this is not Congress where we share time. Just tell us what you want to tell us.
That was it, I was just trying to save my time, so.
Let's see, we've got like a bunch more speakers, let's let them all speak, and then at the end, if he still hasn't heard his point made, I'll let him come back up.
All right.
So Candace, followed by Sean, followed by Douglas Lanfier, followed by Vern Nelson.
Hello, councilmembers, Mayor. My name's Candace Hawes, and I guess I'm the young lady that started all these problems in Santa Ana with medical marijuana. I'm the author of the Santa Ana Medical Cannabis Restriction and Limitation Initiative, and I'm also the principal officer of the... the principal officer of the PAC that's running the initiative, and I haven't even graduated college yet. The reason that I'm here today is I'm asking that the city council not pass the current version that you guys have released in the staff report. I think that you guys need to put this to town halls to include, like the previous speaker, nonprofits, citizens, patients. I feel that you guys criticize our initiative because we didn't include you guys in our wording. Just so you guys know, we did reach out multiple times trying to get input from the city. Every time, we were just turned away and turned to the police department, and we tried to include all of their concerns. I am also concerned if you guys pass an initiative, put a measure on the ballot that is not considering the concerns of your patients, your residents, and the nonprofits. A well-rounded measure would have the input of you guys, the community members, and the police department. You've got, the city has known about our medical marijuana initiative since March of 2013, when you guys voted to put it on the ballot, and you guys are waiting until now, when you guys are almost against the deadline, to start talking about this. I think that you guys need to allow more time for pragmatic deliberation of all the different nuances and details of your guys' initiative. I've seen, for the most part, I have to very much thank you guys and applaud you for being brave enough to take this on, because you guys are the first one to take on such a challenging task. But I don't think that you're quite there yet. There's a couple items, I think, that need to be revised so that it will go into effect smoothly, and it will provide patients the safety and the access that they need, and will also raise the revenue that you guys need to control the problem. Let's see. Our initiative is not perfect, like I said before, but Santa Ana does need to do something about the medical cannabis dispensaries in this city. We were able to get very easily over 10,000 residents that were registered to vote to sign our initiative, more even so that were not registered to vote. After we learned about your guys' intended measure, we also tried to reach out to you guys and provide some insight, and unfortunately, we were not able to carry that out, and you guys did not implement some of our suggestions. We asked that minimally, that you guys peel back some of your restrictions if you do stay with two zones. I would request that you guys expand your zones that you're allowing the collectives into, but if you do stick with just two, just as Karen Haluza said, that the city may not even be able to fit six collectives in those zones. And only with six collectives, that won't raise the revenue that you guys need to provide enforcement. So again, I'm asking that you guys allow for inside input, that you do not pass this measure tonight. And also, I would like to let the community know that I have flyers and information in the back, and I'm ready to get going on this campaign.
Thank you. Sean, followed by Douglas, followed by Vern, followed by Robin Cook.
A little taller. Good evening. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, city council, city staff. My name's Sean Donahoe. I'm coming down from Oakland, although I work in Sacramento most of the time. I'm running the California Cannabis Industry Association, and as you can imagine, there is quite a lot of conversation happening in Sacramento lately. Obviously, the most operable bill that we have right now to repair the sort of gray area that we've been dealing with for the last 18 years since the passage of Prop 215 is Senator Lou Correa's SB 1262. I was reading the staff recommendation, excuse me, the staff report this evening, and unfortunately, it's a little bit out of date regarding the department that's chosen for 1262. It was heard in Assembly Business and Professions Committee this morning, and there's a completely different agency, and the next steps are very different. We're working with quite a lot of stakeholders, including those folks in, from the governor's office, California Medical Association, PRAAC, the League of California Cities, the police chiefs. We're working with California Forestry. We're working with urban counties, rural counties. Basically, things are looking very, very different in Sacramento, where we're acknowledging that this gray area, this sort of proverbial Wild West that's existed for the last 18 years, it's, its time is ending. We need to move beyond, and we need to come up with some, you know, good policies. There are some good policies, certainly in the initiative that Candace just spoke to. There's also some, some great policies in the initiative that's being proposed today. Unfortunately, what I do see as I go up and down the state, given this sort of paralysis and inaction that's happening at the state legislature, every locality is sort of confused about what to do. And I do see that a lot of different cities are choosing reactive approaches to local problems that are not going to be successful from what, from our observation. We're looking for a better, well-regulated industry. You know, uniquely, we're an industry that's crying out for regulation, proposing good regulations, and even saying, "Tax us." One of the points, obviously, is I do not think that, given the de facto ban that is possible, given the zoning and the extreme thousand-foot separation between, between collectives that are being proposed, that you may not hit those revenue targets, that you're not going to find compliant, sufficient number of compliant locations to get those revenue targets. And ultimately, I think taxation should be dependent upon creating incentives for those good actors that choose to follow the rules, that choose to pay taxes, and get rid of those, those bad actors that frankly are always going to be a problem. And if you have taxes that are too high, that don't incentivize those that are willing to follow the rules, you're going to be where you are now. Other couple of things that I could mention, you know, obviously, more locations will decrease the number of...
You're out of time, so just please give us a wrap.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you're Douglas?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Douglas.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and members of the staff. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 55D. My name is Douglas Lanfier. I'm a patient's advocate and have worked for over 15 years to assist patients with safe and affordable access to seriously needed medications. In 2008, I was asked by the city of Palm Springs to participate as a patient's advocate on a task force for the implementation of the ordinance that is on their books until today. City officials in Palm Springs realize the unique necessity to involve patient advocates in the city's ordinance drafting process. We are as well coming to you today to urge you to involve patient advocates in this process that you are bestowing or embarking upon on behalf of the city. Patient's advocates have been coming to the city of Santa Ana officials for nearly a decade to beg assistance in assuming, or pardon me, in assuring safe and affordable access to medical marijuana. Santa Ana has ignored the sick and dying citizen constituents' access to medication for over a decade. City council members have maligned and vilified truly needy patients through descriptions heard in these council chambers as predominantly healthy males between the ages of 18 and 30 years old. Nothing could be farther from the truth, Councilmember Benavides. As with any medication, there will be a percentage of abuse. I do not hear this city council suggesting regulating pharmacies or medical offices to M1 or M2 zones within the city due to pain medication abuse. This example illustrates what little three-minute, or short three minutes will allow me as rebuttal to a 30-minute staff presentation and lengthy written reports. Your staff, including the city attorney employed by the largest municipal law firm in Southern California, wrote the proposed ordinance. As presently written, the ordinance will be successfully challenged in the courts. Such legal challenges have constructed a $13 million building that took another $4 million just to furnish for Best Bestin Krieger in Riverside. Your city attorney. Your city attorney's law firm draws fees from over 30 municipalities in Southern California. Riverside just sued the register of voters to remove the signature qualified medical marijuana initiative off the ballot, citing federal prohibition. Why is this law firm telling the city of Santa Ana to write an ordinance that is so easily challenged in the courts? Answer is simple, because litigation equals fees for the law firm. This law office has collected nearly $1 million in fees from the taxpayers of Santa Ana since 2011. The legal fees increased from $80,000 in 2011 to over $494,000 in 2013.
You're out of time. If you could just please wrap up. Lights turned red.
I will applaud the city on taking steps forward. Regulation is needed within this industry, and we're looking forward to the city taking a pragmatic view at initiating that legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Vern Nelson, and if you could state your, your address, please, Vern. It's not on here. Just please state your address and please address us.
My address is 7101 Starlight Circle on Huntington Beach.
Thank you, Vern. Please give him a green light, and he's going to start speaking.
Green light, okay. Mayor, council, Sal, good work so far on this, but it's a shame that you're rushing this through.
Hold on. Sal, you still there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
You're having a party out there, aren't you?
I wish.
There's a lot of good stuff in this, but it is, there needs to be some improvement, some amendments made. I hope we can make them tonight if it really has to be done now, but it really needs more time. Like we've, everyone said, you haven't reached out to the stakeholders, the people like Candace and Debbie, the patients, the collectives. So I'm just going to mention one thing that I would hope would be amended here, a concern. Your measure includes a requirement that a representative sample be tested, tested by a certified laboratory. First of all, we wonder what do we consider a representative sample? And a guy called Jeffrey, Dr. Jeffrey Raber from Pasadena's Workshop Medical Cannabis Testing Facility would have liked to be here tonight, but he couldn't, so I'm going to read his statement on the topic. "With many other evolving, well-developed, and completely thought-through testing structures being implemented around the country in places like Colorado, Washington, Connecticut, Nevada, Massachusetts, and Illinois, you have chosen to take a completely backwards approach and use language that is unworkable and simply uninformed. Experts in the field have been available to you to help develop the best possible path forward, complying with product labeling standards in line with the California Sherman Law, yet you have not included such context. We beg you to reconsider your current testing language and to redraft a section that will offer the best possible consumer protection efforts for patients while also being workable under the current state system in California. With the country's leading cannabis testing experts here in Southern California, it's simply insanity to not allow them to do the best possible job they can for the patients who need this medicine. Please allow us to help you get this very important piece of work done properly for the best interest of the city and the patients in mind. Thank you." And I thank you as well.
Thank you. Robin Cook. Robin, if you could give us your address as well, followed by Marla James.
Okay, marijuana, that's a problem of the federal government, and they should handle it. But I have other responsibilities.
Say hi.
Hi.
What's the phrase of the day?
No zigzag zag. No drug dealers should be allowed in Santa Ana.
Okay, that's my responsibility.
Thank you. Marla, I think you're next, followed by Matthew Papas. And again, please give us your address. So Marla James, followed by Matthew Papas, followed by David W. James. Okay. And just bring that microphone down and address us, please.
My name is Marla James. I am with the patient advocate, with the advocates for the disabled and seriously ill. I am also a medical marijuana patient, and I don't think it's fitting to sit here and tell you the pros and cons of marijuana, because we all make of, we are, that's between me and my doctor, what I need. My address is 4901 Heil Avenue in Huntington Beach. But I'm here, I'm here to represent thousands and thousands of patients, which are your constituents here in Santa Ana. I've read the proposal that you made, and I'm wondering if you read the proposal that was made, if your lawyers went over it, because there's quite a few problems with it. One, it's not path-proof. Number two, it violates the Fifth Amendment. It violates the Fourth Amendment. You will be sued if it goes through. I mean, how much are you willing to spend on litigation? Because that's basically what Best Bestin Krieger wants you to do, is, I mean, we've gone, we've gone nose to nose with Best Bestin Krieger before. So we're used to dealing with them. And I don't want to see you having to pay these bills that this law firm made up, because there are serious problems with this initiative, as is. And I would not, I would, I would say, please, 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 read this with a lawyer before you decide to do the first reading of it tonight, because you're going to find lots of problems. I applaud you for trying to regulate, because we, as, as medical marijuana users, we want your regulation. We don't want organized crime in this. I mean, we do appreciate what you're doing. The one that's on the ballot currently is a good, is good for the city, and it's good for the patients. And we have to think about the patients. With your, there's major problems with the city.
It's gone red, so please conclude.
Well, again, I...
I thought you already concluded. You did a good job.
Well, I ask, I ask you to please read it for yourselves. It's long. It's 44 pages. Just read it with a lawyer and look at the problems that you're going to have if this is passed.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's get Matthew up here. Matthew Papas.
Matthew couldn't make it. Matthew...
So is David James here?
Yes.
Let's get David up here. And then Rick Niermeyer, I believe. And then Salvador Hernandez. And Rick Niermeyer, I think you want to talk about 50A, AYSO, so maybe we'll just wait for that later, because right now, we're on, on this 55D. Your, your address, please, David.
Okay, my name is David James. I live at 4901 Heil Avenue in Huntington Beach. I'm here to support the association of disabled and seriously ill patients. I'm looking at the bill, and I'm seeing a number of areas that have got some serious problems, just starting out with the whereas, the assumptions that we're making, the underlying, you know, that we're building, are built on. And, you know, I'm looking at robberies of dispensaries, robberies of customers leaving dispensaries. Where was this happening? How did this happen? Increase in crime. Now, Charlie Beck from Los Angeles County did a study on the very same thing, this increase in crime statement, and he found just the opposite, just the opposite. There's no truth to that statement at all. Counterfeit recommendations, counterfeit cards. Now, wait a minute. We don't write the recommendations. We don't produce the cards. If someone walks into a drugstore with a prescription for OxyContin, they look at the thing, okay, it looks right, they're going to process it. They're not going to, what do you need this for? Why do you need this? It's totally illogical. There's so many things, one particular, particular issue I was having with the, this, that I don't want to take up all of your time. Employees, managers, or volunteers may not have been convicted or pleaded guilty, no contest to a felony or misdemeanor drug charge within the last four years. Now, you're telling me the people who actually took over, where the legislature kind of left gaps in the whole plan, took over to try and put together a good program, and some, some of them, because your interpretations of the law were different than their interpretations of law, have had to plead guilty, or, you know, for misdemeanors, or, so this, you're asking the people who have stepped forward, who are really helping you to not become involved in the entire operation. That's not acceptable. And then no more than 12 medical, I believe the 12 medical marijuana collectives issue has been addressed already, but I think they should be open to commercial areas as well. But please take a good look. As I say, there's a number of challenges in this proposition. Take a good look at it before you put it forward to a vote, and I thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you. Sal, Salvador, I believe it is, Hernandez, Hernandez. Rick wants to speak on both items.
Good evening, Mr. Plito, members of the council. It so happens that I was here to speak on another thing.
Do you want to speak on this one, too, since you're here?
No, no, no. This is perfectly, this is perfect, because I was here, and I didn't know that this was, this was happening. Now, I'm going to tell you a little... Now, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the area that I live in. I live on Pine Street, 1703 West Pine Street, a couple blocks away from the old potato bin. I've been in Santa Ana for 40 years. I love the potato bin. Right now, I hate that place. There's three dispensaries there, and a little area that is, the potato bin used to take all that space. Now, I chronically have pain in my body all the time. I feel, I feel the pain that these people have. But, like the gentleman said, let's leave it to the commercial pharmacist to dispense this. If you were to go by that place right now, you would not see a wheelchair going there to get marijuana. All I see is young people going in there to get marijuana. And that cannot happen. We, Santa Ana has been taking the rap for so long, and it's not fair.
Thank you. Did you want to speak about something else as well, where you originally came to speak?
Yes, sir, but I'll wait till that item comes up.
You got it.
Right now, I, I think that what you're doing is the right step, but, like I say, we need to put this in the people that know what these people need. Not leave it to somebody that's going to use this as a cover-up to make money, and that's what it comes down to, money. How, how much is our lives worth? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Salvador, thank you. Rick, Rick Niermeyer, it says here you want to speak on two items, but what I have is 50A and 25C. And Maria, you said you want to speak? Are you here? Do you, do you want to speak on, not on this, right? Yeah, so see, there are two, you want to speak twice, but on two other items? Not on, this would be a third one, you don't want the third one. Thank you, Rick, I just need to clarify. Thomas Gordon, I think you want to speak on this item, sir, so come on down. And after that, we'll have one final speaker, and then we're done.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm here tonight, I, I don't think anybody in this room or in this city has a problem with medical marijuana. People that have chronic and long-term debilitating pain, or medical issues such as cancer, AIDS, things like that, that's exactly what the people of the state of California intended when this was going on. The city of Santa Ana has banned marijuana, and we've had more than, what, 200 shops illegally opened in the city of Santa Ana that are basically selling drugs to drug addicts. The city of Santa Ana has every opportunity to pursue and open a legal business that can dispense medical marijuana to people that need medical marijuana. I urge you to take a strong stand, protect our neighborhoods, protect our children. You guys are also voting tonight to repeal the sex ordinance that keeps kids away, that keeps sexual, registered sex offenders away from children. Where, where are we going next? I mean, we're going to have pedophiles living across from schools, marijuana shops open everywhere, and Santa Ana is going to be a laughingstock of Orange County. Take a strong stand and say no. Let these people open a legitimate medical marijuana business. You don't have to tax it. We don't tax high blood pressure medicine, we shouldn't tax marijuana. But let's defend our children, defend our neighborhoods, and take a strong stand and say no to this, this for-profit drug sales. Don't do it. So, protect Santa Ana, protect the children, please.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you. Earlier, Candace, you, not Candace, but Debbie or somebody else wanted to yield time? Look, let me give one minute if that guy is still here and he wants to say anything.
Sure.
But please keep it short.
I was just thinking, when, when the light hit red, I was thinking, and you asked me to sum up, and I, I wanted to say some more good, good words about Senator Lou Correa and everything that we're doing, working with him, working with Amy, and working with Jono in, in his office, and...
And if that law passes, it'll address many of the things we're talking about here.
There's elements of this bill that are in conflict with, with that bill, which is still being evolved, and I think the number one thing, that, that having a state-level enforcement agency will be compliant with the federal COLE memo of last August, that absolutely calls for a state-level enforcement agency. You know, I, I still think that the best agency is the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. I know we're talking about medical marijuana. We're also talking about marijuana, which has been sold illicitly in, in back alleyways and in schoolyards for 100 years, and we need to start checking IDs. I'm certain that all of the, the back alleyway deals are for profit as well. And, and having a state-level enforcement agency as envisioned in SB 1262 will be very helpful, and just want to thank Senator Correa.
Thank you, thank you. Sir, in the back, you keep raising your hand, did you submit a card?
No, I didn't, but if I could get, you know, two, three minutes.
Well, look, it's a type of a hearing. Come on down, we'll give you two minutes, just come on down. And then, tell us where you're from, and then submit a card afterwards, and that way you don't have to stand in your back and raise your hand the whole time, and me wondering what happened, did I miss it, or? Go ahead, bring the mic down. Go ahead.
My name is Paul Lucas, I've known you guys for many years, it's been a while since I've seen you, but, you know, for this issue, I wanted to put a personal face on this. And I've always, for my entire life, had, since I was a little kid, I had suffered from pretty serious illnesses, you know, had bumps, leukemia, type 1 diabetic, have inner ear problems, and a lot of internal medicine problems. And I'm on, still to this day, about 15 medications a day, different medications. And that's down from about 20 to 25 a day, since I started using cannabis in, in 2009. And I used, out of the 15 that I, that I, that I still use, I use about half, because what cannabis does for me is helps put my internal environment, my, my chemistry, blood chemistry, into a better state of stasis, so that the medication actually works better. And I wanted to, you know, look at you guys, Michelle, Vincent, Miguel, David, Roman, I met you a long time ago, I've known you guys for a long time, ever since, you know, since you first ran. I've walked precincts for you, I've phone-banked for you guys, went to your fundraisers, and I want to put a personal face to this, okay? For you to look at, so, you know, you know, this, you know me, and I know you, I've known you guys for a long time, okay? And this issue is very, very important to me. So, the, the more you hinder the progress of, of, you know, medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, or whatever, you know, I heard somebody talking about, you know, never seeing a wheelchair go into the dispensary, but how many do you see, wheelchairs do you see going into the bar or your 7-Eleven to buy beer, or tobacco, or anything? Anytime, 24 hours a day, you could go buy something that could kill you, or make you kill somebody else, whether you're on the road. You know, no matter what your, your position is on, on the use of medical marijuana, the current state of affairs is just, is disastrous, okay? Both for, for public safety, for public health, and, and for, for the legal matters. It's costing millions of dollars that just don't need to be spent. And this whole relegation of putting people into industrial areas, or whatever, you know, why don't we put the bars there? Why don't we put the 7-Elevens there? Why don't we put the, the pharmacies where you get the OxyContin there? You know? Probably because you get sued, right? But apparently, people think pot smokers can be picked on. And, you know, I've known you guys for a while, I stood up for you at the DPOC in security endorsement a few years back. I ain't afraid of that, you know? I can't be pushed around, so...
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good seeing you guys.
Go ahead and fill out a form. So with that, Sal, you still there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. I just want, I ask you that periodically, because if, like, we, you know, lose the phone line or something, I, I just want to make sure. So with that, let's bring it to council for a comment and consideration. Should I start on the right, Councilmember Sarmiento Martinez? Or Tina Hedo, for that matter? Sal, if you want to say anything, you'd be sitting to my right.
Mr. Mayor, if anybody else wants to ask a question first...
Go ahead, can you speak up, please?
If anyone wants to ask a question first, I'm going to go ahead and, and, and wait until some of my colleagues ask their questions, and then I'll, I'll, I'll respond, if that's okay.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you. Councilwoman Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is not an easy issue to address, and I want to thank all the speakers for being here this evening to address this issue. I've recently done a lot of research, and, and for those of you that have played close attention to this, and what's happening at the state level, and even with Senator Correa, and what's happening at the federal level, we understand that the legalization of marijuana is going to end up becoming illegal, and from a federal level all the way to the state level. It's coming, but as a local municipality, we have to realize that we have to protect our neighborhoods. It's not about protecting, you know, just our children, it's about protecting the quality of life of our neighborhoods. So I'm not going to bring children into this, because it's not about our children. We all know the statistics about drug use in Orange County. It doesn't come from the children here in Santa Ana, it's from South County, and so the debate that if we legalize marijuana here, our children are going to utilize it. The reality is this, if you look at the statistics, our kids are not using drugs here in Santa Ana as they are in South County, the issues are over there. And so with that being said, I, I wanted to just make mention of that. Secondly, I understand that regulations are important, but over-regulations, you know, really can be counterintuitive and, and not productive. I realize that. Over the past couple days, and yesterday, we had a public safety meeting, and I want some questions that I would like addressed from our city attorney, and also Karen Halusa, our planning director, who I had the opportunity to meet with last Friday, and then some of the concerns and issues that I brought up yesterday at the Public Safety Committee meeting. You know, before, you know, I know Sal wants to call the question, and so I think he needs to hear, and the rest of my colleagues need to hear, some of the concerns that I had, one. And then, if, if the city council does decide, you need a simple majority to move this forward to the voters in November, if you do decide, I would like to include some things that I believe that were missing, that are extremely important. I also agree that having, if we do decide to move forward, the council decides to move forward in November, I, I do agree that using two zones in the city, you know, at the end of the day, we're not going to solve our problems, we're still going to have an illegal issue. My main problem is the enforcement issue. Whether we legalize this, or we have a ban, the problem is the enforcement plan here in the city of Santa Ana. The reason why we have 55 to 66, and that was a number that I was given yesterday at our Public Safety Committee meeting, and we have about 30 of those in litigation with our city attorney's office. This is the problem, is that we understand that there is a state law, and when we're, we don't have our police department full force going out there trying to shut these folks down. We have, we have our code enforcement out there, because this is a zoning and a land use issue. And so we have some, some issues of how do we go out and address this and use our resources? This is a policy decision from a council, so it's two different issues that we're, we're addressing here. One is an enforcement issue, that we need to make policy decisions, and saying, we're going to put this amount of money, as Garden Grove or other cities have done, to enforce this problem, and it's going to cost money, over a million dollars, if you're going to try to shut these folks down, and, you know, for drug trafficking purposes, et cetera. The second problem that we, we have here is that there, there is a state law. We, we do have a compassionate act, and how do you go around that? Right? And so we have a ban that says it's illegal to have it in storefronts, but then you have the state law, the compassionate law, saying that, you know, it's legal in many purposes, for medical purposes, for you to consume medical marijuana. And so, there's the problem, and why we have so many of them here that are illegal. So we need to address that issue. And I know there are some propositions that we were trying to propose yesterday at the Public Safety Meeting, and I, and I'm not going to steal Councilmember Navina's thunder, so I'll allow him to do that. But my second problem is this, if we decided to take this current ordinance that has, that is recommended by our staff to this council, to move forward to the ballot in November, my question is this, and I would like to know the pros and cons, Ms. City Attorney, as it pertains to, if you go to the voters with this ordinance, and you have them decide if they want to support it or not, say it passes, and we missed a couple things of, of regulations, or other things that we wanted to include, but what is it going to take? Can the city council, if, can the city council make amendments? Or do we have to take those back to the voter, to the voter, to re-approve whatever amendments the council wants to make, because we didn't add them to that ordinance?
First of all, Councilwoman Martinez, generally, when you present an initiative measure to the voters, the state law provides that you cannot then amend any of those provisions, unless you take it back to the voters. However, if your ordinance says, and is very explicit, that the city council reserves the power to regulate, then you can. The proposal that is before you contains two, what I call reservation of rights to the city council. We thought ahead, and we knew that the city council might want to preserve its authority to regulate, in the event that there were any changes in state or federal law that would make this ordinance inconsistent with those laws, or in the event there were any judicial decisions that made it inconsistent. So with respect to those items, you would be able to come back and amend the ordinance. You'd have to demonstrate you were doing so for those purposes. The second area where we reserve the rights for the city councils in the area of taxation, again, we wanted to be able to establish a taxation rate. I believe that the staff recommendation is 10%. However, you are, in this ordinance, there's a recommendation that you set the tax at 5% of the gross receipts, but you've reserved the power to make those changes by future ordinance. It is possible for the city council to reserve all the rights. In other words, you could prepare an ordinance tonight, or in the future. You have to make a decision at least 90 days before the next election, and we would, you know, propose that you do that as soon as you can, to give all the people involved time to prepare the documents. But you can reserve all of the power to the city council. It's possible for you to adopt the ordinance and say, this ordinance may be amended by members of the city, by majority vote of the council. That is an option for you to consider.
Great, thank you. So with, with that being said, I do have a lot more questions, but there are some things that I would like to add to the court, the current ordinance that is, has been presented to our staff for recommendation. One, I believe that there has to be some kind of sunset, whether it be two to five years, I would like for us to consider that. And then also, a public safety permit to renew, that would be renewed annually, and the CUP as well, that there also be, you know, some kind of sunset. I know the city of San Diego has five years, you know, and I know that, again, over-regulation is, is sometimes not counterproductive, but as well, when you're, but we need to have the appropriate regulations, and I believe these are the appropriate regulations, if we were to move this forward to the, to the voters. What I, what I would like to see is for us to remove the cap as well, because at the end of the day, we're already extremely restrictive, we're already saying that we're going to be 1,000 feet, and as you, we all know, Los Angeles, the city of San Diego, are facing issues and are being sued, and, as it pertains, because you can't have that many collectives within those zones. San Diego's a little different, I, I, you know, they have over 100 possibilities of where they could have these collectives. And so here, what we're trying to do is saying, you know, no more than 12 that has been recommended. I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I think it was initially eight, and Councilman Tina Hedo recommended that we go from eight to 12 for the reasons of taxation, to receive more money, to have an enforcement, to have more money for enforcement. And so, I would like, those are the three recommendations that I have currently, right now. I do have some more questions that I would like to ask, but I don't want to take all the time...
Why don't you hold them for a moment?
I will.
I'll call others, and then I'll come back to you. Thank you. Councilmember Vince Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I want to thank everybody who came before us and spoke today, and thanks staff for working on this. This hasn't been something that we, that was just tackled. I know staff has been working on this very aggressively, and I want to thank my colleagues, because I know that Councilwoman Martinez and myself weren't at the last meeting, so I know there was probably a robust discussion on this, and so thank you for the courtesy of allowing us to, to comment as well. I really wish all seven of us would have been in the same room at one time, because I think it's an important enough conversation that we should all be together. But sometimes, practicalities of graduation, like, that kept me from the last meeting, and, and other obligations sometimes prevent that. But, you know, I want to applaud my colleagues, because we're taking this issue on. Just having this conversation is important. It's something that hasn't been done in the past, even though it's been a problem that's been before us. been done in the past, even though it's been a problem that's been before us. If you all recall, six years ago, I believe, this council made a decision to ban and implement a moratorium on the collectives and dispensaries in the city, because we thought that that was the appropriate thing to do then. Nobody believed that it was a worthy enough conversation at that point to have, and we all felt that there was a compelling public interest and public policy reason for us to put the moratorium in place. Unfortunately, since that time, we've seen more collectives rather than less. So it's been a very ineffective approach that we've taken. So I think having this conversation, I think addressing this issue is an important one. And one of the reasons why we're having it is because, well, two reasons, really. One, because the federal government still hasn't taken up the question of whether or not regulation and legality is something that they want to pursue. In fact, they've, they've left that an open question. Now, the state has said that it is legal for medical purposes. So what it does to local municipalities like ours, it leaves us in, in flux. We don't know whether we're preempted by federal law. We don't know whether we're preempted by state law. And that's a very, very unfortunate position to be in, because we're now, we're given very little direction, very little consensus by both governing bodies that could preempt us and supersede us. So we may be going through this exercise, and the state will come down with a new, with, with new regs and new ordinances and laws, as, as was stated by a speaker regarding SB 1262, or something else. Or the feds may come down and preempt us. So what do we do? Do we not act or act? And the second reason why we have to now is because, quite literally, we have a compelling reason to do something, because there is an initiative that's already qualified on the ballot. We can discuss whether or not it has merit or whether it doesn't, but it's on there already. It's going to be something that you, as voters in the city, are going to have an opportunity to comment on and opine on. The question is an open one, whether it's good public policy or not, but if it passes, you all need to understand, whether or not we like it, we'll be subject to those dictates and mandates in that, in that measure. The only thing that I think we wanted to have as a body was an opportunity to put something else that's going to be competing on the ballot, so both, so the voter will have options. And that's what I think is an important thing here, is that the voter will have an opportunity to decide whether they want to adopt one measure or the other. And again, it's going to be a, it's going to be a decision that you all make. We could quite certainly take that away from you and approve our own ordinance, but we didn't think that was a prudent thing to do, because, again, it is such an important public policy decision that we believe that the voters should have, have an opportunity to comment on that. So my whole premise has always been, look, nobody wanted to have to make this decision. Obviously, we had a moratorium in place, so we, you knew what our position was. But now that we're faced with a measure that could pass, we have no recourse but to respond. And the way I look at this, and what I've spoken with staff and spoken with constituents and others about is, how do we regulate it in an intelligent way? And I've heard some very good comments tonight about being so restrictive that, in essence, what we're doing is we're approving a measure that's going to be a de facto ban on the dispensaries and on the collectives. And that's an unfortunate place to be, because we're going to be in the same, we're going to be in the same situation we are now. The, the situation we are now is that our moratorium, the reason why it's generated more dispensaries, is because we haven't allocated any resources to it. There's nothing, there's no, there's no monies or resources that are allocated to the enforcement. And one of the, one of the ancillary purposes of this measure, the measure that we're proposing, is that there would be some funds that would be generated so we could address the secondary impacts from viol, from folks who opened up dispensaries that are in violation of the ordinance. Right now, we don't have that. So, again, that number, whether it's eight, whether it's 10, whether it's 12, again, I, I think I, I do agree with my colleague that putting that number there is very deceptive, because we don't know what that number is going to be. And, and that's where I'm having a little bit of discomfort, and, and I know I've shared it with some of, some staff members, is that these are estimates of how many collectives we're going to have at the end of the day. But what we have, finally, should give us some guidance. If it is going to be 10, then that's going to render a certain number of, an amount of resources that we can have to, to regulate this and to enforce it. So one of the things I would suggest, Mr. City Manager, is, and I think what's been said, is that if we limit it to just the two zones, it really does become a de facto ban. If there's a way we could broaden that, and one of the reasons why I think we could include some other zones, is that I've always seen this, and I've always come from the place that this has been a medicinal reason. This isn't for recreational purposes. This isn't what, this isn't what Colorado approved. This is something that we all followed the mandate from the state, saying that it's the Compassionate Act for people who have terminal illnesses and, and conditions that could be alleviated by the use of marijuana. So if we could open it up to include medical offices or medical clinics, because really, I think it should be dispensed by clinicians, physicians, people who can actually prescribe this when there are people who have, who have conditions that could, could be addressed by this. So just a couple of other suggestions that I, that I saw when I, when I read through this, is that the hours of operation go to midnight, and I know that the inspections are, I believe they're, they're limited to 10:00 PM. So if we could have some consistency on inspections that run with the hours of operation. In other words, if we're going to have inspections cut off at 10, well, then hours of operation should be cut off at 10 as well. Something else that I believe is that, should be included, are the fines. I believe that the fines right now are capped at 500 per violation. I think, look, if, if we're going to be going down this path, I think that whoever become, whoever becomes operators of this should be subject to fines of at least 1,000, because it's, I think, something that is such a threat to public safety, that we want to make sure that people take this as a deterrent. And when they operate, they operate responsibly. Labeling, testing of any products that are going to be dispensed, obviously, is something that should be included as well. But I do believe that a sunset clause should be included. I do believe that a CUP or some process that could be reviewed on an annual basis. So if somebody is given a permit or a license to operate, that can be, that can be rescinded if, for some reason, there's some violations that we find. I think those would be good measures to take. And with that, I, I want to hear some more comment, but I think that we're headed down the right path. Again, we're forced into this conversation, but I think it's the responsible one to have.
Thank you for that. Let me continue, and then we'll, we'll come back, because I know there's more. Mayor Protem Tina Hedo, right now, you'd be next. Do you want to step in at this time, or do you want to wait a little bit longer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and allow my colleagues to comment, and then I'll comment towards the end.
Could you just speak up a little bit? I couldn't quite hear the end of that.
I said, I would like to have my colleagues continue so that I could speak up towards the end.
Continue the comments.
All right. So let's continue here, then. Let me go to my left. Councilmember Amesco, would you like to go?
Sure. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I completely agree with my colleagues, Michelle Martinez and Mr. Sarmiento, Councilmember Sarmiento. I believe we do need a CUP, sunset in five years, Public Safety Annual Permit. But I would also like to add, just because of unforeseen impacts, once the collectives open, we don't know what may come up. And I think it's important to include, in our initiative, a city council that clearly state that the city council has the authority to regulate. So if we can add that, I would, you know, that's my one recommendation.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna, would you like to comment at this time?
Sure. You know, this is, obviously, a difficult situation, a difficult issue that we're talking about. And this is an issue that I've lived my entire life. Unfortunately, my brother got involved with, with negative activities that led to legative behavior that led to him being incarcerated. Fortunately, he passed away in prison not too long ago. And it's because of the drug world and the decisions that he ended up making. And that was a horrible way to live, or horrible effect that it had on me and my, and my family. And there's unfortunately, too many of our kids that are facing the same challenges. On the flip end, my father was, was a survivor of cancer. I apologize. He passed away from cancer, and he had chronic pains, and he utilized this medicinal value to assist in helping. There'd be times that I'd be watching my father sleeping, and you can see the anguish and pain in his face, and the man was just sleeping. He wasn't even moving. So I know that, that there is some medicinal value to this. How do we move forward with this? There's a lot of unknowns. I, I'm more than happy to say, right here, right now, I do not like drugs. I don't think they're positive for our community. I don't want them in our community. At the same time, I think we're, our hand is forced in this situation. And how do we, again, move forward? It sounds like there's still a few unknowns and a few concerns. I'm not sure if this is very time sensitive, that we need to address it today. If we could push it back to have some additional conversations, and taking consideration other points of view that maybe, maybe we have not taken into consideration yet. But this is a very challenging concern, issue that we're, that we're facing right now. And the impact it's going to have is not only going to be five years or six years. It's going to be the, the direction that the city takes for the next couple of decades. And I think that we need to do our due diligence and, and cross the Ts and dot the Is as we move forward. And I'm not sure that that's exactly what we did. So again, I'm not sure if this is time sensitive, if this is something that we could, we should have the, the conversation continue, but that would be the direction that I would be moving into currently.
Thanks for that. Let me continue to take comment, then I'll comment as well, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to see what we would like to do. Sal, and we're going to come back to you. I know you're above us all right now. You're somewhere up there, Sal. Please, Councilmember Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's clearly a lot of questions. I think all of us on the, on the dais have expressed. So it is something that I think we do, we have to be extremely cautious as a council.
I know. Why don't you do?
What we move forward with. I don't know that we're ready to make a, a recommendation or decision tonight. One of the things that I think we do need to wrestle with ourselves is, is who are we doing this for? This idea of potentially putting a ballot measure on to support storefront dispensaries. The people who came and spoke before us, a great majority of them, almost all of them, were not residents of Santana. I think there may have been one who was asking us to, to consider, and there were a couple others that I think were addressing us and asking us to not support legalizing these dispensaries. The other question is, if we do allow for these dispensaries and legalize them, what is the net benefit to, to our residents? What is the, our, our charge as council members is to look out for the interests of our city, of our residents. So what is the net gain? When we've heard that, all of the, the negative effects, that the issue of quality of life, the negative impacts of quality of life, one of our council colleagues here mentioned that it's a threat to public safety. So with this reality, how are we going to, to address this? And as was mentioned by one of my colleagues, the, the issue is enforcement. Six years ago, we, we took a position, we put out, did initially an emergency ordinance or a moratorium, and then we came back and reinforced it, and we said, "We don't want to see these in, in our city." What we ended up having is a lot of illegal ones come out. And we see all that, the negative effects that those have brought up, from, from robberies to just loitering, to a, a number of different negative impacts. A lot of youth, that was something that, that our police chief was, was able to, to address, young people in their, maybe later teens, young adults, that, that are the ones who are observed out there, making the patrons to these facilities that are out there, these illegal facilities that are out there. So we're perpetuating drug use, essentially. So we're seeing all these negative, negative effects. That's the only thing that has changed between now and when these started entering our city. So does it make sense for us to go and take the step to legalize and to say that they're okay in, in our town? Are we taking the step to legalize in order to capture $800,000 of, of revenue? And does it make sense for us to do that, to try to capture that? So the, by, by legalizing these, it's not going to make those 55 or some go away. So it's still, the question that we still have is, how are we going to address those? A question that I do have, a couple for, for, for staff, one is to our, our city attorney, the current ordinance that we have, the, the ban for these dispense, these storefront dispensaries, do we have included in that a, a ban to medical marijuana, or can medical marijuana be legally used, and, and can people have access to it legally in the city of Santana today with the current ban that we have?
It's a really interesting question, because your current regulations do not ban medical marijuana.
Okay. So it's legal. Medical marijuana is legal in the city of Santana.
City hasn't done that. What the city has banned are dispensaries, and the state law that created this program, which is really a program for immunity from being prosecuted, it's not this program that says you have access to marijuana. The whole program is about having immunity if you have these qualified cards, so that you can have it on your person and you wouldn't get prosecuted. Nowhere in any of the laws, not in the initiative that the California voters passed, not in subsequent legislation, is there the word dispensary. Nowhere. So the city's existing regulations are very consistent with the law, in that they don't allow dispensaries, but consist, and, and consistent with the law, because they allow the dis, giving away or buying medical marijuana if they're affiliated with some type of medical use, like a pharmacy, or hospital, or a clinic.
So, so a clinic, if, if this was truly medical need, a, a doctor's office, a pharmacy, Western Medical, any pharmacy within the city, or, or a clinic, a clinic, medical facility, can choose to dispense
Yes.
medical marijuana currently today in the city.
Under the city's existing regulations, the answer is yes.
Okay. So, so essentially, what we have is, is people that have chosen to make money and to sell these at storefronts, and, and the doctor's offices and clinics who can choose to see this, make this available to their patients for one reason or another, has not, which is kind of an interesting thing for us to, to think about, consider. City manager, the, the idea that we're discussing is capturing, legalizing these dispensaries, storefronts, a number of them, to capture some tax revenue. Right now, that the, the estimate has been about $800,000. There was also expressed this, this, the fact that we don't have, so two questions that I have for you, is whether our enforcement, whether, one, do we have an enforcement plan currently in effect, and is that enforcement plan as robust as it can be?
Councilman Benavides, Mayor, Member of City Council, the answer is yes. We do have enforcement that's taking place with code enforcement and a legal department. And could it be more robust? The answer, of course, is yes, with more resources.
Okay. So it can be a more robust plan or effect. I, I think that there's, there's still, even yesterday at the discussion at Public Safety, we talked about how there is an opportunity and frankly, need to, to do more of a comprehensive enforcement, a plan. But this idea of $800,000 that we potentially be able to capture, could you identify $800,000 current today in, in our budget, perhaps, again, either from recently renegotiated contracts for cities jail, or, or, or future, something that we have pending?
Councilman Benavides, Mayor, Member of City Council, the answer is, until recently, we had a deficit. We do have a projected surplus. We are trying to reach several goals, including a reserve fund, capital improvements. Those are a variety of needs. We do not have additional funding identified at this point, but in the next budget process, or if the council desired, we could identify more funding, but that would have to be a priority by the city council.
So ultimately, it's up to us as a council to let you know what the priorities and where we want to
Yes.
direct funds and resources. Should we choose to identify this as a priority, we could direct you, and there would be funds that we would be able to, to use, to, to do a more robust enforcement
Yes.
plan, enforcement action. So again, it, it comes back to, to policy decision. What are our priorities as a council? Two last questions that I have for, for our city attorney, and, and before that, a comment. Last council meeting, there were three options that, that staff presented to us. One was do nothing, which I think all of us agree that it's not prudent to do that. There is a ballot measure that has been, that has qualified. So we have, we've decided to put a competing measure. One option is to put a competing measure that allows the dispensaries. We know the ill effects that it has, that those have already in our city. The other is to put a ballot measure, a competing measure that would basically reinforce our current ban. So that is still an option that has not been discussed, or hasn't, is not necessarily being, being considered, I, I don't think yet, by us here on the dais. And that still continues to be. And that still continues to be my recommendation. So my question to city attorney, when there was some, a question as to a potential threat to litigation, and that's one of my frustrations is that, at this point, I think we're at the mercy of these folks. And basically, they essentially have come and told us that if we, if ours, if we move forward with ours, that they're going to sue us. So my question is, is the proposed, the city proposed ballot measure, is it foolproof to litigation? What are the threats there? And then another question that I have, you could choose to answer in whichever order, is if we were to put a ballot measure to reinforce our ban, and if that were to lose, could we eventually go back to the voters with another? And if basically, if a ban were to lose, could we later go back to the voters with some other form of regulation?
I'll answer the second question first because it's easier. No matter what's adopted, whether the council adopts an ordinance, whether you present initiative measure, or the measure that is qualified for the ballot is presented by the advocates that were here tonight. Doesn't matter at any time, the city council could always present another measure to the voters. The only time that you're restricted from presenting a measure is if a measure fails on an issue. You're restricted for one year from bringing back the same measure. But the voters have adopted a law, nothing would stop the city council from presenting a new law to the voters at a subsequent election. You can always address it. The other issue of potential litigation, I don't like to comment publicly on litigation issues. My duty is to protect you. I have spoken with staff about some concerns and ways that we can make this measure even more bulletproof. What we've done with this measure is we've balanced what staff recommendation, what the staff's recommendation is and the desire to regulate with some of the cases that we have out there. I will tell you that I think that we could see litigation. I would expect to see that primarily because we have advocates that like another measure. So my view, and I've said this, is that I think that there may be litigation of a measure that they like doesn't pass, and they want to outdo our measure. The whole medical marijuana field is filled with litigation. There's a lot of money involved. And where there's money, there's the ability for people to keep challenging. So you are venturing into new territory. There aren't a lot of cities that have done what you've done. Mr. Pappas, in his letter that he submitted today, said, "Well, look, the city of Long Beach went out there and tried to regulate, and we sued them and won on the CUP issue." Or we sued this city. So I think the mere fact that you're doing this could invite litigation.
Is an outright ban more defensible?
Well, I think an outright ban on the dispensaries is more defensible. Because there's a published case that says a city can, under its police powers, decide its land use issues. And as a matter of land use, you don't want dispensaries anywhere in your city. The court has already spoken on that issue and said that's a local control issue, that's a policy issue for the cities to decide on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. So that was my last question, last comment, is that I think a lot of the folks that I have been hearing from, residents in the city, indicated that they signed the petition because they thought that there was, that the dispensaries were currently allowed in the city, and that they were basically duped. Because the people who were paid to go out there and collect signatures were saying, "Let's protect our kids and regulate this." And so if we, I believe that if residents in our city were informed and had the option to ban the dispensaries altogether, that they would choose that option because that was their intent, from what I'm hearing from a lot of our residents. So just things for us to consider as a council. Again, my position is so that we put a competing measure out there to reinforce our ban. Thank you.
Sal, what I'm going to do right now, if you're fine with it, is either have you make questions, or I can do questions, and I'll come right back to you. What would you prefer?
I can go ahead and speak now, Mr. Mayor. You as the chair should.
I just can't hear you well enough. Just speak as loud as you can, please.
Could you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. I said I could speak now because you as a chair should be the last one to speak.
All right. Please go ahead, Sal.
Okay. First and foremost, thank you for, the public for coming out, and staff for all their hard work, and my colleagues as well. I've heard everyone's comments, and there are a lot of comments out there that I do agree with. One of the main things that we have to take a look at is prioritizing what is going to increase the quality of life amongst our residents. It is, it has been reported to us that there are anywhere between 55 to 60 marijuana dispensaries operating in our city. And that's of the ones that we do know about. And as it was stated earlier, we don't have the resources to go out and crack down like we would like to. And therefore, that's why we've, that's why so many dispensaries have come into the city since the moratorium. We have more now than we did back then. So obviously, that, the moratorium is not working. It cannot work without resources being applied to it. The question then becomes, is here as a city, we have, we went through a time, three years ago, where we almost went bankrupt. The economy was bad, there were some bad moves from the previous administration that was in here that put us in that situation. It took a great deal of work to get out of it. And today, we're looking at a surplus. And the question is, do we want to spend all of our money that's coming in that, in fighting this battle? And as you know, the United States federal government has had a war on drugs since the 1980s. And drug use in the United States has not decreased, it has only increased. It does not work. The difference between them and us is they get to print money, we don't. So the question is, what are, what is it that we are trying to do to increase the quality of life? Councilmember Benavides does not like this. I think what Councilmember Benavides wants to do is fight the dispensaries at all costs. And that's fine. That's his prerogative. As an elected official, he has the right to have that paradigm. However, what I am seeing is a voter initiative, a marijuana voter initiative, that's coming before the voters, that is going to allow those dispensaries within less than, within 500 feet, that's less than two football fields from schools, that's going to allow them to be in any general business area. That means they can be near you. It doesn't even address, Mr. Mayor, the issue about mobile marijuana dispensaries. So just like our lunch trucks that we see out in the city, under their ordinance, you could have those mobile marijuana dispensaries. Do you see, and I'm just, I'm just listing a few. This is what we're facing. If we don't wake up as a council, as leaders of this city, we're talking about a decrease in quality of life? That's what we're going to get. And that's something that many of my colleagues understand, and that's why we're moving forward. This is a defensive move, Mr. Mayor, so that we can get ahead of this issue. By regulating them to industrial areas, it increases the quality of life of our residents because it gets them out of their neighborhoods. And if there's one operating illegally, at least we have revenue now to go after that dispensary and shut it down that's running illegally. Is it a fix-all? Absolutely not. But you know what? I'm tired of seeing our parks run down. I'm tired of seeing dilapidated buildings that we own not refurbished. We have the money now to create a better quality of life for our community. And we have an avenue here where we can restrict, we can put them in a certain area, and we can stop their hours of operations. You know, under the current voter initiative that is proposed to the voters this November, there is no restriction on how long they can operate. That means they can stay open as long as they want. I asked you that question, is that what we want? The answer is no. And that's why I'm adamant, and that's why many of my colleagues are adamant, about finding a solution, a competitive ballot measure, that lets our citizens decide. At the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, what we're trying to do here is create something that allows for our citizens to choose. And I believe in our citizens. Mr. Benavides, our council member Benavides likes to say that there's a lot of people he talks to that have his opinion. That, the word "lot" is very, it can mean three, it could mean 100. My, the way I've always operated is by facts, and the proof is in the pudding. And that is why we need to put this on the ballot for voters to decide, because a lot will then speak. Either way, they may speak in favor of what I'm proposing, or what we're trying to propose, or they may speak against it. But at the end of the day, that's the only true way we're going to find out what the truth is and how our community feels about what we're talking about. But, Mr. Mayor, what we're trying to do is give our community a choice. And there's never wrong, there's never anything wrong with giving our community a choice. It may very well be that our community votes no on both, and then comes to us and says, "We want you to stop this at all cost." And at that point, as elected officials, we need to listen to our community and stop it at all cost. But right now, we are putting this measure up because it's better for our communities, it's better for our residents, and it's better for us to be able to enforce something that we cannot enforce right now. So I want to thank everyone for their time. I want to thank you for allowing me to come in and speak, even though I'm not in the state. It's been a long night, but this is something that I thought was very, very important, and I needed to give my two cents. If it's the will of the council to go back to our city attorney and allow her to create something that is going to be even better than what we have before us, so that we can vote on it in the following council meeting, I would say, "Let's do it," if that's where we want to go. I would also say to our city attorney, it is very important, if, we all have the right to our opinions, and we all have the right to interject things. But I would ask Councilmember Benavides, if he's going to go ahead and offer suggestions about the ordinance, that he in fact then vote for the ordinance. Because he has the right to not vote for the ordinance, and that's okay. But he has to give us the opportunity then to create the best ordinance we possibly can. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll end it. And it's okay to disagree. Doesn't mean anything, doesn't mean that I, that I am opposing all of Mr. Benavides's ideas. And this, I think he has a lot of great ideas, on this one, we differ. And so I think that the best interest of our community is to move forward, find a good initiative so that we can put out there so that the voters can vote on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say, couldn't you at least put a still shot up of Councilman Martino, just so we could have?
Actually, we could put a photo, and we could like start drawing around it, and he wouldn't know. No, I'm kidding, Sal. But could you repeat everything after "thank you, Mr. Mayor," because your mic kept going in and out?
Are you kidding?
Yeah. Yeah, I am kidding. I am kidding. No, we heard you, Sal.
Oh, don't kill me.
We heard you, and it was a good, you know, set of comments, and I think reflecting the thought that we're all giving this. But look, I've got a few questions of staff, and then I have a few suggestions. One thought I have is unfortunately, in cities, you know, you can't do double-blind, you know, studies the way you're doing in science or in other fields, to where when you really want to compare something, you can test against it by having a control group. You know, here, we can't. So we say things like, you know, "The moratorium didn't work." We don't have another Santa Ana where they had no moratorium and where we could really compare, well, what happens when that occurs? I think all we have are experience over time. And what I think we can understand in terms of an analogy is that if you have no enforcement ability, after a while, people figure it out. They figure out you don't have the ability to enforce. So if somebody wants to push the law or get away with something, word travels pretty quickly. And you end up having, in essence, you know, a moratorium, but a moratorium in name only. And that's pretty much what I think we've had, especially more recently, when there's been a lot, I think, more growth in terms of dispensaries and what's going on in other cities and throughout the state. And just culturally, you know, I think there's a change out there in terms of people's, you know, perceptions and the way they're voting. And we've seen that on many, many fronts. So what I'd like to ask right now of staff is, you know, we're talking about raising some money by taxing. What realistically could we do? And I don't know if the chief has any idea, or if the city manager, when we talk about, you know, potentially code enforcement, or the city attorney, if the city attorney could talk about the city attorney's office. But I just want to get, you know, within an order of magnitude, some idea. You know, what can we do with a million dollars? What can we do with $2 million? Because it sounds like a lot of money, but if you really start doing stuff, it's not a lot of money. So if you could all just give us a little bit of feedback as to the magnitude of the dollars, what would we do in code enforcement, city attorney's office, and in the police department? Please go ahead.
Before the city manager does, I really want to make something clear. Because I want to, I want to make sure that the folks in the city attorney's office who are working very hard on these cases don't feel like the work that they're doing is being considered non-enforcement. We have 30 cases filed right now against dispensaries. And when I got to the city two years ago, and we were pretty successful in enforcing some of the restrictions, just so the council knows, give you a little bit of historical background. We also lost through attrition two full-time attorneys that we've never, never replaced. So we lost two full-time bodies that I think when we had them, they were doing what I would consider a decent job in really holding the line. I believe that one of the reasons we saw the proliferation of these dispensaries was when the advocates were circulating the ballot that is now qualified here in Santa Ana. And the reason is, there's a very important provision in there. It will grandfather in those dispensaries that are already operating. So I think a great part of the problem that we're experiencing today has more to do with that than a real enforcement issue. I think people got the message, "Oh, there's this great qualified ballot, you know, there's people are circulating. We better get into that city because if it passes, those people are going to be grandfathered in." Or at least they're going to get a higher shot, a probability of being here. So I wanted the council not to miss that point.
And so that, in essence, has nothing to do with the moratorium. That's a new factor, that's a new situation that's encouraged more activity.
Correct. And that may be some speculation on my part, but I think that is a coincidence that cannot be ignored.
Thank you for that. But back to the money, if we had more money, would we be able to do more enforcement? How would we work with that? Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, political member of city council. The answer is yes, because there would be revenue collected. Right now, we're getting zero revenue. And normally, when you have to regulate activities, the people that are being regulated usually pay for the regulation if it's permitted by law. So with the $1 million, which is the estimate, we would have five people added to community preservation division, three inspectors, community preservation inspector, supervisor, and a senior officer, office assistant. That would be $600,000. Building safety division, we would add a couple of inspectors in that area for the non-permitted construction. It usually goes along with this, this type of activity. We would add a full-time city attorney to the office that would supplement the already existing people. And in the police department, we would add a police officer and a special investigations unit. There's a whole plan here, Mayor, I can go through exactly what to do, vet tagging, enforcement, those types of things. And this would be the staff required, and that was asked for by Councilman Benavides, and we have this listed here.
Look, I have more questions, but Councilmember Martinez just wanted a clarification. You're talking about one additional police officer in that plan? Do you have a?
That's ridiculous. And, you know, we understand that this is a land use, and this is why we can't regulate. One officer? We already have issues with our code enforcement where they cannot go out there and do the, and have the role of a police officer. Look, and I didn't want to make mention of this, and the reality is this, we don't even have a vice unit. And so we're not out there dealing with prostitution or drugs, period. We don't have a vice unit. And I'm going to say this publicly, and sometimes there are things that we shouldn't. But look, when you're telling me, Mr. City Manager, that you want us to move forward, we don't have an enforcement, you know, policy or process, and you're saying with this $1 million, we're only going to hire one officer to deal with this problem? It's ridiculous, and I would not support that.
Well, and this is part of the reason I want to have this discussion, because I think if we could raise additional money, we can obviously do more. And I'm just trying to point that $1 million really doesn't go that far, because by the time we talked about, you know, code enforcement and how you deal with about $600,000 going there, I know that if we ask the city attorney's office to do even more than they're doing now, that's going to cost money. And look, money can come from the general fund. But if we do that, now we're taking money from other areas to subsidize, you know, a different operation here. And we need to be very conscientious of that. We need to be very aware. We need to be, you know, on top of our game as we consider this. What I'm concerned about is that we get into something, because we, we have to be proactive, and I agree with that. But we have to be very deliberate as we're proactive, otherwise there's going to be unintended consequences. And I don't want unintended consequences that we didn't give enough thought to. consequences that we didn't give enough thought to, and, and then after the fact, it's like, gosh, you know, we thought we had more flexibility, because we said that we'd be able to still regulate, or we thought we'd be able to do something differently, and, and, and then we can't. Let me ask of Karen Hallusa a question, a different area. I know earlier, we were talking about the physical locations, and, and so we've identified two industrial areas. And look, by the way, I agree, you know, I want to keep these away from homes, from, you know, schools, from churches, you know, the, the less impact to the community that wants nothing to do with this, the better. And, and so limiting the areas, I think, is, is, is the right direction. However, I believe Councilmember Sarmiento made a very good point earlier, where he said, "Look, if we limit it too much, then, again, it's like a moratorium, and, and, and the bigger the moratorium area, the, the bigger the area that we have to police, if you will, whether it's code enforcement, or city attorney, or, or the police department, the more the cost is going to be." And if that cost is really going to be $5 or $6 million a year, which, which might be in that magnitude, depending on what level of enforcement we want, let's understand that. On the other hand, if we do what Councilmember Sarmiento was suggesting, which was potentially distribute them in areas that are still industrial, still not neighborhoods, still protecting the community, but possibly more flexibility, what I want to understand is, does that maybe make the enforcement less costly, because we don't have as much area of the city to, to, you know, to potentially enforce? So if you have the ability to answer that, Karen, please do so, or, or, or the portion that's within your area, please.
Sure. At the last council meeting, the question came up, and the council had a discussion...
Pull up the mic a little bit, so it's loud.
Sorry. At the last council meeting, the, the council discussed reducing some of the separation criteria that were in the ordinance that was recommended, that we presented to you at the last meeting. As it was written at that time, there was a thousand-foot separation between dispensaries and another thousand feet from homes, schools, and parks. That would net, we estimated, about a maximum of eight dispensaries. There was interest in the council of being able to increase that to a cap of 12, again, in the interest of generating revenue that could then support enforcement activities. We looked at reducing the separation criteria between dispensaries to 500 feet, and in doing that, and still maintaining the permitted zones of just the light and the heavy industrial zones in the city, that would be able to net probably, in the area of around 24 dispensaries could fit within those areas, simply by reducing the separation between dispensaries from 1,000 feet to 500 feet.
Karen, let me just ask a question, Jermaine, at that point, before you continue. We're, we're talking about reducing the separation distance between dispensaries...
Yes.
But do we still have the 1,000-foot limit as it relates to residents, or churches, or schools?
What I was just saying was that if we reduce it to 500 feet between the dispensaries...
Only. Not, not a 500-foot reduction elsewhere.
Right, and still keep it within those light and heavy industrial zones. It could, it could conceivably result in as many as 24 dispensaries within those areas without having to reduce the separation from homes, schools, or parks. If that cap were removed, the 12 cap, and that standard were decreased, our estimate, and again, this is a, this is a rough estimate, because it's going to depend on the specific location...
Sure, where they locate, et cetera.
But we estimate that it would be possible, within those zones, to realize perhaps as many as 24. Now, that, then, the reason I'm understanding that the council's interested in this is in order to generate more revenue, because more dispensaries, more taxes are paid, more revenue is, is, is realized.
Now, now, do you think it's a linear function? In other words, if we had 24 dispensaries, would we have $2.4 million, or do you think it drops off?
I, I don't really think it's possible to give a clear estimate of what that revenue will be, honestly.
But more dispensaries, more revenue, in some fashion?
Potentially, yes, yes. And the list of positions that City Manager Cavassos read off, that is not a fully formulated and recommended enforcement plan. When we discussed this with the Public Safety Committee last night, we said that if we were directed to do so, we would come up with a fully functioning enforcement plan. And what we were asked to do was to look at $1 million, and to see what that would afford us in the way of staff that could be used to enforce. Enforcing this from the standpoint of drug trafficking is very different from enforcing this from the standpoint of an illegal land use and compliance with land use standards. The outline of the staffing that was presented just a few moments ago is really one that is meant to enforce the land use standards that are being presented in this ordinance.
Look, look, something that I'd like to suggest is that we consider, as a council from a policy position, that monies that are generated, assuming we do all this, and, and it works out, that monies that are generated are used for this area. In other words, that we're not somehow going to generate money from this and then not use it for enforcement, that whether it's in the, you know, the police, or the city attorney, or out of the city manager's office, that, that, you know, that, that that's our intent, and that we, you know, keep track of that. And, and, and obviously, that if the numbers are greater, I think that would be a good thing along the lines of what Councilmember Sarmiento was saying in terms of, you know, the areas where they could exist. And also, frankly, you know, I think 500 feet from each other is not as significant of a number as 500 feet from a resident, or, or another business, or a school, or a church. So I think we should keep the 1,000 feet, again, to protect people that, that, you know, are not otherwise going to be impacted, you know, versus the, the proximity between two dispensaries. So with that, what I would maybe suggest is that we consider a two-week continuance, so that all this input can be, and, and, and I'm not suggesting we stop it now, but, but that we continue to give the city attorney and talk to each other about input, and then, and then not vote today until we get a chance to see what this looks like. So let's go for another round, please, Councilwoman Martinez.
Along with that, I would also like to have, to, to bring back to us an enforcement action plan, along with whatever...
I would, I would be happy to add that to a request.
Thank you.
Let's just go down, because everybody wants to be...
Mayor, this is very important, I don't think...
Please.
Karen's point was well-heard. Karen, could you please come back again? We, we need to have direction, because we're getting mixed messages. This is not heavily a police issue. We don't plan on hiring lots of police officers. This was a land use, and that's why we only had one officer. If we want to go back to law enforcement, where it's drug trafficking, then it should be all police officers, and we could put down 10 of them. So Karen, could you maybe give a little bit more of an explanation why we only had one officer there?
Yes.
Because I want to come back and have someone say, "This is ridiculous," because this is exactly what we need to know, is how you want to do this.
And we'll give you input right now, but before you speak, Karen, Councilwoman Martinez, can you articulate your point?
Yes, and maybe our, our chief of police can come up here and address this issue. We all know with, with, with the dispensaries and the collectives, the issues that we have, this is a really a cash kind of business. And there have been many robberies, you know, and that's a, a major crime problem here in the city. And so, it's not only here, it's in Los Angeles, it's San Diego, San Jose. That's the issues that were, that, that we need to address. And so, like, for, before Karen answers her, her question, and then we, we do need to give policy direction for this enforcement action plan, of what kind of action plan we actually want, because the one that was proposed is one based on a land use, and I understand that. But there's another matter that we need to address, and that is the crime issue. So Chief Rojas, can you please address the crime issues as it pertains? My main concern is more the robberies, and, and based because of the cash that is at hand in those businesses.
Mr. Mayor, once Mr. Our Chief Rojas answers, may I please make a question, or make a comment and ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be happy to call on you, Count Mayor Protemtina Hedo. Just let him finish this, and I'll call on you.
Thank you.
In terms of crimes that have occurred in or around the dispensaries, they have included robberies, burglaries, trespassing, loitering. There have been quite a few issues that we've responded to in terms of a, a patrol response.
So code enforcement can't address that issue. Their issue and our building inspectors are dealing with the land use issue, two different things. And so, we have two different matters before us that we need to address. I understand that we do need code enforcement officers to address the land use, but just as what he noticed, we need to deal with that crime element as well. And so, one officer is just not going to cut it. If we're going to want to have a true enforcement action plan, if we decide to go to the, to the voters, and if, and this, our ballot initiative passes, what is the action plan to make sure, then we go through the lottery system? How, how are we going to get rid of these illegal actors, and making sure that they're gone? And the only way we're going to be able to do that is with law enforcement.
And how much will it cost?
And how much will it cost, exactly?
I'd just like to address this issue of the enforcement plan. What does it look like? When do we bring that back to you? There is some time sensitivity to meeting mandated deadlines to get an initiative on the ballot, and Sonia and our city clerk, Maria Wezar, can speak to that more in detail. This enforcement plan is going to be very, very important, and I think that we should take some time to develop that. We need to research best practices. We need to look at other cities where they've done, had a lot of success in closing down illegal dispensaries. If we close down illegal dispensaries, that will reduce the associated crime that Chief Rojas was talking about. It has to be a multi-pronged approach, and I would recommend that if the council did want to direct us to formulate an enforcement plan, that we be given the opportunity to do that research, to bring that back to the Public Safety Committee, and to really put together a very robust plan that, that you could all take action on, separate from the question that you're all discussing tonight, which is how to move forward, or, or how you might move forward with a competing ballot initiative.
Chief Rojas, would you want to address the same question? I mean, you already did, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protemt. Go ahead, Sal.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, but speak up. Just get as close to that mic, or whatever. If you're talking to a phone, whatever you can, just give it your best.
Can you hear me better now?
Why didn't you do that two hours ago?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do anything I can to get, get better reception, so I apologize if I didn't do that earlier. First and foremost, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for, for your honest response to the questions that were laid before you. Something that we're not looking at is that a question was asked, how many, how, how many, or what would a million dollars buy? And I think that what was given was a correct answer. The city manager didn't try to create some type of number out of the blue. He gave an honest answer. Does that mean that we, as a city, are not going to allocate any other funds to, to eradicate those dispensaries that are, that are here illegally? I think that's far-fetched. I think that Councilmember Benavides, who says he wants to get rid of all of them, would also be willing to go ahead and add some more money to it, to continue to eradicate those that are, that are, that are in our city illegally. But the question was a simple question, "How much does a million dollars get?" And the response was, "Correct." Now, we, as a city council, if we want to go further with that, that's a policy decision that we have to make. So I think we have to be very careful when we start shooting down our staff, when they're just giving us a, a response to the questions. Look, we can debate all we want. The, the reality is, we've had our talk, and we've been able to talk about it, so now, let's give direction to staff, to see what it is we would like to see in that ordinance. And if there's four, which is really what the consensus is, if there's four people agreeing to something, then let's go ahead and move forward. And everybody else has the right to vote no. But I think that we have to be very, very careful in how we approach this situation, because the reality is, Mr. Mayor, that yes, I, I think you, you presented a very, very valid point, that the moratorium is not, it's difficult to measure on, if, if that was really the reason why. I have to hand it to you. You should be on my debate team. But the other, the other, the other issue here is, we need to present something to give our community an option. It's not going to be perfect, just like our strategic plan wasn't perfect, but because it was not perfect, it didn't mean that we didn't go forward. So I think someone made a comment earlier, I think it was Councilmember Amesqua, who stated that in the ordinance, it should say that the council has the ability to make changes in the near future, if we deem necessary. So I think that's something that we have to take a look at and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protemt, and whatever you do, don't move. You're right where you are in terms of the mic. That sounded a lot, lot better. Thank you for that.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Let me bring it back. I know Councilmember, I believe, Sarmiento wanted to speak, and I believe Benavides, and, so let me, let me call upon them, and then we'll continue. Please, go ahead.
Well, I think, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think a lot of us have a question. I don't think there's doubt, but I just think there, there's some clarity that needs to be given. And I think the city manager, obviously, needs to have the council give better direction, so I think this is on us as well. Because if, I think deference was shown to the planning department and the planning director, because this is normally considered a code enforcement matter. And quite frankly, we see it, I guess, maybe a little differently, where I see this, when, when I talk about policing, I'm not limiting it to the department, the police department. What I consider policing is the planning department with respect to its code enforcement inspectors, and then I consider policing the city attorney's office to prosecute the cases that are brought before them, and number three, the police department that's going to handle the secondary impacts that involve any operation, whether it's a collective, or a dispensary, or a business that sells alcohol on premises, off premises, whatever the case is. So I think we're talking about proportionality. And when we, you know, maybe to us, one officer, one police officer versus five code enforcement inspectors, in addition to some building inspectors, maybe that proportionality can be adjusted. But I think we're all talking about the same thing. How do we police more effectively? So I think we do need to maybe revisit the whole enforcement plan. I don't think it's flawed, fatally flawed, I just think adjustments need to be made. So to the extent we can have the three of you as heads of departments that are going to be involved in policing, sit and, and, and involve themselves in a conversation of what's the most effective way. I do think that if we can remove that 1,000-foot provision between collectives, and maybe reduce it to five, it gets us to that point where I think we can use sufficient resources while not being unmanageable. Right now, we have, I think has been said, 55 to 60 is a number of collectives that are right now on the books. I think it's much higher. That just means we've identified 55 to 60. I think there's a lot more. That's an undercount. So I believe if it's something between, to me, where I thought that sweet spot was, was somewhere between a dozen and maybe 15 or 20, but whatever the case is, I think we have a de facto cap on it, based upon the, the separations that we've already identified. So I think we're not going to be able to go above and have an unlimited amount. That's what people should be aware of. But I guess my goal is that, a lot of people say, "Well, this is a, you know, this is a bad thing. We're going in the wrong direction. We're, we're, you know, we're advocating for drug use." Look, let's be real honest. Anybody can access illegal drugs in this city when they want. It's already out there. I mean, if we're going to be naive to that and say, "We're somehow condoning this," that is probably the most misguided comment I, I've ever heard. Because you go down any neighborhood in this city, and you can find it, and that's unfortunately what we're trying to prevent. We want a net reduction in those people who are selling it in alleys, selling it in schools already, selling it any place else they possibly can, and us having the resources to be able to address those. So to me, we're not trying to, we're not trying to proliferate the use. We're trying to reduce it and get it out of the hands of those illegal elements that are already selling it. I mean, to me, that is probably, as much as I want to help people who are, who have the medicinal need for this, I also want it off the streets, and this is one way where we can do it. I mean, prohibition for alcohol didn't mean that people stopped drinking alcohol. It just meant that they did it in a back room, they did it in back alleys, they did it any place they could find it illegally in the black market. So let's not kid ourselves. I mean, a moratorium didn't prevent the sale of drugs of any kind, whether it's, whether it's marijuana or anything else. So we have an opportunity to not only cure the ills of people who are ill, and I, and I'm compassionate to, to what Councilman Reyna said, because my father passed away from cancer as well. And I saw him suffer, and I've seen many other people in my lifetime suffer, without having any relief. And that's unfortunate. And so I think we have the opportunity to cure many things. But, Mr. City Manager, I think, hopefully, ask us for that... But, Mr. City Manager, I think, hopefully, ask us for that direction because I think we're prepared to give that to you. And I think when it comes to enforcement, that's the only thing that I think that sort of shocked our conscience a little bit because we realize that one officer may not be the right proportion. That doesn't mean that we want 10 officers, because I don't think that's right either. I know the city attorney's office is going to need some support to be able to prosecute the cases that bring, that they're, that are brought before them, and code enforcement inspectors as well, but we just need to find that correct balance.
Thank you, additional comment. Councilor Amesqua and then Benavides.
I think what we need to look at is try to figure out, okay, with these restrictions and about approximately, how many can we open? And how, how many officers are we looking at to help regulate or code enforcement officers, whatever it may be? I, I think that would be helpful for us, just to get an idea of, you know, we can, this is manageable with, given the restrictions we have.
Thank you, Councilor Reyna and then Benavides.
I'd asked the questions earlier, if this was time sensitive, and what's the stop, the stop date that we need to put something on the ballot, which would allow me to know how much time we have to to address this particular issue. You can see there's a lot of conversation.
Yeah, so the law says you have 88 days before the election date of November 4th. That's the absolute deadline. However, given the fact that you have a significant election coming up in November, I just cannot recommend that you wait that long. I think that would be irresponsible. It really puts the city clerk's office in a horrible position as well as the county.
Do we have two weeks?
Do we have a date?
I, our recommendation would be that you make a final decision at your first meeting in July, and if for some reason you can't make a final decision in your first meeting in July and still want to do it, I think your only option is going to be to call a special meeting.
So two weeks is safe, okay. Councilor Benavides, please.
I'd like to reiterate what the city manager says. Two weeks is only safe if we get the clear direction from the council as a whole, because every one of you tonight have expressed different concerns, issues, and ideas. If you want me to do nothing more over the next two weeks but to draft seven different ordinances, and then you can decide which one you want, I can do that. Or if you can give me some collective direction on, you know, if you address this, 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 I can come back and draft that, because the agenda deadline to get this to you at your next meeting is less than two weeks away. It's two weeks till your meeting, but it's really just about seven working days before it has to be finalized.
I'm sorry, so your recommendation would be for us to try to take care of this as soon as possible, preferably the first week, the first meeting in July. If for whatever reason we needed that extra time, the stop date would really probably be the second, second meeting in July.
And out of respect and deference, I think we should ask the city clerk what what her preference is, because it really falls most heavily on her.
Councilmember Reyna, continuing the matter to the July 1st does not pose any significant constraint for my office, but continuing it any further than that would, because we do have noticing and translation requirements to comply with.
So that's why I'm suggesting two weeks from now should be a deadline. If that slips, then we still have a little bit more time, but we're really running out of time. We're really, Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for the city attorney, then for the police chief. Madam City Attorney, do we, does anything preclude us from having the city place more than one measure on the ballot? Could we give the voters the option to both regulate and ban?
You may. The city council, there's nothing in the law that would restrict the council from proposing additional measures, even measures that conflict. You simply put language in those measures that say where there are measures, there might be three, four, five, all dealing with the same subject matter, the measure that receives the highest number of votes prevails over all the others.
Thank you. So just something for us to consider, as we, we're trying to address this and figure this out in a very...
Hold on, hold on, Sal. Let David finish, and I'll call on you.
Okay, thank you.
In a way without, we're, we're under the gun, and we're basically trying to fix something, and, and my, one of my biggest concerns is that we're going to miss something. And once we put it out there, once we, we vote and place this on the ballot, we're stuck with that, and we're basically, our residents are going to inherit whatever we miss. And I think that's just, it's just short-sighted, and it's, it's not prudent for us to do that. Question for, for this police chief. It was mentioned that this idea that part of what we're trying to do is to reduce drug activity out in the streets, and that somehow by legalizing dispensaries that that's going to happen. We have right now legalizing anywhere from 12, eight, 12, maybe 24 now. We have over 50, 60-some. Have, has drug activity, illegal drug activity in the streets actually been reduced over the last few years as we've been seeing these dispensaries throughout the city?
I, I haven't seen any, any reductions.
Okay, thank you. It just is kind of a naive comment, I think, to, to think that a few dispensaries going out there is going to reduce illegal drug activity on the streets.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
With...
No, go ahead. Well, Mayor Protem, I know, is waiting, but just hold on a moment, please, Mayor Protem.
And I just, what I, what I just come back to is, is it's clear that we're going to see ourselves in court if we do allow for these, if we regulate. It seems like the only way, or the more defensible way is to be able to look at a ban. So the question is, I think, for us to consider, how much money are we going to, to put at this and throw at this later on, once we, once we see ourselves in court? And I do want to echo what Councilwoman, what was stated before with regard to an enforceable plan, you know, that I asked the question earlier, you know, frankly, Mr. City Manager, I've been very frustrated and disappointed that we, you mentioned that we do have a plan, but in reality, we were in a meeting not a couple of weeks ago, a number of our department heads hadn't necessarily been brought together to address this, and really, they need that direction from you. You're hearing from, from your council that this is something that is of concern. We don't yet have an enforcement plan, something we've been requesting, asking for, for, for some time, months. We need to have some type of clear direction, the, given to, to our department heads. We need to have some recommendations brought before us that we can, real viable recommendations that we can, that we can consider. And so we, hopefully, we'll be able to see that soon from you. Thank you.
So, Sal, you're next, and then, and then Councilor Sarmiento. And Sal, the chief is standing at the mic, just, just so you can picture what's going on here. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You're good, man. You didn't move. That's, you're good.
Great. First and foremost, thank you for another, another opportunity here. I, I would like to encourage our city attorney, I want to, no disrespect to Councilmember Benavides, but in order to put something else on the ballot, you need four votes. I don't know, I'm not sure if those four votes exist. I think that this is what I was concerned about. The reason that our city attorney is getting so many different levels of comments, and it's very difficult for her to do her job properly without giving her just a solid direction on where we want to go, is because even individuals who are going to vote no, no matter what, are also asking to, you know, implement stuff. And I think that's something, if, if, I was trying to be a little bit more, more, I guess, articulate about explaining this, but I think I have to be, just, just go right up the middle. Basically, what I was saying, Councilmember Benavides, is that if you're, if you're going to put things into this ordinance, then I would hope that you support the ordinance. If you're not going to support the ordinance, then I think you have the option to create your own ordinance and see if it flies with the rest of the council, and if it does, then great. I mean, that's, that's democracy. But right now, we can't allow for too many chiefs, you know, or too many, too many chefs in the kitchen to start deciding what ingredients we're going to put into the pie. In the meantime, also, is that we, I, I don't know of any law, you know, and I teach history and government, I don't know of any law that's ever come forward that's perfect, including our strategic plan, including anything else that's ever come forward. There's always flaws. The question is, I understand that you're saying that we're locked in, but we can also work and maneuver ourselves within that, those issues. I mean, we can, we're problem solvers. We can solve those problems. I think right now, we're hitting the 12th hour. I would have preferred that we voted today, because there are some issues. I'm willing to go ahead and wait two weeks, but I think that from this moment on, city manager and city attorney, we're not going to make this all happen tonight. But I do believe that in the next two weeks, both of you should meet with every single council member and count to four. And if you hear the same thing, it was no different than what you did in the strategic plan, that's the only way we're going to get this done. If you hear four things that makes sense, that everyone is in agreement with, well, let's put it in the ordinance. If not, we got to move forward and let people vote no. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
I, I don't think they could meet with four of us and count to four. They're both saying no, Mayor Protem, but I very much appreciate your desire to try to figure out how we move forward, which I know is what you're saying.
Mayor, just a point of clarity, because I'm really trying to understand the council. I'm getting two different kinds of direction. One is, what would you do with the revenue that you get from the ordinance if it's successful? A million dollars is the estimate? But I'm also hearing that somebody wants a plan now. In other words, do something now, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have an enforcement issue now.
And I need, I need to make sure that the council is directing me to identify existing funding regardless of whether funding goes forward, and that's a whole different question. And I don't mind doing it, but I need to make sure that's what the council wants me to do. So what we would be doing is taking money that exists now and not use after-school programs, not do the library, not do those things, but to put into this enforcement. That's the question we need to know. And if that's the question, I can do that. Six police officers, eight, whatever comes out, but I'm just want to make sure I know what I'm doing, because I don't want people to be disappointed two weeks from now that they didn't do that. So if that's what we want, I need to know that.
And Mr. City, Mr. City Manager, that, that is not what I'm asking, and I know that there are some of my colleagues that are asking that, but it's in the minority. And that's where my concern comes back again, that we need to move forward with this. It's obvious there are a couple, maybe one or two, that are going to vote no. That's fine. They have the right to vote no. But what I don't like is that when I've been on the losing end of a vote, I don't try to overburden it with more, with more obstacles so that we can't make a decision. And that's my concern. I don't want to take other funds from other areas. I want to say, let's pass it and then go from there. We get another shot at another budget every July. And so I think we need, it's in the best, look, I've already laid out the arguments. I've told, I've already said it to the public. If we don't do anything about this, there's going to be a dispensary coming near you, period. And if they don't put one up, there's going to be one on wheels, and they're going to be open as long as they want. So if that's what we're ready to live with, then let's not do anything. Let's quit spinning our wheels. But if we're going to really be serious and have something else that our community can, can choose from, then let's do it. But let's be honest about it. If you're not going to vote for it, please stay out of the discussion and let us create a good ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, Councilman Benavides wants to respond, so I'm going to allow that, and then the city attorney wants to speak, and, and then we'll go from there.
I want to respond to both, both city manager's question and Councilman Dinajero, because he specifically has mentioned my name and is addressing comments that I've made. I actually have not made any, I don't think any of my comments have I, have I made recommendations to the proposed ordinance. I've stated my position. I am against the proposed ordinance by the city. My position is to submit a ban and make a ban available for the voters to vote. So the other, the recommendations, the modifications, the amendments have actually come from the other six members of the council that are considering. So I, I don't know why he's been addressing me. However, with that, as you have mentioned, Mr. Dinajero, we do have, in some cases, we will disagree, in some cases, we have to agree to disagree. Your recommendation, your suggestion that I not speak into the, the proposed ordinance is not something that I would honor, or, my responsibility is to the voters of the city, to the residents of the city, and if I think that there are ways that it can be improved, even though I, I don't think that we should agree to legalize it or to legalize dispensaries, but I think it is my, my responsibility to the citizens to speak into how do we make something better. To the question of city manager, the, we recognize that we have an issue with enforcement today. Regardless of what happens in November, there's an issue today. Fifty-some, at least, illegal dispensaries in the city. So I think what you're hearing, not just from me, from other members of the council, is how do we, how are we going to address that? And, and how are we going to make it so that we're not playing catch-up if and when some ballot measure passes in November? So, so I think it is kind of your, your role to help give us some options as to how do we being, how do we begin to address the problem that we have that exists today and set it, set things up so that we don't, we don't have a much greater problem if and when something passes and is legalized in, in, in November. So that, that's, that's my thoughts. I know that, that's, that's, others have, have had similar thoughts, and I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to that, but, but we do, and staff has also mentioned, the enforcement plan is one thing, this ballot measure thing is another. The problem exists today. Addressing that, I think, is something that we need for you to help us, give us some options so we know how to proceed.
Thank you. Let me call on, well, the city attorney, do you want to speak, or?
I don't want to cut off council discussion, but I'd like to maybe be able to start asking you some questions.
And we will. Let him, let me just have him speak, and then we'll try to come back and answer questions.
And the chief has been standing there patiently, so I want to make sure...
He's smiling the whole time, though. He's better than the guy that was in the back of the room with his hand up in the air.
I want to, I want to make sure he's comfortable and sitting down, so I'll, I'll ask my questions very quickly, chief. And one of them is, is that in your experience being in this department and serving this city for the number of years that you have, can people access drugs illegally in this city?
Yes.
Okay. Would resources help you, in other words, funding, help you address that problem?
Yes, tremendously.
Okay, thank you. The, the second thing I wanted to talk about was, I think when we're talking about enforce, an enforcement plan, Mr. City Manager, my thought on an enforcement plan wasn't to say, do it now. It's more of a contingent enforcement plan. In other words, let's say this, the ballot measure is approved by the voters. And so you are, you know you're going to realize a certain number of monies and revenues as a function of that. My thought was, you have an enforcement plan based upon that estimate or that prognostication. So I don't, I wouldn't want you to start peeling money away from existing programs or projects so you can fund an enforcement plan now. It's only if this thing is approved. So that's the direction that I thought we were trying to give you, but maybe, again, we were not speaking in unison.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. That was the direction I thought I got, but I do think that there is at least some minority of the council members who would like an enforcement plan now to deal with their current issues. And all I'm saying is, I'm willing to do that. I just need to get direction from a majority of the council members to do that. Otherwise, we're doing two different plans.
Right. And so my thought was more based upon approval of this and success on the ballot, because, look, if it's not successful in November, this is a moot point. There are no monies, there are no resources to be, to be allocated. So that's, that's simple enough. The last thing is that I know, you know, I'd like to concur with those who've said, let's put this over for a couple of weeks, because I think there's still some questions that are unaddressed. But I do have a comment for our city attorney. When, when she made a comment saying that she's going to now have to go and draft seven different ordinances, I, I just think that, you know, I sit on the Orange County Water District, I've been on the transportation corridor agencies, I've been on several bodies, and, boy, we have sometimes 20 different comments, and what we're doing is giving guidance to our general counsel to incorporate those by reference so we can have a final product that, that encapsulates and reflects the comments that have been made. That's normally the way this exchange works. So I hope you didn't want us to give you something that was neatly bound, because you have, you have seven different people with seven different thoughts based upon what you've given us as an initial draft, and I appreciate that. It's, it's been good work. But you, you know that it is our responsibility to give you our comments so you can make that ordinance even stronger and better based upon the reflections that you get from, from, from this body. So I hope you don't think that you need to have different ordinances for each of us, because that's not the way things operate. You and I know that.
Yeah, I absolutely know that, and I think I was being a little silly when I said that, given the hour and the amount of time we have. But I would like to take just a couple of minutes to ask you questions, because I think often we will have discussions about your individual thoughts, but what we don't do is come back around and close up the issue.
Let, let me speak before you do that, and, and maybe this will, will assist as well, you know, with some of your questions. I believe that one of the issues can be this 500 feet between dispensaries, and what I'd like for you all to do is to bring that back to us as an option. We, we can vote up or, or down. We can say, you know, some of us think 1,000, some think 500, but you can write it up with that as an option. I happen to be in favor of the 500, because I think it will give us more flex, and I'm talking about 500 just between the dispensaries, not the community. I, I think it will give us a greater number, and I think that greater number will result in more money. Separately from that, another thing I would like to see happen, and I think my colleagues would concur, is bring us back ideas as to what you could do. would concur, is bring us back ideas as to what you could do. We already heard what you could do with a million dollars. Tell us what you could do with $2 million. It doesn't have to be exact, but it'll give us some idea what we're talking about. And I think that will be of assistance to us as well. Also, what I would suggest is, look, if we want to do something independently of all this, I think we can walk and chew gum. And what I'm suggesting by that is if the city manager independently wants to say, look, we're getting, you know, some money right now from the settlement with OCFA, for example. You know, maybe it's money that's available. I don't know if the council would want to do a one-time deal, because I don't like one-time deals, because I think we need a long-term campaign in order to address problems. But if there's another way to address something in the community before November and before this thing passes or not, before it's challenged in court or not, it could be a year or two years before anything really happens here by the time the lawyers get through with all this stuff. If there's something in the interim that we could consider, let's just, you know, we could agendize that for a future agenda, for a future discussion, and we could have a healthy discussion on that, and maybe arrive at something that's productive. Our primary responsibility has to be taking care of the city, you know, addressing needs within the city. And I think that's all, what all of us are trying to do here today. I know Mayor Protem is doing the same thing. You know, he's trying to push us for, let's resolve this. And I think we will. And I think, Sonia, look, you probably have additional questions. Ask now, but what I'm suggesting is just come back with options. We could all, as we get here, we can, because I've done this before, as, you know, Councilor Sarmiento says. Look, I sit on a board at OCTA with 17 members.
I sit on 86.
86 members. And believe me, we don't all sit there and say, well, here's my version, now input from this person, now input from that person. We never would do anything. What we end up doing is, you know, there's suggestions by staff, and then we decide, is there a majority of the votes that are going to push something? And it's tough for staff, because sometimes you have to, you know, be a little bit of a follower, but a little bit of a leader, in the sense that sometimes you have to say, well, this is staff recommendation, because if you vote for this, we think it'll work. And other times you have to say, well, you really, we heard you loud and clear, you wanted something, so we put that out there. So I think, look, if you want more input, come back. I know Mayor Protem suggested count to four. I don't suggest you count to four, but if you want more input from any of us, come back and talk to us. You're not necessarily going to get seven agreeing on anything. This is too complicated an issue. There's going to be subtleties, which some folks will peel off on certain points. But, you know, we've spent a lot of time on it, because it's very important. If we don't do this well, there's going to be unintended consequences. So please.
I've identified 10 areas that you've discussed tonight, where I don't think that you have clear direction, you've given clear direction.
And we may not. But go ahead, give us the 10 areas.
For example, one of the council members said, allow them in more zones. I can provide leadership on that, and I can suggest that you allow them in commercial zones. Don't know whether that's something you want me to do. There's going to be support for it, but I will do that.
Let me ask Councilor Sarmiento to speak to that.
I'm the person that made that comment. So based upon the removal or the adjustment of 1,000-foot separation between collectives to 500 feet, that addresses my concern. In other words, just being able to have some more flexibility.
And I support that with my comments.
I'll withdraw my comment on that.
There was a recommendation that we actually adopt an additional permit, a safety permit.
Oh, that was, yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted a public safety permit renewed annually so that we actually are able to monitor. I know there's issues with the CUP, there has been in the past, and that's probably another question that you're going to have, that was proposed by someone. But the public safety permit, I just think it's important that we review this stuff annually with these collectives.
So I'm going to include some of these, and then when you get the ordinance back, you'll just have to make a decision.
And you can just have it like as an option. And then if somebody says, I happen to think that's a good idea. But if somebody says no, they'll say no. Please continue.
And then two other things that are really important, not going over all the 10. Do you want a sunset clause, or do you want a full reservation of the council's right to amend the ordinance?
You can't have them, what would be the difference? If you just have the sunset clause?
You could have one or both.
You can have both?
Both.
Both.
Got it. And my question was really more for the benefit of the city manager. Do you want him to propose a new enforcement plan with funding?
And what I suggest, do that independent of this, as a separate discussion.
I just want to make sure that the voters agree with that.
This is already complicated enough, we don't need to complicate it further. Otherwise, we'll never get through this discussion.
I know, coming out of the Public Safety Committee meeting last night, where three of you, I understand, three of you were present, you had requested this enforcement plan. I'm hearing the mayor say that's not as important to him. Just want to make sure.
No, no, I'm saying, let's have that as a separate discussion. Let's not stop this discussion.
Okay, so you'd want it a separate time, so when we bring this back to you in two weeks, see, well, that's.
There's two different issues.
We're going to address them separately. Separately.
Right. I'm not saying don't address it.
At the same time. So what I'm saying is that we're going to address both of these issues, we're going to vote on two different issues. One, the ballot initiative, and then vote on a enforcement for this ballot initiative. So it's two separate issues.
Do you expect him to have something for you to vote on?
And what I would say, Councilor Martinez, is that it could, in a sense, be a third separate issue, which is independent of this ballot measure and the money it generates and what that associated plan would be, that we can have a separate discussion that would say, forget this ballot measure, because it could be held up in court for years, do we have the ability to do anything else right now? Maybe we don't, but that can be a completely independent discussion.
Can we just ask staff what the best way to proceed on this? What would be your suggestion for us to proceed? Obviously, you see us struggling with this. Can you give us some guidance?
Well, we have an enforcement plan for a million dollars. If we're going to get $2 million, we can have an enforcement plan for $2 million.
And that's what I asked for earlier.
So we're going to do that, but it's going to be contingent upon when this happens. It could be a year from now, it could be two years from now. The whole world will change by then. So to vote on an enforcement plan, not knowing what you're going to enforce two years from now, I think it's going to be difficult. And really, it's a staff issue. You tell us what you want to have done, and we tell you, recommend. So I'm just, I'm a little bit confused by that, but we'll come back with a plan. We'll have an enforcement action, and then the council can decide what they want to do.
Yes, Councilor Martinez.
Mayor, the reason why I oppose this action plan, we all know our police department is trying to hire 20 officers. We all know what that process, how long that process takes. Just six months alone for the training. So we all know that he needs to get started now. If we're going to start an enforcement process, we need to know. By the time he hires officers for this, it's going to take about a year before they go through that pipeline. And so we can't use other officers now who are on the streets to deal with this. So this is the reason why, this is of most importance to me, because of the process that these, to get new officers to deal with this issue, if we're going to hire more, it's going to take about a year. So we need to deal with the problem now.
Look, you know, you could get laterals, other things could happen, but I think it's point well taken that we have to plan, and we have to give ourselves some time to be able to implement. I still think we can have a separate discussion later that says, let's assume both initiatives fail, which could happen. Can we do anything else? And that's a separate discussion. Let's not confuse this issue more now, because the city attorney is going to start asking more questions if we do that.
I have one final question.
All right, one final question.
I got feedback today from some, not a majority, but from several council members that wanted to reduce the 1,000-foot distance requirement across the board to 500 feet. Tonight, I'm hearing that you'd just like to remove, only have the 500.
I haven't heard anybody said, like, some 500 feet from a neighborhood or a church or a school.
I was requested by the city manager to make that change today, so I'm assuming it came from someone or a number.
He's saying no, so it was just a misunderstanding. All right. So with that, what I'm going to suggest is a two-week continuance. Mayor Protem, are you up in the sky still? Did we lose you, Sal? People are snoring in the audience. All right, maybe we lost them. We don't need them for a continuance, right? More comment, Councilman Benavides.
Just for clarification, Councilman Dinajero, opportunity to wake up. The sunset, can you explain that again? I don't know that I was clear on these two different ideas. The idea, we're going to the voters to pass an ordinance that is going to sunset.
So the city of LA had Measure D. They proposed similar regulations to the voters, but there was a clause in there that said, just like you often see with state legislation, this ordinance will be good for a period of three years. At the end of three years, it has to be renewed by a vote of the city council, or it just goes away.
So the council then, it wouldn't need to go back to the voters necessarily, or just come back to the council?
No, it would just go to the council to renew it in its current form.
So, and would amendments be an option at that point, or is that part of the?
No, I think with the sunset, you're saying, I'm going to renew this ordinance as it currently stands. Arguably, I believe that after you amend it once, you would then regain all of your power to amend it again and again.
Thank you. And just back to the conversation, the whole enforcement plan, it's been mentioned, there's two separate things, parallel tracks. Mayor, I would just recommend, if you're open to it, that we have maybe a work-study session to discuss that specifically, as you mentioned, independent of what happens.
We can do that after we solve this. Right now, let's just focus on this, but we can do that afterwards. All right, so with that, I'm going to suggest a motion that we continue for two weeks.
I'll move that we continue till the next meeting.
So we have a motion in a second. So those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey. Everybody's smiling at you, Sal. Thank you. If you want to continue, you're welcome to do so, but if you want to sign off, it's strictly up to you, Mayor Protem.
I'd love to continue, but unfortunately, I do have to sign off.
All right. Well, it's been nice having you, and now we're going to continue with our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers? Steve Rocco, followed by Sam Romero. Steve left, Sam, you're up.
Can we do the closed session?
Okay. Sam, before you speak, Madam City Attorney, can you suggest anything that we should report out of closed session?
No, the only item we had in closed session today was a discussion of a safety plan. It's not reportable action.
Got it, thank you. So Sam Romero, how you doing, Sam?
Not very good. That's what I'm asking, if I could speak first, so I can go home, go to bed. Okay?
You can go to bed after this.
Right. Yeah, this has to do with the project there on Santiago Street. The Logan Neighborhood is for it, we're not against it. We do have a little bit of a problem, and that is the height of it, due to the fact that we have retail down below. But, you know, that would be ideal to bring it down to three stories instead of four. But if it's not possible, like I said, we're not standing in the way to defeat the project. So we're much in tune with the developer. We've met with him several times, and he's done everything possible that we have asked for. And so we're somewhat happy with it. But I think we also need the help of the city, and that is, we're going to have some more folks there if this goes through. And having more folks, we need more park rooms. So we really would like to have handball courts come down, and also that old house is in the corner, somewhere or another, we've got to get rid of that. Expand the park, have some more kiddie-type of playground equipment. Like I said, we'll expect a lot more folks coming into that little park. So, you know, the developer's doing his thing, and I think the city should do their thing also. But I also would like to comment on the planning commission meeting that was held here a few weeks ago, a couple, three weeks ago. And that was that some of the folks who were out there against the project were really saying a lot of stuff that we took kind of offense to. You know, there's a term being used a lot in the downtown company known as the high-end type of businesses. That kind of reflects in the Logan Neighborhood. And that is, if people are talking about a high end, what happens to the low end? Well, we feel that people that live in Logan might be considered the low end. Maybe the folks would be occupying as new units. Are they going to be low end? We have no problem with low-end people or high-end people. We welcome the original loft. We welcome everyone. We do not say anything about you're a high-end or low-end. We welcome everyone. That's the same way we're going to welcome the folks that were moving in. So that's as much as I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Next, if you could have Mr. Ryab, John Ryab.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, folks at home, still awake. Sal, I miss you. This was just in the, for the public comment part. TKO is celebrating 20 years. It was started, actually, I started the work on TKO in 1993, and 1994 was able to open the doors, I think, for the only member of the council who was here in '94. '94 was a big year for you as well. We opened the doors. It's been 20 years since we started the program. We've served several thousand young folks in this city, made a difference in their lives, made a difference in their families' lives. And I wanted to extend an invitation to you and all the folks at home who are listening to come join us at Original Mike's for a 20-year birthday celebration, scholarship, awards, and to hear firsthand from some of the young folks, some of the success stories, to see the difference that we've made, and to acknowledge some of the folks who were what I call the visionaries. Extended invitations to the Kiwanis and Floral Park, and a few of the other folks that, with little more than a piece of scratch paper and an idea, and doing a little bit of begging, got them to come on board and support us as we started that first venture. So I'm extremely grateful.
So that's Sunday, John?
Yes, sir.
Sunday, July 13th?
Correct.
At 1:00, from 1:00 to 4:00?
Yeah, you read it, man, this is awesome. No, yeah, so please do come join us. I mean, I think it has turned into something that we can all be very, very proud of. And so I'd appreciate your support. And you need to come down. This was your first year as a mayor.
And I was there right when we were starting, John.
Yeah, so.
Only had a few kids involved, and now look at it.
Yeah, we're packed.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so please come down.
Good work, and good work over all the years, John.
All right, thank you.
Take care, thank you. So I believe Miriam Hernandez is next, followed by Angel Aguilar, and please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Miriam Hernandez, and I'm from Victory Outreach Santa Ana. And we're here representing, talking about TNT extending the time from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we would really like this opportunity, because as Victory Outreach, we have recovery homes for men and women, and there's no cost to them. So when we work at these stands that we have for TNT every year, this is income that comes to our church, and it comes to our recovery homes, and we're able to maintain the doors opened for these men and women that are out in the streets in Santa Ana and other parts of Orange County, to be able to come and restore their lives. So we would be asking today that if it could be extended one hour more, because it would really benefit to places like Victory Outreach that are nonprofit organizations.
Look, I would suggest maybe take that up on the Public Safety Committee and consider it.
It's actually for us to extend the hours tonight on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Got it. So that's why you're here talking, I'm 58.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
That's why.
So Angel Aguilar, on the same issue, I think.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. You know, in that regard to extending the hour, I think it would benefit, you know. I celebrated a lot of Fourth of Julys here in Santa Ana. And what I see in the street, I see families, I see kids huddling in front of their houses, neighbors coming out that don't usually come out during any other days. And I see them all rush to the stands, and I see them all happy and buying toys. see them all rush to the stands, and I see them all happy and buying toys. I mean, well, for us, it's toys, but for them, it's, you know, it's a day that they wait for every single year at Fourth of July. And you see the jewelry, the kids, and it's sad that at 8:00, we have to turn them away by, by law for us to protect us. And we just wanted to ask the city council, and you know, just to bring it into consideration about extending it one more hour. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, Ramon Hernandez, I believe, followed by Richard Moser.
Let me back. You can pause the other.
Can you make sure he gets here when he comes in? Richard, oh, Richard's gone? Or Mr. Hernandez? Ramon, Richard, are you here?
Second Ramon.
This is, so Ramon is here now?
I am here.
Come on down, sir. But, but now I lost Richard. Who can go find Richard? And after Richard, Kathy Raphael, I believe. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members. Good evening. My name is Ramon Hernandez. I am the president of the Pico Lowell Neighborhood Association. Just to let you guys know, we already have mobile marijuana dispensaries right in front of my house in the neighborhood of Pico Lowell, in the form of the produce vending trucks. And that's what I wanted to speak towards about tonight. Last night at the Public Safety Meeting, the council members briefly touched on the subject of the vending trucks. With no hyperbole, the residents of the community are being held hostage by these trucks. The idea that these trucks cater to the, to our culture is, it's actually closer to racially alienating our neighborhoods. What do they, what do they cater anyways? It's wilted produce and just junk food for our kids. And how much, how much more do we really need to cater in the neighborhood? Right outside of these neighborhoods, the whole city is full of Hispanic supermarkets. There's no reason to keep our people within there. But yet, these food trucks operate as, as they want. They make their own hours. The gangs congregate there. I mean, my neighbors are afraid to walk on that side of the street. Let me go back to what I wrote. Councilmember Martinez suggested that a task force be formed to make sure that these trucks were following the rules and to come down on them, if they weren't. My wife and I took it upon ourselves, when we first moved in, not, not more than a year ago, to take pictures and write down violations, and we made phone calls to the county, we emailed the code enforcement, and all we did was expose ourselves to, to the gang members and to the food vendors of what we were doing. And now that's put my family and my kids in danger. And it's no way to live, but I'm going to keep fighting the fight just, I mean, I, I believe that we can make change in that neighborhood. So these, these trucks are a plague in the community. Anyone can see that. I never grew up with them in the neighborhood that I lived, that I grew up in, and now that I live there, it's, it's insane to me that these, that these trucks are allowed to operate, and they just operate as if they're above the law. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Kathy, followed by Steve McGuigan.
Hello, I'm Kathy Raphael, and the reason why I'm here tonight is, we just had Rita Corpin pass away, and I think with the extensive media coverage, it's really shone a light both on our city as well as the issue of hoarding. So that's what I wanted to speak to tonight. I knew Rita. I knew Rita a long time ago, and I think anyone that really knew Rita also knew that she had a problem. I think that was fairly common knowledge. I don't think anyone really realized the extent of the problem she had, but I think the Register did a really good job of talking about her issues as a hoarder, but also I think they gave equally credence to the fact that she was a valued member of the community and contributed greatly to the improvement of the quality of life in this community through a lot of the things that she fought for through the years. So I think because of what just recently happened, I want to kind of be a voice, in a sense, for not just Rita, but for all the hoarders that we do have. I want to share a few basic facts with you. We now have a body of research on the issue of hoarding. It's recently been classified as a mental disorder in the Diagnostic Statistical Manual, which is a DSM-5. What is hoarding? Definition is, it's accumulation and the failure to discard a large number of objects. Extensive clutter in living spaces that prevents the effective use of the spaces, and significant distress or impairment caused by hoarding. I think definitely everyone would agree that that's some of the things that Rita struggled with, and for those of us who knew her for years, knew that that problem was also continuing to worsen, as is the case. We now know, too, that 2% to 5% of the population are hoarders. And in Santa Ana, that would equate to, on the low end, 6,600 to over 16,000 hoarders. The difference that we have is our hoarders are kind of in their homes, in their residences, unlike the homeless that are out in the open. So with the aging baby boomers, we're going to see probably more of these types of cases. And typically, onset is about 13 years of age, but it takes 20 to 30 years for the problem to come to light, and it's usually no longer manageable. It crosses all economic and ethnicity lines. They typically are law-abiding citizens, and they do contribute to the community, pay their taxes, work, and raise their families. They just have a problem where they're unable to comply with any enforcement efforts. It's not that they're not willing to, it's that they're unable to. And that, when there is an enforcement effort, typically it's a parade of multiple jurisdictions. It induces trauma, sometimes causing death, and costs an extremely large sum of money for resource to enforce, because again...
Kathy, if you could begin to wrap up, please.
Okay. We're advocating a different approach, and that really is because along other things like homelessness and domestic violence, we now have different approaches and is research-based. And I would like to give you something to think about, which is maybe to, we have research with experts here locally under the Mental Health Association of Orange County, and there is a hoarding task force. And we have experts, and I think that now would be a good time with the aging baby boomers to maybe take a look at maybe a different approach than what we've done historically, because we know it doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve McGuigan, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak again. I'm beat. I'm done. I'm about ready to go home, so I figure you guys probably are, too. I'll make this really quick and relatively painless. A couple of things coming up I wanted you to know about. These are just events going on in the city. I was going to talk about something else, but I'm just not in the mood for it. So here we go. A couple of weeks ago, we started our concert series over at the zoo. We had a great showing. A lot of people showed up. One of the unique things that we're doing, that we started doing a couple of years ago, is I curate an art show for those events. And we are focusing on only Santa Ana artists showing their stuff. So it's pretty interesting. You can see some of the finest work in Santa Ana there. It's pretty cool. This weekend, June 22nd, on Sunday evening, we've got Bernie Pearl is going to be there in the afternoon. He'll be doing some blues and so forth on the front. If you've not heard of Bernie Pearl, Google him. He's been on probably 13 or 14 different albums. He's an awesome studio musician, but he gets up there and he tells a few stories and plays a few songs out on the front lawn. It's a pretty cool thing to see. And then at 5:30, we actually have a world-class group of musicians coming up. They just returned from Amsterdam, where they were invited to play an international tournament, or an international concert, the Moolin Blues Festival in Amsterdam. Very few artists from the U.S. were actually there for that one. They were one of three groups that was actually invited to go and perform there, and they did, did a fantastic showing. There's some videos of them at that that are hitting the internet now, and it's, it's a pretty cool thing. So we've got that going on. We've got the art going on. There'll be food trucks, all kinds of other great stuff. The Elks come out for the event. We'd love to have you guys come and see what we're doing at the zoo. We regard the zoo as a fantastic venue for a lot of different things. We know that they have amazing animals there, and we're working on conservation, recreation, and education. But in addition to that, we want the zoo to be a focal point, a place where people can all come together and lots of great things happen. And to that end, we're doing these types of things. Another thing that everybody in Santa Ana should know about is that on July 4th, actually, on the Fourth of July this year, the Big Independence Day Festival is going to be at Centennial Park over on the west end of the city. Centennial Park is our largest and biggest and one of the greatest parks in Santa Ana, and we do a fantastic fireworks show there. There's a history walk, there's some great kid stuff going on, great food, two live bands, a lot of great things going on. And you can actually go and meet Benjamin Franklin, George Washington, Abraham Lincoln. We will have all of those characters out there cruising around for you guys to meet and greet. We encourage all Santa Ana residents to come out and do that, rather than lighting off fireworks in our neighborhoods and taxing our police and fire and the, the other organizations involved in our public safety. And the sense of community that we're trying to build in using, having this huge event over in the park and using that also as a public venue, we want everybody in Santa Ana to come out. So encourage all of your friends and neighbors to come out, too. The July 4th celebration starts at 4:30 in the afternoon, fireworks at 9:00, so it goes to about 9:30. But the kids' zone will be open until 10:00. So come on out to Centennial Park on July 4th. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. So with that, let's continue with our meeting here. Madam Clerk, I'm going to go to the consent counter. Is that correct? I would entertain a motion on the consent counter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you do that, on item 25J, I will be abstaining, because I received a contribution from some of the stakeholders in that area.
Mayor, just very quickly...
Can you please go ahead?
25K.
What would you like to pull it?
25K, yes.
All right, let's pull 25K.
31B.
You want to pull 31B?
No.
All right. Let's let him speak right now, then, since when is on consent? Go ahead. You've been waiting a long time. Go ahead.
Nah, not me.
You've been waiting for years, and you've been serving the community for years.
Good evening, City Council members, Mayor, City Attorney, City Manager. I'm here on behalf of AYSO here in Santa Ana. We run a nonprofit youth organization here in Santa Ana. We're celebrating 50 years in the nation this year with AYSO. So we're the largest soccer club in the nation. We're celebrating 28 years here in the city of Santa Ana this year. So we'll have a celebration later on in the year. But the reason I'm up here tonight is to talk about the extended from 8:00 to 9:00 on the fireworks stand. It seems like it's only an hour, but that last hour generates $4,000 to $5,000 for my stand. And that goes back to allowing kids to play in my soccer program. There are fees involved. There are educational values that we have, we background check every volunteer. We, we make sure that every coach is age appropriately certified. So if we're teaching an under-five-year-old how to play soccer, we want them to know how to teach a five-year-old. And it goes up the ladder. This is very important for us to get this extra hour. I do appreciate you putting this on the agenda tonight. I think it will benefit the community as well, because I'll take kids that, that won't normally have an opportunity to play and be able to help sponsor them to play in our program. I, I just think that there's other people that've come up tonight talking about the same situation. My stand happens to be right across from where the fireworks display is going to be for the city this year. So it's going to be a great opportunity for us to have that extra hour to invite people to stop by and sell my stand out. The other thing is that somebody brought up earlier about, mine just went blank. I've been sitting here a long time. Can I talk about the other issue that I had on there? The other issue is the water, the water injection project over at Centennial Park. I, I think you really need to think about that, because they're going to impact for six weeks, if I read this right, and I read the report today, 52 parking spots near Daniel Number Four. And then they're going to impact another 50 to 60 spots in the back of the park. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot, but you have the continuation school that takes a lot of parking already, and now you have the soccer teams, whether they be youth or adults, trying to park in that spot. Now, the six weeks is not a big deal, but now it shows four and a half months to complete the project after the wells have been dug. It's a long time. And maybe you should think about, if you're going to do this, work with the school district and have the parking structure at Centennial Park opened up, so people do have a place to park. I don't know if that's been thought about or not, but I didn't see that in the, in the plan. So it's just an opportunity to, from the community side of it, to say, hey, it's a great idea. We need to do this, but let's, let's think outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Rick.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on that. I know that the, the matter, I believe, is going to be on the consent calendar. It is item number 25C, which involves the water injection wells at Centennial Park. And I see Nabeel here, who represents us at the Water District as, as one of the providers. Maybe what we can do is we can try to do something incorporated into that matter, the fact that there are going to be some other spots at the multi-level structure that might be able to absorb some of those impacted spaces there. That's one thing. And, you know, but I know it's a very important thing, because it's a regional project. It's something that's going to be funded by the Water District, and it provides us with clean water for our residents, for the ratepayers. It's, it's something that's very, very necessary, but it's just something that's done as a county-wide effort. So these injection wells are all over the county, and it's just a very important thing for our aquifer and for our groundwater. And on the other point, I think it's, it's a very good idea on the, on the fireworks stand. I think it's important. But I know that we have a lot of residents that complain about the fireworks and how, the secondary impacts that they have on our neighborhood. So to the extent that those who sell and benefit from those stands and the extended hours, if they can work with our police department to try to mitigate some of those impacts, the whole reason why I was supportive about the Fourth of July celebration is because there'll be a net reduction of firework use in our neighborhoods, because it's just a, you know, the following day, July 5th, is just like it's been, like many people have come before us and said it looks like a war zone. So to the extent that they can work with our fire, our police department and fire department to make sure that the impact is not as severe this year as it has been in years past. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, Councilman Benavides, did you have something?
I just wanted to ask some questions, staff. I'll pull 25C, just to ask a little more.
Let's pull 25C, and I just want to pull 20B, just to highlight something. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the balance.
Care, a second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those both, motion passes six to zero. Madam Clerk, what should be the first item? 20B. Look, on this one, I just want to, you know, thank staff and note that what we're talking here is about doing LED lights throughout the city. And, you know, this is a great thing. It's green light, and they're more energy efficient. You know, we can never do enough to help the planet, and we're doing that through this, because it's going to consume less power to have the light. So it lowers our carbon footprint. It's a good, solid thing to do. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I do support it. Just a quick question on regards to the maintenance and operation after we install is, how are we going to sustain this program with the LED lights, from a capital perspective?
William, you all want to come on up?
What we're receiving here today is a grant from Edison.
Let's see what his answer is, but I bet you that if we have other lights, they probably don't have the life that these do, and so these will probably last even longer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. That's, that's correct. The, the lesser energy use that the LED lights consume are going to be paying for the costs of installation, upgrading the, the lights. So the payback is, is going to be approximately 10 years. Thereafter, the city will be enjoying all of the benefits from lower carbon footprints and lower energy consumption.
And the hours of operation of these lights are now getting astronomical. They, they sometimes outlast the fixture, they outlast the, you know, infrastructure. They're getting better and better. Please, Councilman Martinez.
That was my only question. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those both, motion carries. Madam Clerk, the next item? And who had that one?
I pulled that one.
Okay, please go ahead.
So just wanted to, to hear from perhaps your Parks Director with regard to the viability of having additional parking available at the parking structure, for one, during the construction of the wells. And the other, I believe that there's going to be improvements made to the, to the road, Centennial Ring Road, I believe. If you can maybe speak to that a little bit. The year, the lease is a 30-year lease. I think it's, the idea of the, the water injection wells, getting new, getting water into, I think, is a great thing for our community. Just looking at also any impacts with regard to the park itself, whether the improvements are one-time, or whether there's going to be any ongoing support or maintenance or anything of that sort.
The, it's quite a bit of benefit for resurfacing all of those parking areas. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. The injection wells will not appear above ground.
Okay.
We are going to work on finding substitute parking during the construction time and try to minimize that impact. But what you have before you is the memorandum of understanding. You will then get later on, after environmental studies, the opportunity to vote on the lease, on yes or no. So right now, this is sort of a preliminary first step. And then with regards to whether... And then with regards to whether there will be ongoing monetary support throughout the three-year lease, I think that's something that we're going to be able to bring back to you and suggest. But right now, what we've only talked with the Water District is they're investing in repairing the existing for that one time. But that's just right now in order to contemplate the memorandum of understanding, to take the steps needed to do the planning.
Okay. So just, I'll be supporting the item, again, the idea of the water wells being brought in both to area throughout the county, I think it's a good effort for the, as a resource to, in the best interest of the county. As we look at these leases, we've had and every so often have them with other agencies, and some of what I just want to ensure that we do is we look at long-term impacts. I imagine that it's, right now it's being discussed as a thirty-year. I imagine that we're not going, at the end of those thirty years, and we're seeing this right now, it's Centennial Education Center, I imagine at the end of those thirty years, we're not going to say, well, you got to pull them out and we're done.
Yeah, I mean, those are good, I mean, I think those are good questions to ask to the technical people than, you know, that the benefit of injection wells, thirty years from now, would they still be needed, or do they need to change geography because of the change underground, or, I don't know. But the, but we did do a preliminary asking with the federal depart, with the feds that have the deed restriction, as well as with the state, who manages a lot of the grants that we've invested in Centennial, and they're fine with the concept because it's below ground, and it's for the water quality issue.
So some of the, again, the longer-term picture and questions, are there any, is there any ongoing maintenance or any thing that would cause for there to be, you know, tearing up back in those areas? Any, just, again, just general questions?
That's a real question.
So I just plant those ideas, those questions for you to make sure that...
Sure, I appreciate you saying, and we'll make sure that we get some clarification.
Even if the feds say it's okay, again, looking at other situations, our role responsibility is to make sure, to address the maintenance of the park and just making sure that it's ready and available and accessible. Thank you. With that, I'm moving the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, vote, motion passes six, zero, and with no opposition. Madam Clerk, next item. Who had that one? Was that on my right?
Twenty-five K.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, I'm not sure who's going to address this, are you going to address this, Mr. Gaviz? I know that twenty-five K is for bus shelter services and bench services. My question, and I know this is just for maintenance, and I've addressed this issue in the past with our City Manager's Office, with Mark Lawrence and Alma Flores, in regards as we move forward with the marketing of the bus shelters, and I know we're going to go out for an RFP, but also the maintenance of the bus shelters. I have a concern, there's a lot of issues, and as we look at the lighting and we look at some of the areas of where these bus shelters are, they're in bad disrepair. Some of the benches are kind of broken, they're dirty, there's not enough lighting, and so I want us to address this, you know, more of a big picture, and I understand that clear channel, whoever's going to start being in charge of the, one, of the marketing, and I know we're looking at possible digital billboards to get, to receive more revenue, but looking at the infrastructure and capital improvements as we move forward, I'm wanting to make sure that when we do this RFP, that it's a reflection of each of the neighborhoods of where these bus shelters are. If you look at the city of Long Beach or Laguna, you look at the bus shelters, many of them have artistic character to them, and so if, you know, as we move forward with this RFP, I want us to consider that as well, and then as well with the marketing and advertisement. I want us to be very clear that the money that we generate with those dollars, I know it's to help offset some of the capital improvements, but I want to make sure that whoever we deal with, when you do this RFP, that some of the advertisement will help the city produce whatever marketing we want on our end, for example, from a public safety perspective, you know, the, our campaign for, you know, biking more safely, walking more safely, to include some of those benefits, community benefits from the city with these contractors.
When we come up with the RFP, we'll certainly incorporate that, we'll also incorporate the Project W OCTA grant that we're competing for so that we can get, I think we're going to be going for fifty-six bus shelters, Phase One, we'll get about half of those. So we'll incorporate the maintenance of those shelters and improve the advertising, go from poster to digital advertising, and we'll be looking for improving the maintenance.
Great, thank you. Sumo.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Ayes, opposed, motion carries. Is that it for the consent, Madam Clerk?
No, I got one.
Please go ahead. Which item was that?
Thirty-one B.
Please go ahead.
I'm approving it, I just, I pulled it because I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of what this really is. As we start to embrace technology and move forward, there's going to be a whole new industry that's being created. This is an opportunity for us to really put a feather in our cap. This is the first North American esports arena that's going to take place in Santa Ana. It is absolutely huge and fantastic. I'm eager to participate and to see what they have going on. A real close example might be BlizzCon, which is Blizzard's e-games, and they had a conference, and they opened up their conference and they sold over twenty thousand tickets in two hours at two hundred dollars a pop. This is going to be fantastic in our community, this is just the start of embracing new technology and new e-businesses as well. I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware of this. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, please say aye. Ayes, opposed, motion carries. Now, item, I believe it would be fifty-A, Madam Clerk?
Sumo.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Ayes, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifty-five A, I would entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Those in favor, please say aye. Ayes, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item fifty-five B, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifty-five C, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifty-five D, we already considered. Fifty-five E, I would entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Seventy-five A, this is time and place, would like to call to order a public hearing to consider appeal of number twenty-fourteen S-1, it's a site plan review, and I'll turn things over to staff right now for presentation. This is the depot at Santiago, it's a mixed-use development at nine-twenty-three North Santiago Please go ahead, Karen.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council. This request is for an appeal to a decision that was made by the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the depot at Santiago to the City Council. And I would like to go through and familiarize you with the project, as well as go through the points that were included in the appeal and provide some information on each of those points, and then also to discuss some of the ideas that the appellant's have for ways to improve the project or otherwise address concerns that they have. The project is proposed to be located on the northeast corner of Santa Ana Boulevard and Santiago. As you can see in the picture, the site is an irregular-shaped site, looks kind of like a boot just there on the north side of Santa Ana Boulevard. Immediately across the street to the south is the parking lot for the train station, and immediately across the street to the west is the Santiago Lofts project. On the east side of the project is the Logan Neighborhood. The project itself is a seventy-unit courtyard-style building, has a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Twenty-four percent of the site is in open space, it has ground floor commercial space. There is approximately forty-seven units per acre, and it meets all of the standards of the Transit Zoning Code. The project actually started back when the city advertised for the release and availability of federal home funds. These home funds are only allowed to be used for affordable housing. The CNC Development, who's the project applicant, responded to the RFP with this proposal, and the City Council approved a funding agreement with CNC in May of 2013. Following that time, CNC put together their actual formal project submittal, submitted that to the city, and shortly thereafter, October of 2013, began, the city and the developer both began meeting with members of the community, both in formal meetings and also in smaller informal meetings. May 12th of 2014, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. Because the zoning is already in place, it was scheduled for the consent calendar of the City Council, it would have been a simple confirmation of the Planning Commission's action, but the project was appealed, and it was set for a public hearing before you tonight. The basis for the appeal, I'll summarize from the appeal application itself, there are several points. The first is that the project is inappropriate for this location. This location, as I said, does have zoning in place, it was established through the Transit Zoning Code that was adopted in 2010. It includes standards for the development of transit-supportive projects and uses, of which this project is one, and it provides for increased ridership that's necessary for the success of the proposed streetcar project. The zoning that we put in place was actually a substantiation for the grant funding that we've so far received for the streetcar project. This project is completely in keeping with the policies that were established for that area. This is just showing the zoning in the area. Second basis for the appeal is that the project's a multifamily rental project rather than a lower-density-for-sale project. The City Council also has an adopted housing element that contains all of the policies regarding the range of housing types that should be provided in the city, and the City Council has a commitment to provide dignified housing for people of all income ranges. The stated mandates the city to provide affordable housing, and there's a demonstrated need for family housing. The third point is that the project will negatively affect property values. I'd like to speak to some of the things that we regard as hallmarks of quality of the project. The first is that the project will replace a severely deteriorated industrial site and bring new investment to the area. The property across the street is in very poor condition, and we received many complaints from the adjacent neighbors about activities that are conducted there that are very disruptive to the neighborhood. The project site includes over fifteen thousand square feet of open space, it's twenty-four percent of the total site area. Of that, over eight thousand square feet is publicly accessible open space. This will create two new public plazas on the corners, they're very substantial, as well as a large courtyard-style plaza that's also accessible to the public, and that will also create project quality. The developer, CNC Development, has a very strong track record of delivering very high-quality projects, and I've shown you a couple of pictures of those. This is existing conditions, on the left side of the picture, the Santiago Street Lofts, on the right side is the corner where there's sort of a junkyard operation and then a smaller-scale, older industrial property to the north of that. The existing land uses in the area are actually not primarily residential, they're primarily industrial. Even the Logan Neighborhood is probably sixty, forty, I'll say, there's a good number of industrial, heavy industrial uses interspersed throughout that neighborhood. With the exception of the Santiago Lofts projects immediately across the street, the majority of the uses in that area are a variety of industrial uses, some of them very heavy This is just showing where the locations of the additional new publicly accessible open space would be, as well as a private courtyard that serves the project itself.
Just a little question for you, at the top of that last slide, you indicate twenty-four percent of site in open space.
Yes.
Can you speak to that, what do you mean by in open space?
Sure. If we measure the square footage of the public plaza, the private courtyard, and the two public plazas on the corners, it comes to the number of square feet, that represents twenty-four site of the entire open space. So we're not counting any of the parking areas or sidewalks, or the parking lot that could also be a special event flex space. It's just those two-corner public plazas, the public plaza in the triangular area and the private courtyard. This is showing the aerial photograph of the site, that as it exists today, with the Santiago Street Lofts across the street, and this is just overlaying the site plan onto that. So although this is a project that's multifamily, it's much different from what we've seen in the past of multifamily projects, where you just have sort of one monolithic block of buildings. It's actually two buildings that are separated by what will end up looking sort of like a little village street. The parking's all underground, which makes for a much more efficient use of the site plan and enables the site to have such a high percentage of open space on the site. These are a couple of examples of projects that CNC Development has developed in the city of Santa Ana. They've done both new construction, as well as significant amounts of acquisition and rehabilitation. Terraces at Santiago is one of their newest projects on Washington at Santiago. It's a hundred percent affordable, and it's won numerous awards for its quality design. The Birch and Bush Courtyards, south of First Street, are also another example of one of the CNC projects, again, very, very high quality. And then this is their rendering for the depot at Santiago, much more modern style, but again, just another example of the sort of quality projects that CNC develops. This project is much more intense than the other two projects that I showed, but that is the policy that's established for this area, is to have transit-supportive housing that is more of an intense character. It's four stories, and in terms of height, it's about five feet taller than the Santiago Street Lofts across the street. Fourth basis for the appeal is that the income of the residents will not be sufficient to support the development of high-quality commercial amenities in the area. The tenants at the project may make as much as fifty-nine thousand dollars per year for a family of four, that's considered low income in the County of Orange, and the, so I just wanted to give you a sense of what does that look like. These are working families, they do earn a living, they're not, this is not one-hundred percent subsidized housing. They will pay a rent that is capped at thirty percent of their income, which then enables them to actually have more disposable income than a family that might be paying up to fifty, sixty percent of their income towards rent. The project will bring more people to the area, which is needed to support future commercial development. Because there are so few residences in the area, and it's mostly industrial properties, it doesn't really have the population density that's needed to support additional commercial development, and this will help to bring that about. In addition, the future streetcar project will further enhance the economic development of the area, and the city's in the process right now of making some much-needed repairs to the depot itself, and then releasing an RFP to re-tenant that space with more commercial tenants that will also be an amenity to the neighborhood. And we've actually asked the folks at Santiago Lofts to help us develop that RFP so we can make sure that we get tenants in there that will be a benefit to them. The commercial space that's included has nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventeen square feet on the ground floor. This is the most retail space we've had in any of the multifamily mixed-use projects that have been approved and constructed in the city, ever. It's the most. So when we look at the Mark, or the approved, the Met, or the Triata project, this is the most amount of commercial square footage of any mixed-use project that we've approved. This would support up to eight to nine retail tenants. The developer's actively seeking tenants to put in this space, and they've committed to installing the infrastructure that would be necessary to support a restaurant, for example. The developer is also offering reduced and subsidized rents to attract commercial tenants. Based on this information, we would recommend that the City Council deny the appeal request and adopt the resolution approving the site plan and the tentative parcel map.
Thank you for that, Karen. If you can just be available, we have a lot of speakers, so let me take the testimony. If we have questions, we'll come back. Thank you for your presentation. So I'm now going to open up the public hearing, and let's start with the appellate. You have up to fifteen minutes, Cedric Volt, and then we have many, many speakers to follow. So please go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm going to plug in a slideshow here if you don't mind, Karen Whitney.
He's appealing the case. Yeah, you're the appellate, you're appealing this, so it says that you have fifteen minutes, right, Madam Clerk? It's what you instructed. I'm not encouraging fifteen, but you appealed, and so you have the, you have the floor to make your case.
So we'll have smart room here, and we'll have Apple TV to the... I know, right? This is way more complicated than I thought it was going to be. So there's a small packet that I prepared to be distributed to you all, I don't know if you guys still have those sitting out there. And I wanted to start by saying that this is literally my...
Pull the mic up.
Yes, sorry. Can you hear me better now? All right. So this is literally my very first rodeo. I'm new... I'm new to Santa Ana, and I purchased a home in the Santiago Street Loft, and it is my first home. And previously, I was renting before that. And I'm thrilled to be here in the city. It's everything that I could ever have wanted it to be. It's fantastic. It's totally in flux. Everything is like moving and shaking, and it's just, it's a fantastic place to be. So I'm really happy to be here. Me personally, I believe that there is a great vision for this particular area, including the train station area, including the Santiago Street Lofts, including the Logan Neighborhoods, including that entire street of Santiago. And quite frankly, I just don't think that this is a great fit for that vision. I think it is a fit, but it is not the fit, if that makes any sense. So what I'd like to do, if you guys will permit me, is I'd like to kind of give you my experience in this whole thing. And please bear in mind that I'm a private citizen. I have absolutely no experience in this world. So bear with me as I try to kind of trudge through this, okay? I want to give you kind of my, like I said, kind of my perspective of how all of this has gone on from kind of like our vantage point. And as neighbors, you know, in the Santiago Street Loft, one of the things that I've really come to love is we all get out and we talk to each other. We all have dogs. We go out and we like kind of chat. And never before have I really gotten to know my neighbors like that, especially not in kind of like the rental apartments that I was in previously. It's a whole new experience for me. One day, we got a, you know, request to come to the train station for this meeting about this proposal that was supposedly theoretical and had something to do with our neighborhood. So we jumped in, and everybody kind of showed up, and we were there to hear what happened. CNC was there to give us kind of their, I suppose, their presentation, their slideshow, right? And it was later that we found out that the property had actually already been purchased and had already kind of somewhat been dedicated for this space. So what we came to that meeting with the idea of was that it was an exploratory meeting that they were asking us kind of for feedback, like, hey, what should we do with this space? And in reality, it was more like, well, we're going to do this, and that's kind of what's going to happen. So we were a little bit, I suppose, disappointed with that, that the city had kind of made a decision and committed monies and really like hadn't stopped by and said, hey, you know, what should we do with this space? What do you think the vision is? So I wanted to kind of like start there. During the course of that meeting, you know, personally, I remember having to ask if anybody from the city was actually present, because it seemed to me like the developers were actually leading the meeting wholeheartedly. So like I said, my first rodeo, right? I didn't know what to expect, and here I was receiving a presentation for something that I didn't really understand. And I didn't understand that it was coming strictly from them and not from the city. I didn't really get that. So as a result, we kind of asked for like a forum to be opened, some kind of like maybe electronic forum where we could give feedback and, you know, we could kind of be considered, and everybody could kind of like speak openly so that we could really kind of get our arms around what was going on. We definitely asked for a traffic study and a parking study because there were a lot of concerns that came up. I mean, there was a room of 40, 45 residents, and everybody there was like, what's the plan here? I mean, parking is already kind of tough in that area, and, you know, we have some concerns. So in reading the report that was produced afterwards, I think there were a couple of key concerns that came up from the residents that really weren't addressed in that report. The residents were asking, you know, why is this particular piece of land being used for rental apartments and why not as for-sale or mixed? And it's something that I couldn't really get my head around. Me personally, I have enjoyed the fact of owning my home in Santa Ana, and frankly, that's part of the reason why I'm here today is because I feel like now I've taken a little bit of ownership in this city, and I want to see it be the best that it can be. It was our perspective that this is really like the gateway to the city, and it's really a unique opportunity to make something great, because it's not just, the train station is not just a glorified bus stop. It really is just a portal into this city. And of course, being right on Santa Ana Boulevard, you know, it's a thoroughfare that goes right on town to the center of downtown. I mean, we're talking about like, this is it, right? And we want to kind of encourage it like a very vibrant, commerce-based, arts-driven neighborhood that's going to not just, you know, give the residents a place to go and enjoy, but also bring people in from out of town. I mean, people who can hop on the train, come down from Los Angeles, go up north from San Diego, really experience all that, like the Santa Ana, you know, ether is all about, because it's really become something amazing, and nobody can deny that. I mean, this city has really become something special. So our question was like, really, you know, how is a high-density housing tract going to kind of encourage that tourism and kind of that quality of life there? In the experience, I did not receive any sort of handbook, no sort of guide that helped me navigate the way through all of this. We weren't really given any sort of timeline that told us, hey, here is what has happened so far, and here's what's supposed to happen. We weren't really sure who to appeal to, who to talk to, who to kind of like chat with. It seemed like the only person that was there that said, hey, chat with us, was CNC Development, but our question, you know, our issues weren't with CNC Development. And there's really no, there's no arguing with what they do. They do a fantastic job. Our question was, well, why is the city choosing to make a, you know, an affordable housing rental unit right here, right on the border of this fantastic gateway to the city when it could be so many other things? Like, what other things have been considered, was the question? So there was really like, I feel like a kind of a lack of an education process when it comes to, you know, the people who are directly invested, the stakeholders, living right across the street within, you know, knocking distance. So we did create our own website. We didn't find a lot of resources to that end being available on the city's website in terms of like, you know, instruction manuals and that sort of thing. But we did build a website of our own so that we could go around and kind of knock on doors and hand out flyers and get people's feedback. And the feedback was, I think, excellent. The developers in northern city wanted to participate in that. It was kind of an open forum, but it was just us. And we made sure to, you know, hand out all of the copies of everything that came from that to the Planning Commission and make sure that, you know, all of the word got around. So getting back to kind of some of the documents, the traffic study we had asked for really wasn't available for months and months.
Excuse me a second. Madam Clerk, can you let me know when it's five minutes so he like knows he's fine? Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you very much. I should have brought my clock. The traffic study wasn't really made available until after the second Sunshine Meeting. So a lot of the issues that had come up in the first meeting really couldn't possibly have been addressed appropriately, you know, once the second meeting had come around. And I think one thing that's really kind of critical is, you know, we didn't have a clear understanding that the request for proposal was really designed for this kind of affordable rental, because it wasn't really made available to us until like four days ago. We looked for it on the city website. We couldn't find it. We had to do a request for records, and that was the only way we could actually learn about the process that the city had gone through. In doing all this, you know, we had a chance actually to meet with Councilwoman Martinez, and she actually brought in quite a few of her staff. You know, actually Karen Louzo, who is fantastic, was there. They gave us kind of a lot of education that we were sorely needing. And frankly, like, I was amazed that they would sit with us for over two and a half hours and really kind of walk us through the steps and say, hey, here's the process and kind of how it all goes. And we were like, this is great, but where were you guys kind of on day one? And now we're here at the 11th hour, and, you know, there are still issues that we have. And ultimately, what we're asking of you today is to grant us the extra time that we need to kind of fully explore all of the concerns that our residents have, being that we're the ones who are directly impacted by this development. So some of those...
Keep going, but she just gave me the five-minute.
Okay, fair enough. I want to kind of back up to the Planning Commission hearing for just a second. And one thing that I do absolutely want to say with great deference to Sam from the Logan Neighborhood is that there were a lot of things that I think were said completely out of turn, and I think a lot of that was a result of the frustration that our residents were feeling, given that we were kind of like in this unknown cloud of what we were supposed to do. And a lot of people came out here and I think said a lot of things that, you know, truly they didn't mean. During the Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners asked staff for a map showing all of the other affordable housing units that were in the area. They were provided a spreadsheet that had pretty much everything, as far as I know. I mean, it was pages and pages thick. I think the intent of that was to try to determine whether or not this unit was like contributing to a saturation in the area, or whether this was just a standalone unit, kind of like well-integrated and sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. I went ahead and I took that spreadsheet, and I put it into a map system. And let's see if I can blow this up here a little bit. So what you see on this map, and you should have a copy in front of you also, the cluster of red pins that you see here, this is the area that's in question right next to the train station right here. So these are all affordable housing units that have an address within half a mile of the front door of the depot at Santiago. The orange pins are a mile out, the yellow pins are one and a quarter miles. So I took a look at this again, and I'm terribly sorry that this is so small, but this is a map that shows the clustering of those addresses. So you can see that the largest density of addresses is down here at Mini Street with 49 addresses from that spreadsheet. And this is actually the second highest area with 12 addresses. Kind of zooming in here just a minute, this right here is the depot. And what this spreadsheet unfortunately didn't tell me by just looking at it on a map is it didn't tell me the magnitude of each of these addresses, right? Some could be 1, some could be 70. So on the spreadsheet, it did mention, you know, how many of these units were affordable. So I went ahead and I created this. What this is, is this is a, kind of to indicate the magnitude of each of these pins. So a unit like this one here that has only one affordable unit is the same size as the pin. If it had four, it's four times as big. And really, kind of, this is meant to give you an idea of the size of each of these. Now, the yellow circle is the depot project that's proposed, and as you can see, it's not a small one. It's rather considerable. And we're talking about an area that is already saturated with these kind of affordable-type housing elements. While that's not a terrible thing, we really love our Logan neighbors, our Lacy neighbors, like, we're not at all against the affordable housing issue. We're really not. What we're against, though, is the concentration of any one type of housing, right? And if you look at the original proposal for the Santiago Street Lofts back in 2003, you know, they said that this was going to be the key area for future development and that this project was going to have like, you know, this kind of lightning rod for what it was going to be, and it was going to attract like all this new, you know, commerce and all this, this extra kind of stuff.
Madam Clerk, please give me the one-minute warning as well, because he'll need to wrap. It is one minute now?
It is one minute, okay.
Go.
So if I could, let's see.
We'll give you a 15-second technology allowance here.
Thank you very much. I must say that this all went much better in my head when I was typing it as early as 6:30 in the morning this morning since last night. And with the length of the meeting tonight, I'm a little slower than usual, so bear with me. Okay, well, I'll tell you what. I'll wrap up on this last slide, if you'll permit me. You know, there were minutes from the loan approval in which all of you were kind of able to speak and comment. And I think that I agree, you know, like completely, knocking down the building that's there now, that industrial building, and leaving it as a dirt lot is definitely an improvement in what we have. But the things that really kind of weigh on our minds are, you know, the... The RFP originally called for 10% of affordable housing. And by doing a little bit of research, I understood that the Housing Opportunity Ordinance gives you a kind of a 15% allowance, and you can actually apply for a bonus if you do like 25%. And where we're kind of confused is how we got straight from 25% all the way to 100% without kind of any consideration for that mixed feeling and that kind of integration within the community. I know that's something that was proposed back then at the loan approval, and, you know, I think that it's worth a reconsideration. Also, Councilwoman Martinez, like, one thing that I think stuck with me from the meeting that we had last week is that you thanked us for coming to you, and you said, hey, you know, I want to say thanks for coming out because you guys are the ones who are holding the city accountable. And really, like, I think that's only as true as it, as kind of your decision here today is. So, I mean, if you will grant us the extra time to kind of plead out our case, I suppose, and kind of explore the issues that we think are still on the table, then I think that that is true. But one way or the other, I want to thank you guys for your stamina in staying up late with us tonight and entertaining my, you know, horrible technology skills here. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I'm going to call in other speakers, and if you can be available, Cedric, we may have more questions for you, but let's hear from other people that want to address this. John Raya, followed by Jason Needle, I believe it is, followed by John Lewis.
I will, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to use some old technology here.
You got three minutes to stand on your head if you want, John.
Not at this time of night. I'm going to start out by saying I believe this project should be approved on its merits. I understand, you know, the process for getting these things through is what it is, and it's never any fun for anybody. I've been in construction for most of my adult life, and it always seems it takes longer to go through the process than it does to actually build the project. But, you know, the gentleman who spoke brought up some things that were said and some observations made at the Planning Commission and said, you know, perhaps they were out of bounds and, you know, those maybe were not the best things to say. I would tend to agree, but I would also say that perhaps they were instructive and revealing. I mean, people tend to, in those emotional times, really tell you what's on their mind, good or bad. One of the things that was said by one of the folks was, he was raised in Laguna Beach, lived in Irvine, then made the move to Santa Ana. And I've lived here all my life for a lot of reasons, had other choices, but I've stayed. But one of the things that was said was that it has the ability to become an amazing and unique place as Laguna Beach. We're not Laguna Beach. I like Laguna Beach, but I live in Santa Ana. We're going to have, you know, kind of the low-income ragtag retail. And, you know, I guess as I read some of the comments, I just, I would tell you that using class distinction as a, you know, part of how you approve a project shouldn't be the case. Working class does not mean no class. When I heard, you know, something with well-to-do neighbors and clients who could raise the values, again, or with ragtag retail, Santa Ana is currently in a great spot with... values, again, or with ragtag retail, Santa Ana is currently in a great spot with entrepreneurs really galore. I see this still as a gateway project, but having retail on that far, on the east side of that, coming right off the freeway, and the potential for that is a great thing. You know, we've done really, excuse me, really well in this town, with some of the entrepreneurs that come in, the exciting things they're doing.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, just, I got one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Quality tenants was one of the things they said they wanted. Quality tenants should not mean inequality in affordable housing. And the other thing, the last thing I'll say was, it said, you know, low income that we should, that we would have to be a little scared of. Fear should not be a part of public policy.
Thank you. John Needle, followed by John Lewis.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, thank you for your service, y muchas gracias por su atención tonight. First, I want to express my wholehearted agreement with Mr. Volk and my neighbors and their opposition to this project, based on the vision and the lack of local input. And I'm actually very disappointed by that last speaker using class as a weapon, because I don't believe that really has much to do with it. The area we're discussing truly is a gateway to the city. The Renaissance player of the city, of the city was very exciting, and one of the reasons that many people saw the potential to stay here and to come here. But the proposed lackluster corridor of dense units is an almost nonexistent retail at the moment, is beyond disappointing. We're hoping that our city leaders, you, would be able to pursue a bold vision here, and would be able to help us like they did in a way in San Diego, and instead of us, you know, perhaps we can give Santa Ana its own gas lamp district, instead of gas bags of hot air talking about what a great project this is. May I call your attention to a letter I sent? Should be in your packet, dated June 14. There's several points in there that weren't addressed whatsoever by the planning commission. I know that there's minimal time, so I'll go quickly through those. While I am opposed, I face the political reality that the developer is significantly better connected and aware of the process than we are, and also better organized and having much more time. There are traffic problems, the first two issues on there discuss the lights on Santiago. Between Civic Center and Santa Ana Boulevard, there's traffic, heavy traffic all day long. We're going to add 1,000 cars to that with no plan until 2035 to really resolve that. There, we need an addition of some crosswalks at those corners, there's been a death there, and that's been a problem. We need the addition of drop-off spots at the wooden floor. Street sweeping is a large problem in the area right now. There's no parking on the east or the west side of the street there at certain times of day, which causes a problem. And the parking is frankly insufficient, and I'm not going to have enough time to go over this with you, but there's three long paragraphs on why the parking is insufficient at this plan, and they're going to tell you that the 2.25 cars per unit is great, that's not true. They're going to tell you 3.33 units per, 1,000 square feet of commercial, and that's not true either. And frankly, it's just not a fantastic project, the way it's set out, and there are things that can be done to mitigate some of the pain and to resolve some of the residents' issues, and those just haven't been thought out. So, if it does have to be resolved, if it can't be delayed, which is what I would prefer, then please take a look at some of these conditions and see what you can do to mitigate some of our damage there. I really love Santa Ana, I love my neighbors, I love what we're doing here, and I just want the best for the city, and I know you guys do as well. So, thank you for taking some bold action to make some changes or delay this.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. John Lewis, followed by Craig Richenberg. And then after that, Don Reese.
Hi, thanks for letting me put my two cents in here. Basically, I just wanted to shine a light on a very specific part of the plan that I was concerned about when I first saw the layout proposal several months ago, and I honestly thought that it would have been corrected, because it seemed illogical, and that's the fact, that there's only one entry egress for a fairly dense populated structure. And I think this, I think it's got a potential to have a lot of activity, you know, from the retail and from the residents, and I, it just, it just seems illogical to me that there would only be one way to get in and out of here, especially with the subterranean garage. I know that initially, you know, one of their first proposals was to have a second entry exit on, on, you know, around the corner, but I think that was, I think they knocked that out of the plan because of objections, very reasonable objections from the Logan neighborhood, because they were concerned it would create extra traffic coming through their residential area. So now we're left with a single entry exit, and I just, I'm concerned about that. It's obviously technically been approved, but technically, technical, technically approved, but I think that, you know, I, you know, I just don't think it's going to work out. I think it's going to cause problems down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, please come on down, followed by Don Reese.
Thanks, Mayor, councilpeople, but my concerns were actually just addressed, so, thank you. Short speech.
Short speech, sometimes most effective. Don Reese, followed by Sean Coolidge.
Hi, Mayor Polito and councilmembers. My name's Don Reese, I'm the executive director and co-CEO of The Wooden Floor, and we have been given the opportunity to work with the Depot at Santiago project. I'm just here to offer my support of the project. The Wooden Floor, for all of you who may not know, were previously St. Joseph Ballet. We've been in the Santa Ana community since 1983, so we're celebrating our 31st anniversary. We offer dance education to students in the Santa Ana community through, coupled with academics, college prep, and family services. So since that time, 31 years now, we've served over 75,000 students within Santa Ana and the surrounding community. We're very proud of that within the work that we do. We've had numerous successes, but the number one thing that we've just announced is for a 10th year in a row, 100% of our students are going to college this year, which is three times the rate of the socioeconomic peers. More and more of them we're seeing today is they're creating a ripple effect in the community, because they're coming back to Santa Ana once they graduate college, they're working in the community, becoming business leaders, creating families, and so it's a really important work that we're doing today. We were first introduced to Barry Cottle with CNC Development in 2012 through Bank of America. We are a Neighborhood Builders Awardee of Bank of America, and they introduced us to Barry to, actually to get to know some of our families, who may be able to rent some of his properties. And through that, we learned that we have the same values of excellence, and so when Barry approached us last year, and he said that he wanted us to consider working with him in the Depot at Santiago project, it made real sense, because our philosophy is, we give these students the best, and they rise to the best. We feel this property is an excellent asset for Santa Ana. Thank you.
Real quick, before you go, Don, are you going to be within the project? Are you part of the 9,000 feet, or what's your involvement physically here?
We're on the corner, I don't know what end is that. Santiago and Civic Center, so we're on the-
How many square feet?
Right now, it's about 2,500 square feet.
And is that part of the 9,000 that Karen was talking about earlier? She's saying yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sean Coolidge, followed by Salvador Hernandez, who was here earlier, maybe Salvador is still here? Come on down if you are, please. Please go ahead, Sean.
Good evening, everyone, thank you very much for staying awake with us, because this is a very long night. I am, Sean Coolidge, eight-year resident, Santiago Street Lofts, blah, 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 blah. First of all, David, thank you very much for the shout-out for the farmer's market, appreciate that. The roost down the street from us, I heard great news that it got approved today, that is also great news. Look, I don't hate this project, you know, I think there's a lot of good points that were brought up, and last time I was here, I left swearing, and, hey, there I am, I left swearing, angry, and frustrated, man, like I, or men and women, I'm frustrated because I don't feel as if we're being heard. I mean, I sent an email out to you guys last week, I didn't hear back, I've expressed my concerns with the developer, I haven't been heard, you know, but, you know, three concerns, three simple concerns. That one traffic ingress egress, it seems like it's just poorly planned, you know, it's a recipe for trouble. The second issue is with the lack of retail plan, and again, no one can say Sean Coolidge doesn't support affordable housing, or Sean Coolidge hates a certain demographic, Sean Coolidge loves all. I even hosted the related development proposal, the big triada award-winning development on Santa Ana Boulevard in my house, had a bunch of people over, it was great. The one request we had from the developer is that we put a quality retail spot on the corner of Santa Ana Boulevard, so it can survive, and, you know, it can be a uniting community space. And what did they do? Related company, this highly touted developer, they stuck a little pocket retail right in the corner that's been empty for years, and I think somebody's about to occupy that space. Awesome. But that's, you know, that was a slap in the face. So, we're asking for a, you know, a retail study, a true retail study. I've heard from several restaurateurs that have been approached by CNC Developer, and the development crew, and they reached out to me, and they said, hey, look, we've heard about this development up the street from you, go ahead, can you tell us about it? I'm like, well, what do you think about it? And they said the exact same things, well, we're worried that there's traffic issues, or we're worried there's parking issues, and, you know, we just, we're concerned about it, we would love to be there. And, you know, these are all restaurants that you all know, and we're all very, we all love, they're Santa Ana-based, it's great. But they share the same concerns, but again, these concerns aren't being addressed by anyone. And, you know, I see like United Artists is here, and Sacred is here, and that's all great, let's all bring it in together and make this an artist village, because we are losing artists by the handful, there's no place for artists to live in this city that's affordable. But, but with that, you can't say like, oh, this is artist-only housing, you know, that's like kind of discriminatory. So, instead of defining the space or defining the tenant, let the space define the tenant. So, you know, let us build studios, don't build three, four-bedroom, or two, three-bedrooms, but build quality artist studios where creatives like myself can find a place to work into the wee hours of the night and stay up stressing about crazy stuff going on in the city. Guys, thank you very much, I'm out.
Thank you. Salvador, followed by Carlos Hernandez. Salvador went home. Carlos, are you here? Carlos went home. Zabalde Alvarez. Ricardo, I don't think I've called you yet. Carlos, yes. Yeah, en español, I've got to get the translator. Zabalde Alvarez, are you here? Araceli Robles, also in Spanish, so let's wait a minute. Isabel Lopez, is that Wellness Corridor? Okay, we have the translator. Go ahead and start, and then I'll come back to Carlos.
Hello, my name is Dr. Alvarez, this is my mom, Paula Alvarez Diaz, and we are here representing Sacred, and as we have a Sacred, we believe that this, that the Santiago Depot project will help benefit the Nana. My mother and I are here representing our family of 10. The project is important for us, because we have moved the law considerable amount of times to be able to accommodate our big family. We have lived in rooms, living rooms, and garages over time. As for the last eight years, my family has lived in an apartment with three bedrooms. My grandmother has her own room, me and my sisters have our own room, my parents got their own room, and my, and unfortunately, my brother sleeps in the living room. We have to go through this to be able to be comfortable. The place we live in is very expensive, they have too many rooms for little kids. People think that low-income housing will bring crime, but just because we don't have much doesn't mean we're going to start stealing. We don't have much, just because we don't have much doesn't mean we have to live like Paxardines, we're human, we're human beings, we need our space, but it's nearly impossible. I've got both parents working, who have to pay for food, clothes, education, rent, bills, and utilities. My older sister started college this year, and she's the first, like, from my family, and I'm super proud, but that's just another waste, like, another expense on my parents. We both, as my sister and me, are looking for jobs, but most people don't want to give jobs to a 16-year-old girl and a 20-year-old girl that looks like she's 12. We're barely scraping by. This project, the project like this will take away off my parents' shoulders. I'd get to see them more, they work and work, and I think, I thank them, because they train their best. An affordable housing project like this would take off, like, take off weight from the shoulders. Thanks.
Thank you. Gracias. So, let's go for Carlos, and then we'll continue.
Good evening, I'm here to, the reason that I'm here is to thank the council for thinking about us and considering us, the less fortunate people in the community, and I'm here to call on you to make the decision to approve this project that will benefit us, the many people in the city. The city has many needs, especially for housing, dignified housing, and we're here, and we need housing, because we can't go elsewhere, and we won't go elsewhere.
My name is Araceli Robles, and I'm here to ask for your support for this project. I've been living in an apartment such as this, my family has been living in an apartment such as this for about a year and a half, and this project is going to provide a clean place, that's well-illuminated, and it's safe, and we have a right to have such housing. Right now, many families are three to four families to a unit, and that engenders child abuse because of all the conditions that are there. Just because we have low income doesn't mean we have less culture, it doesn't mean that we do not love the arts. So we invite you to support this project, so that you can make a difference for our children and stop the abuse that happens unfortunately under these conditions.
So now, let's continue. Isabel Lopez, followed by Marina Ramirez, followed by Micah Bosamo. Isabel left. Is Marina Ramirez here? So, because Marina's not here, we're going to continue?
Oh, no, I'm here.
I know you're here, I'm joking. But I got you.
I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little lagging, it's 10:30 at night, excuse me.
I'm still on, let's keep going.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Marina Ramirez, and I'm here on behalf of Neighbor Works Orange County. We're a countywide affordable housing nonprofit, and Neighbor Works Orange County, we strongly support the development of the Depot at Santiago project. I just wanted to share some numbers to illustrate the need for this project and affordable housing in general in Santa Ana. The average two-bedroom- The average two-bedroom apartment in Orange County costs $1,644 a month. A person needs to earn at least $31.62 an hour to be able to afford this typical market-rate apartment. This means that a minimum wage earner must work approximately 158 hours a week in order to afford that apartment. So even three people working at minimum wage cannot afford this market-rate apartment. I was just listening to some of the concerns that the residents have, and of saying, you know, wanting mixed use, not just residential. I believe there was comments on more commercial development, something as Gaslamp, since it is the gateway to the community. This sounds like a great idea. You know, I'm all for more commercial development and bringing in more businesses, but just hearing some of the testimonies of some of the other residents, how could we focus on commercial development when, like, some of the residents were saying, three to four families are living in one unit in these conditions? We have to look at our priorities. What are our priorities? Improving the quality of health of people already living here in Santa Ana, or focusing on businesses? And also, some concerns of having more studios instead of three-to-four-bedroom apartments. But again, I say, we have to look at the families, the families living here, their quality of life. I myself am a new resident in Santa Ana. I live in affordable housing, owned by CNC Development. Beautiful, high-quality developments, and, like I said, I myself live there. I find myself to be a contributing member of the community, as are all the other residents here. So I believe everyone should have a fair shot to affordable housing. So, Neighbor Works Orange County, we strongly support the passage of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, followed by Apolonio Cortez.
Good evening, Mayor Polito, and council members. My name is Mike Balsamo. I'm with the Building Industry Association, Orange County chapter. We represent over 100,000 employees and 1,000 companies involved in home building here in Orange County. Nice to be here before you this night, and we're supportive of the project. Just want to give you a little bit of regional perspective about good things that are happening. In Orange County, last year, we created over 8,600 jobs in construction, substantial factor in lowering our unemployment rate to 5% in the county. This project in and of itself would generate 80 permanent jobs and over 2.9 million in tax revenue for the city. And also indirectly, more sales tax revenue from the residents that will be here over time. We have demographic challenges in our region. There are 432,000 more people projected for Orange County in the next 20 years. That's the SCAG projection. We've also seen our for-sale housing go up by 21% in price appreciation in the past year. So, we've got demand, strong demand for housing in the county. We've got very limited supply. Projects like this one help fulfill overall need in our market. And we're supportive of housing for all income levels. I think we are known, we have quite a few members that are in the market-rate world, but we understand and support housing at all levels, and it relieves pressure throughout the entirety of the housing spectrum. Lastly, just want to speak to SB 375 and the uniqueness of this project being right by the train station and the potential future light rail component. It fits all of the planning principles that our region's aspiring to, putting new housing near job centers and near transit opportunities. Very sustainable idea, and we urge your support this evening for a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Apolonio, followed by Victor, I believe it is, by Yan, followed by Claire Blayburn.
Buenas noches, señor calzón y miembros del Consilio personal de la ciudad. Mi nombre es Apolonio Cortez. Soy residente de la Ciudad de Santana y miembro de Sacred. Bueno, yo vengo esta noche precisamente a apoyar este tipo de proyectos ya que es importante para nuestra comunidad, la vivienda accesible, y creemos que sigan promoviendo este, porque esto va a traer beneficios y además trae consigo la salud para nuestra comunidad al haber este tipo de viviendas. Y queremos que, pues, se siga promoviendo, y ya que, este, por ejemplo, yo al transitar sobre la triada, es vecindario, me inspira confianza por la luminosidad que hay en la noche, y creo que esto en general es muy importante que se siga promoviendo, y gracias por tomar este liderazgo de apoyar esto, y gracias. La comunidad se lo agradece, y a nombre de Sacred. Gracias. Buenas noches.
My name is Apolonio Cortez. I'm a Santa Ana resident and a member of Sacred, and I'm here to ask for your support on this project, for this project. We need accessible housing. It's important for the residents, for the health and well-being of the residents. When I walk around that type of project, I feel safe as I walk around there. So I want to thank you for your leadership and your support of this project, and on behalf of Sacred, also, I thank you.
Victor Panyan, followed by Claire Blayburn, followed by Sean Mill.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager. I'm here today representing United Artists of Santa Ana in support of this project. We've seen the plan. It looks very, it's a very good project. I think it takes into account a lot of community needs. There's been a lot of input. The question of the one inlet for traffic, I think that that's what we see also with the Vista del Sol Apartments downtown in the Artist Village, and we haven't seen any problems with that. And there's also a very large parking lot next to this space across the street that could be utilized through an agreement with the train station, and there's a parking structure next to that as well. So I don't see that parking will be too much of an issue there. To backtrack, I first met Mr. Cottle and his partners when we had a kind of a workshop regarding the issue of that property that some people have spoken disparagingly of, that we have some folks that we know that live there. Skeith DeWine, one of our artist members, lives there, and Carolina Sarmiento, who's an arts commissioner now, also lived there. And so, we had a community forum to talk about the use of space and trying to create spaces that were live-work spaces for artists. And these two gentlemen came to our talk, and nobody knew them, but it turned out to be Barry Cottle and his partner. And they stayed, and they talked with us, and we listened to them, they listened to us. And Skeith was a little surprised because he didn't realize that these were the people that just bought his building. But I think that through conversation, we formed a kind of a bond. And flash forward to seeing the plan more recently, was very impressed that they did take some of the, what we said into account in terms of how to use a gallery in there. They brought the wooden floor in there. I think those are real assets to the community. Artists are very highly educated. We're teachers. We hope to work with the project, and we can bring in classes for youth. We, a lot of us teach youth. But I wanted to address a little bit about the people that are described as low-income. And we like to talk about affordable, and we like to talk about housing justice. But the face of these people that they're talking about is also a face of our artist constituency. We're talking single parents. We're talking veterans. We're talking students. We're talking entrepreneurs. We're talking seniors. We're talking folks with disabilities. And all of these people can't afford to live in this community, but they're all contributors to this community, and I think are all invested in making this a safer place and being entrepreneurs. And I would say that, you know, we're also interested in quality of life, that some people are trying to see this property as a wedge. I think we can see it as a bridge, a bridge between Logan and the Arts Lofts, a bridge between the train station and the downtown. And I honestly believe that people who are going there, knowing that it's close to mass transit, you won't have a problem with cars because you'll find people who want to take the bus, who need to take the bus.
Thank you, Victor.
And so, I just want to speak in favor of this project.
Thank you. Claire, followed by Sean Mill, followed by Cesar Cobalirubias.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Claire Blayburn. I'm the executive director and co-founder of America on Track, and I'm here to speak in support of the project. And we have worked with CNC Development for many years now, and when I first met Barry and all of his partners, I was so amazed at the dedication to the community. They're not just developers that come in to build and to make a profit. They're actively involved with the residents here. They offer space to community groups to provide services for the residents. And I think what we need to be focusing on here is that it improves all of Santa Ana. The more we give to the residents to help them have dignity, to help them have respect for where they live, give them pride, and offer them the same type of housing that anyone else would want to live in, which is beautiful and lighted and safe. That's going to enhance all of Santa Ana. That's going to make Santa Ana continue to grow the way it's grown so, grown so well over the last dozens of years. You guys have worked so hard to make Santa Ana such an amazing city that people do want to be here, and that's exactly the type of developer we should be celebrating that wants to do that, has that same vision for Santa Ana, to bring in great businesses, to bring in amazing, high-quality housing. That's what it is. People are going to be able to afford to live there, but it's just plain old great, high-quality housing. There's going to be great retail spots. There's going to be wonderful opportunities for kids to receive services through the wooden floor. They're going to often offer a potential demonstration kitchen to help teach nutrition. And there's so many wonderful things going to be happening there. I drive by that. It is the gateway to the city. I'm so excited. When I found out about this project, it's going to open up my view when I drive into the city every single day coming to work. So I think it's a fantastic project. CNC Development has proven that they really care about the city, and they're looking out for the best interest. And the people who live there have, you can't judge somebody's character by their pocketbook and how much money they make. They are equally good neighbors to walk a dog with, to have a cup of coffee with. And so I think that we need to look at, these are all human beings that want the best for Santa Ana, the best for themselves, the best for their futures, and CNC Development's trying to help make that a reality for everyone.
Thank you. Sean, followed by Cesar, followed by Chuck Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here this evening to ask that you deny Appeal 2014-01 and support the Planning Commission recommendation approving the site plan review and tentative parcel map as condition. As you know, I'm the vice chairman of the city's planning commission, but more importantly, I'm a 47-year resident of Santa Ana. This is only the second time since I was appointed to the planning commission that I've come down to speak in favor of a project that I voted on previously. Normally, I would just let my vote speak for itself. The only other time I came down was when we spoke about the housing opportunity ordinance because I felt it was so important to speak about. The reason I'm here tonight is because I strongly believe in this project, and more importantly, I strongly believe in the good work that CNC Development does in this community. As we all know, we can just look at their track record. Mr. Mayor, you and I have been here a long time, and you can remember, there were three places in Orange County you didn't go. You didn't go to Mini Street, you didn't go to Buena Clinton, and you didn't go to Jeffrey Lynn. Well, over the years, those areas have been improved. Right here in San Ana, it was Barry Cottle, the folks at CNC Development, and folks like yourself, that created Cornerstone Village and cleaned up this horrible, horrible community that we had, and turned it into actually a livable, great place to live. As I've said in the past, Barry doesn't build apartment complexes. Barry builds communities. And that's why I'm here tonight. I must commend the folks, the opponents, for toning down the rhetoric, the classist rhetoric that I was subjected to. You know, low income doesn't equal low quality of people. Affordable housing doesn't mean housing projects. And I'm always disappointed when the discussion turns to that and the attack on people because they don't have a lot of money. And it was very sad to sit up and have to listen to folks who are well-intentioned say some horrible things about people that are in our community just because they're less fortunate than some of us. I would just, in closing, about the retail component, I hear high quality, low quality. What's most important is that it's sustainable retail. We need retail that's going to support the entire community, not just a few folks that live across the street. It needs to be supporting the entire community, Logan, the people that live there, and the other neighborhoods in the area. So again, I urge you to support this, and I thank you for your time.
Cesar, followed by Chuck Kelly, followed by Keith DeWine.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, city attorney. I'd like to request that the council consider denying the request for the appeal. This project is a project that, I believe, is part of the vision of the city, when the city, four years ago, or three years ago, I'm sorry, went back and opened the opportunity for a public process to start the Renaissance Plan, to start the transit zoning code, and then subsequently opened up the process also by the Sunshine Ordinance, providing access to the decisions that this council would make through development. I think that's a key vision that the council had, and part of that vision was also to, through these mechanisms, to provide opportunities for investment. Investment in the city, investments that would improve the communities, that would improve quality of life. And now we're seeing those investments come in. Let's not move back on this situation. I think we need to move forward, supporting this project that's going to provide not only quality, affordable housing in our community that's greatly needed, but also quality retail, and also a quality investment, not only in the community, but also in the residents of Santa Ana. Thank you very much.
Chuck Kelly, followed by Keith DeWine, followed by Sandra Pochapena.
My name is Chuck Kelly, and I've been a resident in the Santiago Art Loft for four years. I moved there, so proud of the place. I invested my money as a homeowner, and like all the other 108 homeowners in the Santiago loft community, you know, we looked at our investment with pride and with honor that we're residents of Santa Ana. I've looked at commercial, you know, developments of other properties in all the communities around Orange County, and in every case, and I've got nothing about affordable housing that I've got a problem with or of the residents, and I wish them well, and I support those activities. But to do dumping, to put 100% instead of 15%, which would be a more normal mix, and then to allow them to sell these credits off to some other developer who doesn't want to have low-income housing in their new development is morally wrong. I'll say to you, to all you people in the council, as a homeowner, you would detest having a low-income housing project unwillingly planted 100 yards from your front door. I don't have a problem with the mix. I don't have a problem with the architecture if it was in keeping with, you know, something that would allow reasonable spread around the city. But you're, if you take the area from Main Street all the way to the station, the whole area is what you're making right here. So the density you're creating of 100% low income is immoral. I'm going to say to you, you wouldn't want Barry Cottle and his son living conveniently in an upper-class neighborhood in an unincorporated area just east of Santa Ana. They wouldn't want this planted between their two houses a block away. And speaking for the 108, you know, people that live in our community, that's our position on it. We're not opposed to the architecture of it. We're not opposed to the look or any of the rest, but putting 100% in there is morally wrong. As their neighbor, you wouldn't want it. You would oppose it. And you guys are elected officials. You pull this thing off, and you make this thing happen without opposing it, you'll have 108, 256 voters or more that'll be working wholeheartedly to see that you're gone in the next election because you don't represent your constituents.
Keith, followed by Sandra.
I hadn't expected to speak tonight, but the very property that everybody's talking about...
Stay close to the mic.
Okay. The very property that everybody's talking about, I have lived in for 25 years. I came down here at the bequest of a gentleman named Don Cribb. He begged and pleaded me to dump my studio on Costa Mesa. He said, "We need people and artists like you to come to Santa Ana." So, I dumped my studio in Santa Ana. He says, "There's going to be the most amazing and incredible opportunities afforded you." So, I didn't want to move into the downtown district. I wanted to be over by the train station. I wanted to be able to hop on the train, go to LA. I wanted, I saw that district, and I saw the possibility that this was going to be the most amazing arts district that Orange County had ever seen. So I planted myself down at 939 Santiago Street 25 years ago. Now, I have given my lifeblood to this city. I opened an art gallery in downtown Santa Ana in the Santora Building. lifeblood to this city. I opened an art gallery in downtown Santa Ana in the Santora Building. I got on the phone and I called up all my artist buddies and said, "Come on down." That building became the birthplace of the Santa Ana Arts Movement. It was the first place that was affordable housing for artists. And what Barry Cottle's doing is very great, but as you put in 25 years into the city, there's no affordable housing for the artists. I'm having to relocate, move out of the building, and I myself am going to have to relocate someplace else. Many of my artist friends have already left the city, and that's the crisis that we're in, is that, okay, if you're going to put low-income housing, what are you going to do with the displaced artists? Where are you going to put them? There's no place for me to go for affordable housing. Now, and there's a lot of other people screaming, "We need affordable housing." But the artists that came to this city increased the quality of living, increased the economic standards of the city, brought more interest to the city, and generated a lot of energy to the city. But I, as an artist, feel like I'm left out in the cold. Now, Jakowski is doing a really exciting project down the street from me, and that's originally when I first got to the city, I made friends with all the City Council members. And I invited them over to my studio, and they put it on the books for development, that whole district. So I'm kind of like the father of that district. I've worked and I poured my blood into it. And hopefully, you guys will recognize that not just me, but all of the artists really pushed and accelerated the growth and development of Santa Ana. And someone like me feels like I am just being put straight out in the cold, my heart's being ripped out, and there's no place to go. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Sandra.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our City Manager and staff, thank you all for staying so late and hearing everybody out on these important issues. I'm Sandra Pochapena, and I'm a Santa Ana native. And I'm here speaking on behalf of United Artists of Santa Ana. We are in support of CNC Development's depot at Santiago. And as Skeeth and many of my other fellow artists have said, you know, Santa Ana, of course, you all know, really has, really leveraged the arts into, you know, its branding. The arts, of course, you know, have made the city desirable and certainly have, you know, increased our revenues, have broadened great business, have sold a lot of buildings, a lot of homes. And Santa Ana's creative community was really, really vital to this new reblossoming of our city. And we have lost a lot of spaces. Almost every single low-cost live-work space in the downtown core around the Artist Village ironically is gone. We don't have artists in the Empire Building. They don't live-work in the Santora. They used to. They don't live-work in the Spurgeon. They're all gone, all of us. So we really have no place to go. We used to have artists at the Vista de Sol, and a lot of them can't afford to be there anymore. So as Skeeth said, we've got people that have donated, have given decades of their lives here, and now they're, instead of thinking about retirement and, you know, and what they could, you know, accomplish in this new phase of their lives, they're just being kicked out. So we wanted to address this, and we did hold a workshop with Barry Cottle and his staff came down. And we really have kept that line of dialogue open, and we are going to be participating in this project. United Artists is going to have a gallery. We're going to be programming local arts there. We're going to be programming monthly art markets in the courtyard of this facility. And we're also going to be programming live music. We're going to make use of its fabulous location across from this train station to bring in tourism, to bring in art collectors and curators, so that we can continue to push forward, you know, that arts vision. And we hope that a lot of our artist members will be applying to, and we're encouraging them to apply, to have spaces at this. It's not, you know, a full-on live-work art colony yet, but we are speaking with Mr. Cottle and with CNC Development that maybe their next development is going to be a full-on live-work artist community. And we are hoping to work towards that. Other cities like San Diego, San Francisco, Los Angeles, they're building large-scale artist live-work communities, and we look forward to not just this development, but future developments that CNC has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. So I'm now going to close the public hearing and bring it to Council for a thought and consideration. May I start on the right, Councilwoman Martinez, please?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost-
Oh, there's one more. Wait a minute. She just gave me one more. Sorry about that. Ted Cundley, please. I'll reopen up the public hearing. Is Ted here? Ted is gone. I'll reclose it, and you're back on, Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, would like to thank all of you for being here with us. It is about 11:07. But with that being said, if I could have Karen and also Take Higgs, please address us. I know there were some concerns in regards, one, regards to traffic. And so I would like for that to be addressed, so we can put that on the record. So if we could start with that, Mr. Take?
Thank you, Mayor Polito, and members of the council. Some of the issues that were brought up, and apparently the most important issue to a lot of the Santiago Lofts residents, was the issue of the single driveway. And we did do a, we required the developer to provide a traffic study for that specific driveway. And it was determined to be fully functional with the amount of trips that would be generated through the traffic, through the project. There was one restriction that will be on that driveway, and it will be in the AM and PM peak hours. There will be no left turn allowed out of the driveway. Otherwise, it's expected that there won't be any backups or delays or anything like that. One other question that was brought up was related to the traffic signal at Santiago and Civic Center. And I just wanted to clarify, one of the residents said that wouldn't be implemented until 2035. But the Transit Zoning Code identified a number of traffic mitigations and fees to be collected to offset those, to mitigate those impacts. And when we see any kind of particular problem at that location, we would implement a traffic signal there. A traffic signal is one of the mitigations. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the residents of Santiago Lofts. They brought up a number of really terrific issues that we need to look at, including parking on both sides of Santiago. And it looks like we can re-implement some parking on both sides of the street.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Take. Karen, I know we also received a couple of correspondence, and I know Councilman Benavides also responded to them. And so if we just, for the record, I know City Manager Cabasos indicated that you'd be providing that for us this evening.
Some of the items that Take just went through were one of the, were on the list, conditions to improve the project that came from Mr. Needle. And so the light at Santiago and Civic Center, Take just addressed that, including the synchronization of the lights. Addition of crosswalks, we're also going to be looking at that in addition. Two more drop-off spots for the wooden floor in order to not impact existing parking. The parking is more than adequate for the site. In fact, the council sometimes has said that our parking ratio at 2.25 per unit plus commercial parking is too high for that area. That is the ratio that was used to park the project. And there's more than adequate room for students to be dropped off. We also expect, I'm sure the wooden floor expects, that students will be coming from within the project as well as from the surrounding neighborhoods nearby. So we wouldn't recommend requirement for any additional parking there. Public Works is also going to be looking at the schedules for street sweeping, and then, as Take had mentioned, returning parking to the street. Final comment is about requiring an additional 50 parking spaces on the project site itself. And again, the project does meet all the parking standards that are in place right now. There's also comments about pursuing market rate rather than for-sale projects in this area. And there are several for-sale market rate projects that will be under construction soon. They're the second and third phases of the Station District project that will be constructed by City Ventures. Those are for-sale townhouses. Those should be coming on the market within the next year. And as far as other affordable projects in this area, the City Council has directed staff to use future affordable housing dollars for acquisition and rehab primarily, rather than for new construction. So I wouldn't see that there would be any raw land projects like that coming in the future.
Thank you. And as well, I know some of the folks from Santiago Lofts have asked us to, you know, move forward and delay this. And I also spoke with CNC, with, well, communicated, Barry communicated via voicemail. I've been extremely busy with work, but we communicated. And he left me a voicemail in regards to, I asked in regards to, you know, if, just say that if we were to continue this matter, will this delay any of their funding or et cetera? And so I'm not sure if you can please respond to that.
Yes. They have requirements to meet some deadlines for the tax credit funding that they're applying for. Delay, we've really been pushing this out and pushing this out in many ways so that we could continue working with the community. So a delay at this point would put their tax credit funding in jeopardy.
Which would put the project in jeopardy.
Which would put the project in jeopardy.
And the reason why I state this, because it's very important, just because if this council decides to move forward with the project today and approve it, it doesn't mean that we still can't have ongoing communications with the neighborhood to continue to improve this project. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that that is a true statement.
Yes. I'd also like to mention that there has been a website that's been available for the project. Our staff has been meeting individually with people who've been interested in this. We've always had open communication, phone numbers, email addresses, plenty of ways to get informed about the project, and not just a one-way conversation, but also us being proactive and the developer being proactive as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Alusa. You know, and I just wanted those questions addressed before I make my comments. And one, you know, again, I do want to thank the folks from the Santiago Lofts and their concerns, and hoping that we can continue this online dialogue, not only with our staff, but us up here on the council. We certainly appreciate everyone's input, but at the end of the day, we have to make the best decisions for all the residents in the city of Santa Ana. And I'll tell you that before we got elected to the City Council, we had the Renaissance Pacific Plan first. And now we have the Station District and the upzoning of this code. And I'll tell you that, you know, four, five years ago, there was a pause, because there wasn't transparency, there wasn't input from the community, and we stopped that process. And Mr. Cullubias, Sessad mentioned that. And then we decided to say, hey, we want to assure that we're going to do this right, and we're going to get input from the community. And that's what we did. And this is how we came up with this zoning. This is how we are now here. I understand that there are going to be decisions that this council make that not everyone's going to like. I'll tell you, a couple of years ago, we were here, where we received threats from the folks from Sacred, that if we didn't support a community benefits agreement in regards to Triada, that they were going to work tirelessly to make sure that we weren't elected. Let me tell you, that those kinds of threats don't affect me. I've done my job as a council member. And then when we have the public coming and telling us and using, you can vote for whoever you so choose, who you think that's going to do the best job. But at the end of the day, it is our responsibility to take everyone's input, including our staffs, the public, and then we make an informed decision. I can't tell the Planning Commission how they're going to support a project and come before us. Ultimately, these decisions come before the council, and we need to be assured that any project that we approve is in compliance with our zoning, with our land use. And that's what we're taking a look at. And then also the integrity of the neighborhood. And I believe that CNC Development has always taken into consideration the integrity of the neighborhood, the folks that are there, and have communicated with them in every single project. I remember when I first got elected to this council, I asked the questions, "Why does CNC Development receive all our affordable housing dollars acquisition? Something's wrong here." And I didn't know them very well, but over the years, my eight years here in office, I'll tell you, that they are probably the best developers in this, that has come into this city and has continued to stay. And not only that, that they respect everyone, and they want the best for Santa Ana. And I thank them for that. Yes, you are going to ask the question that, "Why did the City Council not go out and go and talk to all the residents?" Look, at the end of the day, that's not our job. Our staff works with developers, and we have a process. Unfortunately, sometimes that process gets miscommunicated. And as I spoke with some of the people with Santiago Lofts, they didn't really understand that this process started way long before with the financing. And then it started, and now that you guys have the big picture, and now that we're here, you know, we have to make a decision. There are timelines that these developers need to move forward with. And we also need to understand that we made a commitment as a City Council, that we were going to uphold these kinds of new developments within the Station District. So I have to tell you that if we decide as a council to delay because we want more conversations with the community, I have to say that, you know, at the end of the day, what is it that we want to produce for this community? We want dignified housing. And yes, some people have mentioned, "Why in a certain area?" I'll tell you that it took 20-plus years off the Santa Ana Boulevard corridor to produce any kind of housing there. Many of you just said, and a certain individual just said, he came up here, that he's only been here for four years. Many of us have lived in this community our entire lives. I specifically grew up in that part of town, and I'll tell you that Santa Ana Boulevard, for over 20-plus years, looked horrific, bad living conditions. This City Council made a decision, even against a lot of the folks that are here today, that because we didn't give them a community benefits agreement, that we weren't going to stay true to what we said we were going to build. We still moved forward collectively as a council and said, you know, we're going to do the right things, we're going to stay committed. And guess what? That is a beautiful project. We provided open space. We did joint-use agreements with the school district. Look, not everything is going to be perfect on the retail end, as Mr. Coolidge mentioned. I am too very disappointed. But as I have spoken to Barry Cottle and his partners, I have made it very clear that the retail component has to be better than Triada. It has to be. And you know what? They're making a commitment. And another thing, the city is not financing that project. CNC Development is paying for the retail component, and they are going to subsidize 99% of that retail component, because they listened to the community. They, folks, wanted retail there, and they said, "Okay, we're going to make that happen because we want to make sure that we have an inclusive community and wanting to provide the needs for everyone in that area." Is it 100% both ends? We saw Mr. Romero come here earlier today and speaking about how he doesn't want five stories. He wants four stories. Look, but he supports the project. He's not going to be in agreement with everything. I'm assuming at the end of the day, we're not all going to always be satisfied, but we have to make a good decision based on what we approved with the zoning and land use in that area. So I'll open it up for more questions.
Thank you. Councilor Vince Armiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all of us are a little tired and punchy at this point. But, you know, I know that there was an appellant who came up here and spoke for the first 15 minutes, and he said he had never gotten involved in civic politics, and I guess it was his first presentation. So I think he left, but he did a pretty decent job, I think, for his first time out. And I think he represented the issue as well. I want to thank the residents at the Santiago Lofts who came up here and spoke. I think all of you made your points clearly. We understand what they are. I think you obviously have strong feelings, and I think you're well-intentioned. And I think you care about your community. You care about the area that you live in, as do we all. I think as do everybody that came up here and spoke. Sean Coolidge, who's been a friend- Sean Coolidge, who's been a friend to this council and has come here and spoken to us on a number of issues and has been an advocate for the farmer's market. I think he's somebody who, when he speaks, I think we all listen very closely, because I think he has some very relevant, incredible things to say. Everybody else, Cesar Covalubias, John Raya, Shawn Mill, and somebody from the Planning Commission who came before us. And I took a look at the minutes and I saw and reviewed some of what was discussed at the Planning Commission. So I also want to thank people on both sides, because I think that conversation at the Planning Commission degraded itself to a very poor exchange. I think people were talking about, you know, one community being desirable, another community being less desirable. That's just not, I think, that's not paying the due respect for this community that we should have. And that type of discourse is not positive, and I don't think it gets us to any better place, nor do threats. I think, you know, look, those things just have no place in our discourse. I think we're talking about something that we should address on the merits, I think, on the substance of it. And I realize everybody's frustration, and especially Sean's. I remember when Sean Coolidge came here for the first time a few years ago, he said he was waiting for the retail to come. Well, unfortunately, what coincided with the development at the Santiago Lofts was the recession. And we had very high hopes for diagonal from where you all are, at the parking lot in the train station, there was a very large retail development planned. I think we had even retained somebody to design and give us renderings of that, and that was Shahim Sadegi, who did the anti-mall over in Costa Mesa. So, look, there were high hopes, and there still is. The unfortunate part about it is the timing's been off. And it's affected not just all of us, but cities as well. So I think those will come. But what you should think about as well is we're at this dilemma where we talk about what comes first, the chicken or the egg? What comes first, the amenities or the residents? So what we've realized, and we realize this in the downtown, you can't have good amenities without a critical mass of people. And we're hoping that developments like this, and this isn't the only development that's going to be planned for that area, we're hoping that there's going to be some market rate development as well. There has to be a variety of development, but there has to be a substantial number of residents to be able to sustain the type of retail that we'd all like to see. Whether it's restaurants, whether it's nightlife, whether it's just, you know, just a grocery store. So I think that will come. And with the advent of the streetcar, which we know we're very optimistic about, all those things are going to come together. It's taken a while, but, you know, nobody's more frustrated, I think, than we are, because we would have wanted to see them realized a lot, you know, earlier. It just hasn't been the case. So I hope you don't think you're being harmed, which is what I was hearing at the beginning. This isn't intended to harm anybody. This is intended to create some opportunities for families that, you know, may not make as much as we do, you know, and are less fortunate, and to provide dignified, quality housing for people who are your neighbors, who are people who have raised their kids here and have grown up here. And as somebody who's been an advocate, a very strong advocate of the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, this is exactly the type of development that I think is going to complement many of the market rate stuff. On the south side of town, we have units, and I think our city manager can attest to that. You know, they're pretty high on the rentals, right, Mr. City Manager? So, look, we balance things out, but we need to have a variety of those housing. So I appreciate a lot of the comments that were made. But lastly, the CNC, they've built some of the most sustainable projects and developments in the city that I know. Because they're not the type of developer that comes in, they construct it, they sell it, and they walk away. They've actually stayed. Many of their developments are in my ward. So I've seen them not only maintain and sustain their developments, but they become very vested with the neighbors there. So I want to thank them for doing what they do. And to all of you who may not agree with the decisions that are made tonight, please understand that this is just one piece of a much larger puzzle. And to the written communication and correspondence that we received, some of these concessions that were discussed, and I think were addressed by my colleague, Councilmember Martinez, I agree with. I think some of these logistical mitigation efforts, I think, are very valid. The streetlights, and crosswalks, additional parking, and additional market rate development in the area. All those things, I think, we all want to see that. But we have to piecemeal this. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to have these things all implemented all at once. So, Mr. City Manager, if we could somehow incorporate this into discussion as we develop the area, as we work with the developer here. And finally, you know, to Barry Cottle, maybe if we can continue to grow that retail area, I don't know how far you can push that envelope, but maybe we come up with some more square footage for you to fit a little bit more commercial or retail. That would be great. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be supportive of the project.
Thank you. Any comments to the left?
I'd also like to take a moment to thank everyone who came out to speak, both in favor and against the project. I know Barry Cottle and CNC Development have done wonderful work here in our city. Many of our working families have benefited. I work right across the street from the Corner Store Village. And having grown up in San Ana, I know how much that has improved our community. I do feel that, like Councilmember Martinez said, a lot of times, you know, not everyone agrees with our decisions. But I think that based on the merits of this project, I am going to support it as well.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna?
You know, just going to keep it short, and I think the best indicator for future behavior is past behavior. And the track record that this organization has invested in our community has been a strong one. They do not leave their projects standalone. They continue to roll up their sleeves and get to work. And I think those are good community partners. I do happen to live about 13 houses from one of the projects. So I have no issues and challenges with it whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody who came out and spoke. I was particularly impressed with the, one, the presentation by the appellant, Mr. Volk, I believe. Also received a couple of letters, Mr. Needle and Ms. Arnold, I believe, as well. Both very well-written, I think reasonable, questions, requests. I think most of which were, Councilwoman Martinez mentioned, I replied to one of the correspondence that we received. I spoke with our planning director as well, Ms. Alusa. And I think she addressed all of those items that Councilwoman Martinez referenced. Let me make sure, actually, with regard to the traffic light there that approached the sun earlier. I'm not sure if there were some questions about the street sweeping and coordinating street sweeping. Was that, Ms. Alusa, you addressed that earlier? Okay, perfect. Parking also on either side, I think you addressed as well. I don't know if you mentioned, I know you mentioned to me earlier that one of the things that we would be looking at is also enhancing the area with bike lanes as well. I don't know if you, okay, you did address that as well. Okay, maybe I, it's a long night, a long meeting. A couple of the notes that I do have here, you know, some comments were made as to the whole issue of affordable housing. And it seemed like, it's unfortunate, some of the comment, the rhetoric and suggestions were that the folks who are going to be living here are going to be somehow bad for that neighborhood. And property values are going to go down for that reason. I think most of us on this council, probably, I know I would have been able to, my family would have qualified for affordable housing. And a number of us were born and raised in working families, immigrant families, lower-income families. You know what? I think we turned out all right. And now what we're looking to do is contribute to, continue to contribute to our city and provide opportunities for those who live in our community, who might be of lesser means. I actually do live, actually right across the street, literally, from an affordable housing project happens to be, one by Orange Housing and CNC Development. And I chose to live there. And years ago, before it was actually designated affordable. And I love my community. It's a great community. And I think some of the folks, actually, who I've learned from most in my adult life have been some of my neighbors who have had modest means, working hard to just put food on the table, take care of their kids. And they're some of the most generous people, some of the most grateful people, hardest-working people. So I think that there is something to be said, though, for this idea of mixed income in this community. Because there's a lot that people who are of higher means, that they can learn and benefit from, living next to somebody who might not be of as, have as much money perhaps, as one, as somebody who, again, who can afford and live in a market rate or even luxury place. And vice versa. I think our kids and families living close to or in a market rate environment, who are of lesser means, also can benefit, mutually benefit. So going forward, with regard to this project specifically, I think there was also a comment that was made as far as whether, you know, we should be focusing on or considering commercial and retail development when there are families that are in need of dignified housing. And I don't think it's an either-or. I think it's both ends. And I think here in this project, we're actually getting that. I did have some questions early on, when this did come before us, for consideration of the financing. My preference, you know, going forward, particularly in this area, because we have done a fair amount of housing that is affordable, is that we do focus more on market rate in the Station District area going forward. I know when we put out RFPs on housing, we do oftentimes designate areas that we want to see some of that housing, where we want to see some of that housing located. In the past, we have identified this area. I think that we can start looking at other areas. For sale also, I would, I think, is a good thing, giving people an opportunity to purchase a home. With regard to, just a couple of the other elements that I would recommend and request that staff continue to follow up on, with regard to this project depot. I know that there were some other recommendations that were made with regard to some of the architectural elements that we can, I just want to ask staff to continue to work with the applicant, sizes of windows, some of other things that would just kind of enhance, that were both recommended either by council. I had some recommendations, as well as some of the correspondence that we did receive from some of the neighbors there, the loft neighbors in particular. The color palette as well, choice there, ensuring that it is compliments the other developments in the area. I do understand the comments that were made by the members of the residents of Santiago Lofts. I understand this idea that they purchased and purchased part of it. You know, it's not, being in real estate and representing both buyers and sellers, when the buyer buys, oftentimes they're buying, especially new development, they're buying into a dream, they're buying into what they see as coming forward in the future. And I understand that in some cases, they might felt, might have felt that what they were sold, when they purchased, maybe has not quite come to fruition quite yet. I do believe that the retail that is going to be included in here will begin to actually address some of those interests and some of those hopes that folks had when they did buy in Santiago Lofts. So that's the other component, the other piece for our staff, is to ensure that we do everything we can to require for there to be a good, sustainable plan when it comes to the retail. I know one of the things, again, that we did talk about as well is that, from what I understand, and if you feel need to, Ms. Alusa, you can approach just to confirm. But in some of the, when there's a new restaurant, one of the ideas and concepts that was presented, some of the obstacles to a new tenant is the grease traps, for example, or the exhaust, you know, that might make its cost prohibitive. And I believe that the applicant has agreed to already address some of those things, include that in the development, to, again, remove some of those obstacles to ensure that we do have retailers come in and make use of that. So with that, just the only other component is the arts piece. I know that the wooden floor will speak into that. That was part of the theme that was mentioned as well. I just want to encourage both the applicant to do everything possible to get the word out within the artist community and to do everything we can to make sure that, again, that the use, the retail piece, that the tenants would be able to complement that whole, just the vision that was described earlier. That doesn't mean that folks of, again, of modest means are not part of that vision. I think that they'll definitely be able to contribute as well. And the last item that I do have, this idea of this 15% versus 100%, that the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, it does address the 15%. That is specifically in question for clarification, Ms. Alusa, is that that's specifically for times when we were to change zoning for market rate development. Is that correct? So if you can address that, because I think there's a misconception there on that item.
Sure. The affordable component on this project is not related to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. It's related to the funding that the city is providing and that the applicant's also seeking from the state. The Housing Opportunity Ordinance doesn't actually apply in this location, because it's already been zoned for this project. So...
When does it apply?
It applies when there's a rezone from non-residential to residential or from a lower-density residential to a higher-density residential.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll be supporting the item.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And since Mayor Potem is gone, it just leaves me at this time. If he starts talking, we'll all ignore him. Look, just a few thoughts. One is, I know earlier, John Raya, when you were talking, you were talking about, you know, in a way, you know, this is San Ana, it's not Laguna Beach. I beg to differ with you in the sense that for years now, we've been dreaming beyond Laguna Beach. We've been doing things that I think are more cutting-edge, more advanced, you know, things like where you're going to have your taekwondo event at Original Mikes. If we hadn't have been dreaming beyond that, Original Mikes wouldn't have been there. If we would have been working and listening to others, we wouldn't have the Artist Village at all. You know, if we didn't have the dream to bring in the High School of the Arts and what that has meant, they never would have come to this city. So I think what we have to do is constantly a balancing act. And we have to, at times, have vision. Sometimes we have to compromise the vision. But we have to continue with the vision, and we have to get as much as we possibly can. In this particular case... I understand, but you also, you know, for example, recently, I was having lunch with somebody in Elisa Viejo. And they began to apologize for the inferior restaurants that they believe they have in South County, because they're all chains down there. You know, they're all chains. Here in San Ana, we're not all chains. Here we're magic. Here we're organic. Here we're people that are dreaming and believing that they can start a restaurant that nobody else has started, that can be a special place, and that it's going to work. And the reason we have nine restaurants right now on the queue ready to open is because that dream is alive and well. So I think whether you're an affordable housing advocate or a supporter of the Artist Village, or you live in the Santiago Lofts or elsewhere, you know, please continue dreaming the dream. Don't give up on any dream. In the ideal world, we would do a bunch of things at the same time. And we'd sit here and we'd say, well, can this development go here versus there? We'd try to figure out, where is the best place? And some of the things that we have before us wouldn't even come before us because we'd be able to, you know, wave a magic wand. But we can't do that. The reality is, you have to take things one step at a time. You have to take them incrementally, and you have to do the best to move forward. Now, I believe that, you know, for the folks in the Santiago Lofts, this project, I believe, is going to enhance your property values. You might disagree with me, but let me tell you my logic and reasoning. Look at what's there now across the street from you. Look at the existing condition. I mean, I can see it in a picture here, and you can see it if you look outside your window. You know, they're like, you know, metal, you know, storage vehicles. And, you know, I see, you know, chain-link fences with a razor wire around here and there. I see, you know, unkipped landscaping, or really no landscaping. I mean, I see, you know, palm trees that have been untrimmed for so many years that they have the dead leaves all the way down to the bottom. They look like those palm trees that you see on a freeway, you know, where Caltrans, you know, never does anything except they bring the guys that pick up the trash, and they just walk by the palm trees, and they, nobody ever trims them. So when I see that compared to this project, and I'm glad, Barry, that you're putting money into the architecture... putting money into the architecture, it doesn't look like a low-income anything to me. It looks like, uh, and by the way, I wish it was taller. I know, I know you're going a certain height and Sam's concerned about the floor. I wish you had a little bit more because I think it's beautiful. And, and I think it's cool-looking architecture. I think people are gonna say that's a hip place and it's much better than what's there now. Also, on the retail component, you're talking about, you know, the wooden floor twenty-five-hundred feet. Well, that leaves about sixty-five-hundred feet for, for other retail. And, and I think that other retail could be a Starbucks, it could be a restaurant, it could be something that's exciting, it could be something that's gonna be right next to the streetcar. And the streetcar, and make no mistake, we move forward with a streetcar, it's gonna make every single piece of real estate along that line more valuable. And, and the fact that we have forty-seven units to the acre on this particular project, I think is a good thing. Because a lot of those folks are gonna be using the streetcar like a whole lot of other folks. And the fact that there's more people adjacent to it and we're adding, you know, to that activity and that vitality, I think is, is, is a very positive, uh, development. I also see that as we continue to elevate the city and, and, and believe, you know, please, keep everybody believing the dream, that means better jobs, that means more opportunity, that means higher wages for everybody. And that's part of the way you raise a city. You don't raise a city by saying, well, we're gonna limit opportunity and, and if we believe that affordable housing locks people in it forever, that's the end of the day. No. There are so many people that, that start at one level and over time, with hard work and vision and education and all the things that, 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 that we all believe in, lives are transformed. Lives are literally transformed and, and in an organic, vibrant city like we're living in. And in these times where we've worked for so many years and had so many dreams for so many years, in an hour, at a point in time where the economy's coming back in a strong, strong manner, we continue, a, and I think we can lift up the entire city. And, and, and having a component within this development, like the wooden floor, that's, I think, priceless. I, I, it's not only the benefit to all the students that are gonna go, that are gonna dance, that are gonna go to college, it's the discipline that brings to people that are a part of that. These individuals, you know, part of what the wooden floor does, they go to the parents and they show the parents how to be more responsible with their finances so that they can have, you know, savings accounts and retirement plans and, and the ability to have better lives. And, and that has a ripple effect throughout the community. So, I, and, so I think this is gonna be a quality project and, and, and a project where, where we should all work together to make it a success and to be very cognizant of how we work, in particular with the folks that are part of the Santiago Lofts. Because I see a whole lot of people that are, that invested in this city some years ago, they've continued to invest, they've continued to be patient, they've continued to push things. I mean, I, I, I see Sean going out there, Coolidge, and, and, you know, wanting to start the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, food, a farmer's market. That's been a longtime dream. I mean, you know, Vince was on the board for the earlier farmer's market. I was helping him out. I'd go out there, buy my, my big, you know, flats of wheatgrass and then there was no wheatgrass to buy because it all disappeared. Well, guess what? The dream didn't disappear. Now Sean came back and he's got it going and is there on Thursdays and now our city manager's going there. And that's a good thing because we're all having a good time and we're having fun. So we, we need to continue to work together, we need to continue to move forward and, 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 please, don't compromise any dream because many, many dreams here can be realized. And I think this is gonna be a quality project. You know, Barry Cottle is not here to be here for a day. He's not here to buy this project and then flip it tomorrow. Um, I, I think he is here to, to, you know, to make sure that it's a quality, well-run, well-operated, uh, project. And, and so please work with us as we look for retailers. I mean, I, I want Barry to come to, to the folks in particular at, at, at the Santiago Lofts and go through some options. You know, we've done this in other projects and guess what? When we raise the bar higher, we get a higher bar. And that's what we need to continue to do here. We need to continue to say, this is gonna be an example of what a great project can look like. We're gonna integrate the streetcar. And by the way, just to plug on the streetcar, we've already had two hearings. I, I attended the one, uh, you know, today, uh, towards the end. It's going very, very well. We have one more coming up and then after that, on the seventh of July, we close the, the public comment. It'll come to council for, uh, approval. I hope we approve at seven zero, the locally preferred alternative, whatever it is. And, and then get ready because that project is coming down the track. And, 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 and another good development on that, just for a moment, so you can see that this is not just a dream, but a reality, it's gonna happen. Recently in Sacramento, sixty to eighty million dollars are gonna come to that project. Why? Because of the cap and trade dollars that now have been set aside. It's about a billion dollars. I, I, you know, phoned the governor and, and, and other folks and other council members are helping. We are gonna get money coming from that cap and trade to OCTA. And that money at OCTA, guess what? The only dollars that it can be really used for right now is the streetcar project. And the fact that we're building more housing, including this project, along that route makes it more likely that it's gonna come. And if you want to see what a quality city is like, look at, at, at the, at the Gaslamp District in, in San Diego. Somebody mentioned that? Guess what they have there? They have a streetcar there. Look at downtown Portland and the parks that are cool, where there's a variety and a mixed community and all sorts of things happening. They have a streetcar there. And when we start this streetcar here in San Ana, this'll be the first leg, but it'll be the first leg of a whole lot of different, uh, legs in the future in, 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 in Orange County and you're gonna be a part of it. And you're gonna be right at the center of it because it's gonna start right across the street from you. So with that, um, if we are ready to vote...
Call the vote.
Let's call for the vote. Uh, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously with one abstention. So with that, let's, um, I have a motion by Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for us to continue the rest of the calendar items, uh, till the next meeting.
All right, we have motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.